I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority and call order a special meeting in the Housing Authority. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Here.
Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Mayor Protem Van der Mark?
Here.
Mayor Strickland?
Here.
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Members, the agenda we're going to pledge allegiance is going to be led today by Dan Calmick. On top of him again, a nice haircut. It's going to be his birthday tomorrow.
Please rise if you're able. Ready, begin.
Now we'll do an invocation by Huntington Beach Fire and Police. Chaplain Roger Wing.
Would you please bow with me as we pray for this evening's meeting? Heavenly Father, in proverbs you call us to know wisdom and instruction and to perceive the words of understanding. And Lord, tonight we want to tap into that wisdom and understanding that you so graciously promised to us as the issues of our city are considered tonight before this council. May you provide each member with your wisdom, your discernment on each topic and guide them as they discuss, consider, and make decisions. May you bring peace, unity, and harmony through all the deliberations and activities tonight. May everyone that's here this evening see our council working together to do what's most beneficial for our city. We may not all agree on all issues, but we can respectively and graciously agree to disagree without disrespecting the views of others. Being a council member is a great privilege, but it also carries with it a great responsibility. May you lead each member to discharge this responsibility with integrity, faithfulness, grace, and diligence in a way that best serves the interests of the community that they serve and in a manner that honors and glorifies you, Lord. May you be honored, Lord, through the service that each of them provide to our great city. And Lord, we want to pray for all those who will be providing their input and sharing their views at the podium this evening. Help them and guide them to share clearly and concisely with dignity and respect. We thank you for bringing them here this evening to assure that our council has the benefit of the community's views and thoughts. And Lord, we want to give you thanks for the great Fourth of July we had in our community and for keeping everything safe and pleasurable for all who came to experience all the enjoyment that our city can provide. May we continue to experience a safe and wonderful remainder of the summer season and the year. And Lord, tonight we want to ask a special prayer for Lizzie Lovett and ask that you would do a miracle of healing and renewal in her life and that you will provide comfort and peace to her family during this most difficult time. And may your hand of comfort be on all of our lifeguards, all of our fire department family who have been dramatically impacted by this tragedy. We ask your blessing, Lord, on each of our council members, our city manager, our city attorney, city treasurer, city clerk, police and fire chiefs, department heads, and all of our faithful and committed city employees who work so diligently in support of our city council and our city. We pray for health and safety for them personally and for their families. And we also pray for all of our Huntington Beach first responders. May you keep them safe and give them your wisdom and protection on every call. And now we ask you, Lord, to bless our meeting this evening and may your peace and wisdom guide all that occurs tonight. And we ask this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Okay, members, we're going down the agenda items. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do. For our city managers, report number four, we received a revised PowerPoint presentation. Consent calendar, item six, an email communication regarding the jet noise commission comments. Item seven, four email communications regarding positions on legislation pending before state legislature. Item eight, an email communication regarding Surf Rider Foundation's Ocean Friendly Communities Pilot Program. That item's being pulled tonight, though, I believe. And item nine, email communication regarding Norma Brandel Gibbs Park Plaque Design and Installation. For administrative items, number 19, email communication on the future development of 17642 Beach Boulevard. And also, for item 20, revised PowerPoint presentation received from our Community Development Department and an email communication regarding the middle-income housing program update. Councilmember items, number 21, an email communication regarding proposed employee recruitment and retention. For item 22, memo from the Finance Commission, request for action was received. And also for item number 22, five email communications regarding the Finance Commission memo.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, I think we're at about 15 right now for public comments. I'm going to call the first 10. Please come down and approach both podiums. Andrew Einhorn, Diane Bentley, Butch Twining, Jim Rossman, Deb Janus, Lisa Ferraro, Marcy Navah, Tim Geddes, Amory Hanson, Russ Neal.
And before you speak, I have to make this announcement. At this time, the City Council received comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on any item, not on the agenda, may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553 or emailing the entire city council at city.council@surfcity-hp.org. Thank you for being here and really appreciate your time.
Good evening. My name is Diane Bentley and I'm a 22-year resident of Huntington Beach. The recent and abrupt multimillion-dollar settlement by the Huntington Beach City Attorney of the lawsuit filed by the owner of the Pacific Airshow before the case could be heard in open court raises serious questions about the commitment of the city attorney to the best interests of the city. And the subsequent refusal by the city of attorney to reveal the terms of the settlement represents a craven attempt to prevent the firestorm of disapproval from city residents over the needless transfer of city funds to the crony of the city attorney. And now it is revealed that the city attorney has transferred the first $2 million to the owner of the Pacific Airshow a full two weeks before the payment was required. Is this an attempt to ensure that funds are transferred to the airshow owner before the lawsuits from city residents opposed to the settlement can be heard by the courts? It certainly appears so. In addition to paying millions of dollars to the owner of the Pacific Airshow in settlement of a bogus claim by the airshow owner, it also appears that some in city government are attempting to limit access to the beach and beach parking from Beach Boulevard to the pier for the three days of the airshow to allow the airshow company to sell access to those areas. City residents will not be able to access their beach and those with city beach parking passes will not be able to park in the city parking lots from Beach Boulevard to the pier during the airshow. And the city will not get any of the revenue from this taking of city property by a private entity. And what will be the reaction of hotel guests along PCH when they discover that they cannot access the beach areas in front of their hotels? Various estimates are touted about the incredible revenue that the city can expect from the airshow, but it seems that the majority of the revenue will flow to the Pacific Airshow Company while the city's funds are used for security and other costs associated with the airshow. This entire affair stinks of cronyism and overreach by the city attorney and must be investigated before more city funds are transferred. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi.
Thanks for being here.
Hi. My name is Jim Rossman. I'm a 44-year resident of Huntington Beach. I am also the third vice commander of the local Huntington Beach American Legion Post 133. We operate the Veterans Resource Center located inside the central library here where veterans can come to get assistance for auto repairs, for housing, for clothing, for food. Lot of items. By the way, the hours are, yeah, 2:00 to 6:00 on Monday through Friday and 9:00 to 1:00 on Wednesday. You can come in, get assistance, ask questions, get a DD-214, find out about insurance, other items like that. We're happy to help you. One of the things that we do to raise money for this, last year we spent over $50,000 assisting veterans. This year, we're already about $30,000. So what we do is a fundraiser and this year we're having our second annual car show on August 30th, I'm sorry, August 20th. It's going to be here at the Huntington Beach Sports Complex. Last year, we had 105 cars. This year, we're expecting about 200 cars or so. And all the funds go to the Veterans Resource Center. I want to thank the city council people and the city employees for assisting us in getting this organized and working out. It's going to be a good show and they've been a very good help to us. One of the letters we received from a veteran that we assisted, he had comments like, "I'm at a loss for words. I'm overwhelmed with emotion and gratitude, like I can finally breathe. Thank you for your team for saving my family." A little bit about this gentleman, he works, I won't tell you where he works, but he works part-time, makes between $1,200 and $1,500 every couple of weeks. He also worked as a caregiver. He lost his job as a caregiver and the family is really hurting. He has a wife and two children. So we assisted him in obtaining and paying some rent on his house. But that's kind of stuff that we do. We're a very active post. We do a lot of stuff here in Huntington Beach. We're one of the largest American Legion posts in Huntington Beach. And anybody out there that's a veteran, we'd love to have you come and join us. We've got over 400 members right now and always use more. Our website is hbpost133.com. Look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I came this evening specifically to address Mr. Calmick's actions this past week. You know, I'd like one week to go by where I don't open social media and see something you or your sidekick, Ms. Mosher, are instigating in the city that, to me, is against the council, against the citizens of the city and creating some kind of chaos. You know, you took an oath when you were sworn into the Constitution. I'm not sure that you've ever read it. Mr. Calmick, you're the president of an organization that is now writing letters to the city manager and the mayor with what I would term threats. Is it a threat of legal action? I don't know. But, you know, for you to be on that board and to sit by and allow that to take place, I have to ask you, are you crazy or are you dumb? You know, I think you need to resign. I've been asking Ms. Mosher all since last November to resign, so now I'll ask you both to resign. I don't think either one of you represent the interests of our city. The work you do on the council, most of the time, is detrimental to the community. So that's really what I came to say. You know, I am providing you, I gave it to the officer, each a copy of the Constitution. I hope you'll read it. I also have a feeling that you might have been one of the first groups to grow up in the world if everybody gets a trophy, so I've included a trophy for tonight. Hopefully, if you lose at anything this evening, you won't feel bad enough to go out and create some kind of retribution back on the community. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you for being here.
Good evening, council members. My name is Marcy Navah. I've been a Huntington Beach resident for close to 53 years. I'm glad to be here tonight to try and impress upon you how inspiring our Huntington Beach Pacific Airshow is to us. I hope we'll continue to have the airshow here for many years to come. Thank you and may the Lord Jesus bless you exceedingly abundantly as you continue to do His will for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tim Geddes and I am a longtime resident. 60 years ago, a sci-fi show debuted on television that I began to watch religiously. It was called The Outer Limits. Each show began with a cold opener or a preview clip followed by a narration over visuals of an oscilloscope. Using an Orwellian theme of taking over your television, the narrator said things like, "There is nothing wrong with your television set. Do not attempt to adjust the picture. We are controlling the transmission. We will control the horizontal. We will control the vertical. For the next hour, sit quietly and we will control all that you see and hear. We repeat, there is nothing wrong with your television set." The original series lasted only a couple of seasons, but it made its mark on a generation of viewers. Many of us in the community are getting the same experience at our city council meetings. The majority controls the agenda and all the decisions that are made. They claim there is nothing wrong with your city council. Just sit quietly and pretend you are represented. The citizenry dodged a bullet when our library services were spared cuts, although there are continuing ideological efforts to mess with our system, one that has worked well for decades. We are still looking at boards and commissions being messed with. The majority controls all of the council liaison slots, so there is little diversity in feedback and advice. The majority controls the charter review process, another area which could mess with the community. That's the horizontal. That's the vertical. We are only told about what they want us to hear, about lawsuits, about airshows, about sweetheart deals with special interests, about most everything. One example from boards and commissions. I served on several years on the city's mobile home advisory board, some of them as chair. The council liaisons usually a mix from the middle of the members with funnel views, concerns, and advice to the full council. It acted as a sounding board for the mobile home community and, however imperfect its operation, did its job honorably. Now, the council liaisons to the mobile home advisory board are both from one wing of the council and the board has been stacked with political cronies and opponents of manufactured housing. Is that fair? Is that representative? Of course not. Does the mobile home advisory board still serve the sounding board function despite it's being messed with? Yes, it does, and it should. Please don't let it get messed with further. Yes, the council majority currently controls the transmission. They would say, "Do not attempt to adjust the picture."
10 seconds.
However, if the community believes that our local government has the wrong focus, it is up to its members to change the channel. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Andy Einhorn, Huntington Beach resident. What an interesting life it would be if you were a true leader and assumed doing the right things consistently would yield rewards for the Huntington Beach citizens. The problem confronting us here in this governmental body is that no one does anything about a council member that has expressed Rachel invictives. Listen to this talk. Open your ears. I've got much to say and my words are true. No one in our country should feel unsafe because of their color, how they pray, where they worship, or how they should identify. Seven times I've come to this podium and requested an independent external committee to investigate Gracie Van der Mark. I have appealed to this council to do something that requires leadership and you failed the first step of leadership, which is to look into your own personal ethics first. Instead, some sections of this council act via a Fab Four group think process, which is a second-rate example of leadership. So tonight, I will appeal to our city attorney and request him to appoint an external independent board to investigate past comments by a council member. Will our city attorney act on this request? Or will he act as the king of the Fab Four group thinkers? Since no public record of a prior investigation is contained in the city's public records department, this investigation should be brought forward by the city attorney and an external independent committee. What an interesting life it would be if you were a leader. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council persons, our city attorney, city manager, and our wonderful staff back here. My name is Butch Twining. I'm a 57-year resident of Huntington Beach and I'm currently serving on the Planning Commission as the vice chairman. I'm here to speak tonight against item number 17 on your agenda, which is about a cell tower. And I also want to clarify what the agenda said. It said that the Planning Commission approved, back at our June 13th meeting, that they approved the item, but we didn't approve it. It was a 3-3 vote and so it went back down to the zoning administrators' ruling to approve it. We heard, again, I said, we heard the appeal on the 13th. We listened to AT&amp;T and their contractors give us a presentation. It was a good presentation about the relevant design, the need for it, and the extensive legal precedents for us to consider. And they urged concurrence with the zoning administration to approve the CUP. I know that you guys are up against some very daunting legal issues with this one, with the FCC. However, that night that we heard it here in the Planning Commission, the only people that were for the tower was AT&amp;T and their contractor. The gallery was full of residents from that neighborhood and 100% of them didn't want it and they were passionate up here. And so I had a lot of questions I wanted to ask about the issue, but it all boiled down to, do the people want it? And the people do not want it. And so, again, I know that there's some legal precedents is set here by the FCC and it's very hard to reject a tower, but this tower is just a few feet from the backyards of several residents there. Some claim it's within 40 to 60 feet and it's going to be a 60 to 80-foot-high tower and it's going to look like a tree. And there's a very small window of reasons that you can, or I should say, a narrow window of reasons that you can reject a cell tower like that. One of them is marketability of the property in that area, real estate values in that area, and then also environmental issues. And it just so happens that in that area...
10 seconds.
They have Cooper hawks, which I believe are a protected species and there's nesting there for Cooper hawks. So anyway, I urge you to reject item 17. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of item 22, Councilman Van der Mark and McKeon's item, to propose a charter amendment to restrict city councils from engaging in real property transactions that would require Huntington Beach to forego regularly collected property taxes on investment property unless those purchases are approved by the voters of Huntington Beach. This charter amendment would allow the voters to be heard on the use of their tax dollars for municipal investment. This proposed charter amendment is part of a positive trend I have seen with the current city council, of being open to having referenda, delaying the voters to decide certain significant issues. I have also seen an openness to using charter provisions that require a vote of people, such as the provisions in regard to the taking of park space. This is not unnoticed and is appreciated. This charter amendment would allow more opportunities for referenda. I believe the city council is capable of making decisions, but some decisions are large enough to justify leaving them to the voters. Let's allow we, the people, to decide if a property purchase is worthwhile for Huntington Beach. We, the people. Once again, I urge a yes vote on item 22. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and council members. My name is Russell Neal and I live in Huntington Beach. I would like to speak in support of agenda items seven and 22. One could safely oppose any legislation coming out of Sacramento sight unseen. That goes double for the middle-income or workforce housing schemes, which are just a step towards socialized housing. Indeed, everything coming out of Sacramento is designed to convert this state from the golden state, a land of opportunity, into some kind of socialist dystopia. Our state government drives industry, agriculture, and middle-class families out of the state while making it a sanctuary state for drug addicts and criminals, a mecca for abortion, and a center for corrupting the morals of children. It destroys our education, water, power, and transportation systems. It seeks to centralize all power under a one-party Orwellian police state. It inverts morality, declaring good to be evil and evil to be good. The experience of people living under this oppression is like that of a man being slowly swallowed by a snake. Over against this monstrous evil, we have Huntington Beach, Surf City, USA, almost alone, pushing back against this tyranny, a beacon of light against the encroaching darkness. I salute this new council majority and the sacrifice of the many citizens who have made your presence on the dais possible. The scripture says that God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind. I pray that spirit of courage, wisdom, and love would be upon you and that God would grant you supernatural success in all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Ferraro and I'm a 30-year resident of Huntington Beach and a small business owner of 22 years. business owner of 22 years. My main purpose for speaking tonight is to support the new members of the council to remain strong, be courageous, and without a spirit of fear as you face decisions for the betterment of our city. Gracie, I applaud you for your thorough research exposing and revealing to the community the obscene, sexualized material in our library. Children belong to their parents and possess the power to decide what material their children should read. These sexualized materials found in our children's local library should be placed in the adult section, so parents can decide if they're worthy of reading for their children. Casey, I agree with you. The best communities are locally run, and you've been a lifelong resident of Huntington Beach, homeowner and small business owner, and understand what is needed to focus on solving local issues that affect our city. Thank you for your service. Michael, as our city attorney, thank you for saving our city millions of dollars applying your legal expertise. You understand the challenges of the legal arena and have protected our city numerous times. I applaud your patience, not allowing yourself to be dismayed nor anxious, and remaining fearless in your research, applying it for the improvement of our city. Pat, you were raised here in Huntington Beach and have served in various roles to protect our city as police helicopter pilot, observer, and narcotics investigator. Serving in these roles, you understand what our city needs to remain in protective mode. I applaud you for wanting to serve in this manner. Tony, your 30 years as a Huntington Beach resident qualifies you as an expert in understanding exactly the needs of our city. Thank you for wanting to be the leader and working diligently for the betterment of our city. Dietrich Bonheffer said, "Silence in the face of evil is itself evil." Not to speak is to speak. Not to act is to act. So, I commend you, Gracie, Casey, Pat, Tony, and city attorney Michael Gates, for speaking and acting courageously for our beloved city of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doris Hill, and I'm a longtime resident of Huntington Beach, and I am here tonight to commend you, Gracie Vandermark, for your expert, expert investigation, remaining strong and courageous in revealing the sexualized books that, uh, children are, that, of children in our local library. I am offended by this material, and children who trust what they read need to be protected from these evil books. Thank you for caring for our, our precious children. Thank you, Gracie, Casey McEwen, for giving up your free time to represent our city when you could be focusing on your business and your family. Being a member of the city council requires much reading that equates to hours to understand the city's issues, and I applaud you. Pat Burns, as a former police officer, you know how and what it is needed to protect our city. Thank you for your service. Even though you could be enjoying your retirement right now, you chose to continue to serve and protect us from those who want to harm families through their woke agendas. Thank you. Michael Gates, you have served as our city attorney many years and have, and understand how to protect us using your expert legal experience. You have saved the city millions of dollars. Thank you. Remain committed and strong, and you will prevail despite the attacks. Tony, as mayor of our city and living here over 30 years, you are qualified and skillful to, um, skillful resource to advise us on what is needed to keep our city secure. Thank you for your commitment. Benjamin Franklin said, "Wise men have in all ages thought government necessary for the good of mankind, and though wise governments have always thought religion necessary for the well-ordering and well-being of society." Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Gooden, and I'm here tonight also to praise the new city council members, and also you, Attorney Michael Gates. Mayor Strickland, I commend your quest for truth. Your state and local experience in the political arena has provided you the tools to lead us. I like that you understand that to be a leader, you must be a servant first. Your decisions must be wise for our community. So I say, Tony, strengthen your spirit, be disciplined, and have courage to complete the role the people of Huntington Beach have given you. Gracie Vandermark, Abraham Lincoln said, "Character is like a tree and reputation like a shadow. The shadow is what we think of it, but the tree is the real thing." Gracie, continue to strengthen your tree, nourish it with truth and courage, and let not the spirit of fear enter your heart, mind, or soul. You have been chosen for such a time as today to protect our children from sexualized materials and other issues that will be brought before you. Casey McEwen, Calvin Coolidge said, "What we need is not more federal government, but better local government." And you, Casey, exemplify this quote, for you believe that the best communities are locally run. As a resident of Huntington Beach, a homeowner and a small business owner, you well understand Calvin Coolidge's quote. Thank you for focusing on local issues for our city. Pat Burns, John Wall said, "Our issue is local control, local government by local elected people." As one who was raised here in Huntington Beach and served in the, as a policeman in many capacities, thank you for understanding that local control of our city government is best, not state nor federal control. Please remain steadfast. City attorney Gates, as a longtime city leader, Abraham Lincoln said, "Be sure you put your feet in the right place and then remain firm." You personify this quote because you have remained resolute in your knowledge of legal issues for our city to protect it. Plus, your courage, discipline, and determination to provide the best legal advice have placed your reputation in a state of praise. I commend you for your vigor. Thank you, all of you, for allowing me to come before you and express my feelings and thankfulness that you are leading our city. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Casey. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Gracie and Casey and Pat and Phil.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna-
To the clerk, we have more?
Yeah, I'm gonna call the remaining. Kathy Carrick, Brian Vesnaski, Libby, Pat Goodman, Ken Inoue, and Roger Noor.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks. Um, good evening, honored council members. My name is Kathy Carrick, and I'm a long-term resident of Huntington Beach. It seems that there's been a sudden resurgence of concern over negative effects on the Bosa Chica wetlands. One of our own council members sits on the board of an organization that recently sent a rather hostile letter to the city of Huntington Beach complaining of possible negative impacts to the wetlands from the Pacific Airshow scheduled to run September 29th through October 1st. What this makes me wonder is, are they also concerned about the loud cars and motorcycles that race up and down PCH? Does that noise bother the wildlife? Or what about the e-bikes that have been reported to ride recklessly through the wetlands, making loud noises and disrupting or, in fact, demolishing natural wildlife habitats? And moving over to our beautiful beaches, what about the thousands of squirrels that are literally tunneling all throughout the bluffs? Are we worried about the damage being done there? Are those bluffs going to collapse? Just this week, I saw a couple with a large bag full of what appeared to be orange peels throwing them on the ground for the squirrels, and yet I did not see one sign advising against this. Of course, of others, as, as others have pointed out, there are many and varied things to consider here, such as why all of a sudden the extra scrutiny in 2023? Hasn't this airshow event been happening for several years? Is it because there's another election coming up, or retaliation because of political differences? After all is said and done, who really knows? The point is, some on this council have chosen to hate the airshow, a show that most residents love, a show that brings thousands of tourists to our town and millions of dollars of revenue to our businesses and city coffers. Isn't it time that we stop fighting about every single issue, but rather try to understand that even though we may not like a couple of the elements of an event, we can still see the huge overall benefits? Can't we just please come together to support something that has an overall outstanding positive impact on our community and turn our attention to fixing the real problems that affect the day-to-day lives of the good people of Huntington Beach? There's a saying that goes like this, "Learn the wisdom of compromise. It is better to bend a little than to break." Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Brian Vesnaski. I'm here to speak about Banning Avenue, and I support the roundabout. I've lived on Banning for 32 years, having raised five adult sons. Over the years, Banning has become increasingly dangerous with an ever-growing amount of speeding traffic. Ferraris, Lamborghinis, Teslas, and muscle cars now punch, routinely punch it from Magnolia to Bouchard, extremely dangerous and loud. Banning Avenue is an ugly street in a family neighborhood a quarter-mile from the beach and not improved since the 60s. This section here, if you can see, shows residents walk from the beach, Banning to Magnolia. This section here on Banning, um, needs lighting and improvement, uh, whiting. Comparing the right section of Banning, dark and narrow on the left, and Section B of Magnolia, the photos are taken the same night. Because of its 70s width, I'm on the wrong section, sorry. Same section of Banning showing the clutter and tripping hazards. Because of this, residents dangerously walk in the street and not on the sidewalk. Because of the 70-foot width, Banning has become a drag strip, but because of the width, so much improvement can be done in landscaping sidewalks and bike lanes. This last photo taken today is at the corner of Banning and, uh, Bouchard, where the proposed roundabout is. Looking east shows the tire marks from cars drifting at night, at midnight. At this section, 14-year-old Phoenix Win was killed. All five people in Win's car went to the hospital. A few weeks later, two drivers in Win's passenger were transported to UC Medical Center when a Ford Mustang crashed into a Camry. 10 years ago, a neighbor with his car filled with kids was hit when the other car did not stop. I personally witnessed cars blow through this intersection while I was at the stop seven times since I've lived here. On Banning Avenue, both we and our neighbors have had pets killed, bicyclists been hit, our mailman just missed certain death where a car braked hard and skidded to avoid him. And this all before electric bikes. And then now, today, my wife Sylvia, 36 years, almost died at this intersection. That's when I took this photo today. The roundabout would prevent a T-bone collision that almost killed her. She was at the stop sign heading east, as shown here. She looked to the left, then looked to the right, then could see a car on the right, far down the road, so proceeded to inch forward, but then stopped as a young male traveling north on Bouchard at a high rate of speed blew through the intersection. Thank God that she is... Okay. I understand waiting till in September in hopes of a grant to cover 80% of the roundabout costs, but then construction would not bring, begin until 2025. We are requesting that this city council, Beach, this city council, take this opportunity to time to a Banning Avenue improvement, to do everything in their power to both-
Ten seconds.
-unify and slow down the traffic on Banning and improve the lighting and roundabout options. I appreciate the time you devote to our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The last time I was here was a very long night, as we heard from dozens of supporters of the public library and its librarians. I was proud to be among those defending the library and our freedom to read materials from lots of different viewpoints, or not. Shortly after that meeting, I received an email from Save Surf City, a group that has been very well organized and prods their followers to speak out at city council meetings. But in a move that's as hypocritical as it can get, the email decries the Friends of the Library for being organized and encouraging its supporters to speak out. The email claims that the Mayor Potem was not proposing a book ban, but then quotes the agendized item, which clearly states its intent to make certain books, quote, "unavailable." If the city as a governing entity is making some books unavailable, it is, in effect, a ban, a rose by any other name. The email goes on to criticize Councilmember Kalmak for sending his own email soliciting funds for his reelection campaign. Seriously? It was Save Surf City that sent endless emails filled with lies and half-truths soliciting donations for their failed recall campaign. Clearly, they are continuing to send emails to try to keep their followers enraged. Do they really have a problem with a candidate asking for donations, or is the problem that it's Councilmember Kalmak that's asking? The email is full of dog whistles, from specifying that the newly-elected president of the American Association, Library Association is a lesbian. Do we really need to declare each person's sexual preference? To suddenly including a Yiddish word when referring to the only Jewish member on the council. Makes me kind of wonder if the writer even knew it was pronounced chutzpah. They probably thought it was chutzpah. And please, if any, if they could only get their facts right. The previous council did not spend or guarantee $500 million to make Huntington Beach more crowded, less livable, and more miserable. I'm guessing they are referring to the middle-income housing that was facilitated by a joint-power authority issuing bonds, not by the city financing it? The only cost to the city is to forego the city's 14% share of the property taxes on those two buildings. The original proposal for this project from 2021 estimates that the reduced property tax revenue would be about $15 million over 30 years, the 30-year life of the project. Nowhere near the $500 million the Save Surf City email claimed. The $15 million spread out over 30 years is a nominal investment when compared to the full city budget, and creates an opportunity for local teachers and first responders to actually live in the city they serve.
Ten seconds.
I see that as a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Strickland, city council. My name's Pat Goodman, and I'm, uh, going to speak about item 22, which, um, appears to be an attempt to turn around, uh, 2021 council policy to provide housing for working middle-income people in Huntington Beach. This move by the previous council allowed the city to be a member of the JPA that purchased the two market-rate apartment buildings. There's absolutely no financial risk to the city. There is a loss of, uh, some property tax there. So I, uh, and that even could be made up with, by other development in the city. Naturally, tenants were not evicted when these properties were transferred to the JPA. I was kind of hoping for, um, uh, some analysis or, um, staff reporting for explanation of some of these schedules that were attached to the, um, previous item. I hope that the council will reconsider their motion to place limitations on middle-income apartments. I also hope that the council will share with us their plan on how to address the need for affordable housing in our city. We can't continually attack it. Based on California housing law, every city and jurisdiction has a primary responsibility to plan for future housing needs for its residents. This, this is established law and local control at its best. I request that the council forego any change to the council's ability to enter a JPA with the purpose of providing affordable housing for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, honorable mayor, mayor and honorable members of the city council. Before I make my comments, I'd like to give a shout-out to Dan Kalmak, Natalie Moser, and Rhonda Bolton for their service to the city as well. Thank you so very much. My name is Kenny Inoue. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach, and during my career as a- I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach, and during my career as a CPA, spent over 40 years helping entities establish budgets and adhere to the budgets. Before I make my comments, I want to make the public know what Huntington Beach is financially, what's at stake. Huntington Beach has $1 billion of assets, $1 billion. The operating budget of the whole city is over $1.5 billion a year. The operating of the general fund for which the city council is responsible is almost $300 million, or over a quarter of $1 billion. So the budget is something that needs to be paid attention to. During the recent city council meeting, the city council took actions which avoided the projected budget deficit for next year and reduced a projected budget deficit for the following years from nearly $33 million to a little over $12 million. But all of this action was done at the last minute, with little or no input from the city, from the residents, and without giving the city staff a lot of time to make a proper evaluation. This is for a billion-dollar budget. In order to avoid such last-minute changes, I would respectfully request that this city council make a commitment to review the budget and finances of the city on a periodic basis so that you can make changes during the year and not at the 11th hour. The people of this city deserve more. We deserve the opportunity to provide input in our perspective. I'd also encourage the city council to look at additional ways to raise revenue as opposed to just cutting costs, because the people of this city demand services and deserve services from such a large entity. By acting now, the city council can obtain input and suggestions from the staff, which is important, as well as the residents, so that we don't have a last-minute change to the budget as we had during the last year. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Last call for Roger Noor.
He's running. There he is. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. First of all, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, especially under the leadership of Mayor Strickland, because—and also, Gracie, you know, the first time I met you was in an elevator, and it was only going one floor, but I really enjoyed the time. Out of my 52 years, I have no idea what we talked about, but you have that energy, and it's really, really nice that you're following—the mayor now with the town hall meetings, because every month, having a town hall meeting can cure all the problems from everyone. If every elected official had a town hall meeting, they'd have to answer for everything, and you offered it, you started it, and if you—most of the time, town hall meetings are just done once every four years or two years, so then that way, right before elections. And that way, they can say, oh yeah, we'll get back to you on that, and then they don't talk to you for four years. But this—when you're accountable like that, and you make other departments and other elected officials accountable like that, we can really—they have to answer. They have to answer to the people. And what you guys did that controlled propaganda that happened a couple of weeks ago—or a month ago, that was incredible. You guys did a really good job holding your own. But I want to make sure that you guys—there is an old Indian tradition where the elders, the graybeards, are the ones that run the cities or the tribes, and they always, whenever they make a decision, they say, how is this going to affect us seven generations from now? How is this going to affect—and if you guys even thought about just affecting us, you know, two generations or three generations, I'm sure none of this stuff that happened a month ago would have ever happened. And these people aren't even from here, okay? And all the—they—and they were all called over here with AI stuff. I mean, people calling—them telling somebody—I mean, all electronic, electronic, everybody comes over here, and they were really trying to do a job on you. And please, thank you for standing your own, and nobody, nobody—for—I mean, if you step back in the '80s, can you imagine you telling your parents that in the future you were going to approve things like this with fishnet stockings as, I mean, as costumes that they can walk on the street with a four-year-old walking—I mean, watching? Seriously, I mean, you have to be accountable for some of them. I mean, even to your parents—I mean, all our parents would have heart attacks if we told them that this is going to happen or it even came up. So I mean, thank you very much for standing up on your own, and don't believe—it—and also, can we have it so that way the city of residents are the ones that speak first? Because if you did that, these guys would have been so tired, they would have left early. Seriously, I mean, it's incredible—you guys have to take—
10 seconds.
Oh, man. Oh, I think a turnabout's a really good idea. It saves gas, and it also saves on lives. And I hope your wife's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
That concludes public comments.
All right, members, let's go down to the agenda. Next on the agenda is council committee appointments announcements. Does anybody have anything to announce? Seeing none, moving on. AB 123 reporting, does anybody—does anyone have anything to report? Seeing none, moving on. Openness and negotiation disclosures, does any member have anything to disclose? Seeing none, moving forward. City manager's report. City manager, please introduce your report.
Mayor Strickland, members of the council, as a follow-up to an H item submitted by Councilmember McKean on the One-Stop Shop, we are bringing back an update that will be presented by—where is Jasmine? Is Jasmine here personally? Oh, hey, Jasmine. There you are. So our building official, Jasmine Daly, will be presenting. So thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine, thanks for being here. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'd like to start our One-Stop update tonight with a little bit of background. We began in 2016 with the Acela Project. The intent was to create a central permitting system for all development services. It took us some time, but by 2021, we launched Acela, both internally and externally, for our online service platform for customers. Concurrently, we watched—the—we launched the Permit Center in the Community Development Department and followed that in 2022 with Councilmember Peterson's H item for a One-Stop Shop to streamline the process. In 2023, we saw city council prioritize the One-Stop Shop during the strategic planning session, and along with that, H items from council members for zoning code updates, One-Stop updates, and development impact fee updates. Internally, service excellence training has occurred, and process mapping has begun with Dennis Snow and the North Star team. Our One-Stop team has met and identified the top components for streamlining HB. Of these components, some items have been completed, such as the online service platform, our development assistance team, electronic plan review, and our customer queuing system, Q-List. Some items in progress include the zoning code updates and updating our website, and other items planned for the future include the One-Stop on the one floor, a uniform counter and phone hours, One-Stop phone system, online signatures, and a customer advocate program to help customers through the system. So where are we today? We've launched the Permit Center in 2021 with a team of dedicated planning and building staff, which provided consistency for our customers. This was a significant step towards a One-Stop Shop. Concurrently, we launched Q-List. This allows our customers to join the line before they arrive, saving them time in their day. The game changer was our external online portal, ACA, Acela Citizen Access. This allows customers to access our services 24/7. We have 49 applications available online across all departments. They can make payments, check status, apply for permits, and schedule inspections. With that, our Permit Center team actually made a quick ACA demo video, so you can see how easy it is to search for permits and check status online. To easily access the ACA online portal, go to the city's main webpage and click on a button at the top called Permit Center. You can then move to the top of the page and select the type of permit you would like to search for. While you can search with many different features, the most commonly searched field is address. Enter the street number and the street name, and then hit the search button. A list of the permit history with a summary of each permit will appear. For more details on a permit, click the blue hyperlink. You will be able to see additional permit details, including detailed processing status for each department that is reviewing the project. You can also see related records, attachments and documents, and inspection history. Streamline HB. The One-Stop team identified the steps needed to streamline our HB processes. The first step is to establish your team, which has been completed, moving on to data collection, which we have started, and surveying other cities. We also need to survey our customers through focus groups, complete process mapping through the lens of the customer, and prioritize service streamlined items. All of these should be completed before moving towards implementation. The One-Stop team toured the city of Riverside's One-Stop Shop, and one of the items they emphasized was the need for data collection. We started with looking at our customer traffic. Across all development services, we see approximately 200 customers per day. Three-quarters of those customers are utilizing our services solely online, with one-quarter of them in person. We also looked at our permit data for the Community Development Department. Since 2019, we've seen a 279% increase in permit valuation. Along with that, we've seen permit volume increase by 20%. We tend to range in the mid-8,000 range of annual permits, and we're slated to hit almost 10,000 permits this year, which would be the highest year since 2005. With those increases, we've seen a major decrease in in-person customer visits. From 110 customers per day, reduced to 39 customers last year after being fully reopened from the pandemic. That's cut down even more than 50% to 18 this year. If the trend continues, we may see only nine customers per day by next year. Streamline HB progress and plans. Some of the progress we've made includes our online service platform, electronic plan review, our development assistance team, we have uniform plan review turnaround times, zoning code updates, permit streamlining, our Q-List system, and our customer survey system. The One-Stop team has created a streamlined HB plan and identified items we'd like to move forward with. Ideally, we'd like items such as expedited plan review, providing 100% of all our development services online, a uniform counter and phone hours, One-Stop Shop service area with all departments on the first floor, virtual appointments, expanding our existing kiosks that have been very popular, uniform customer survey system, the Happy or Not system, online signatures, and fine-tuning our existing ACA system to make it a little more customer-friendly. All of these would incur different costs, which estimates are being developed for each item. As we continue to grow those, we would anticipate having more of that info in the next update. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Members, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I don't know if these questions should go to you or staff, but one thing that, you know, we recently—I had visited with Visit HB, and they brought up other cities are doing like special event permit streamlining, you know, especially as it relates to like company group sales to make that process easier. They had mentioned just to kind of streamline that to maybe, you know, bring some of that over to potentially them or you guys, but that's some also we should think about is the special event permits, to kind of fold that into the One-Stop Shop to make it really easy for, you know, companies that want to come here and, you know, reserve hotels or create events or special permits. So that's one thing I think we should think about. Al, we talked about like a—you know, someone—a customer comes into City Hall, and then—I love the concierge, right? They have one kind of one person they can always call to get updates if they're having trouble online on Acela, but, you know, maybe like a checklist where if they come in, it's, you know, how can I help you? I want to, you know, renovate my home, or I want to open up a restaurant, and just have a sequential checklist we can provide them that they can follow to know exactly what this process will entail, so like nothing's left towards the end where they get hit with, oh, by the way, you have to have as-built plans, et cetera. So that's something we should think about, and, you know, I talked with City Manager Al about this, where my experience for some of the business owners or entrepreneurs that want to open here is they—they get all the way down the line, and then they go to get their COO, Certificate of Occupancy, and inspector comes out, and they—they can't ascertain what was improved because what was existing before, so there's not like as-built plans. So maybe if they would have known that upfront, where, A, let's check to see if there's as-built plans currently in file with the city. If there's not, then work with that applicant to create as-built plans with what's existing, so when they go and do their renovations, go to get their final inspection, they know what improvements were made, and they're not incurring like another three to six months in delay. And then also, the expedited review, is that something to think about doing for like a surcharge, like auction?
Correct. Ideally.
Okay. That's great. And then lastly, had a resident recently tell me that there seems to be, in his experience, like a gap in communication between like our building department and then like the third-party reviewers that we outsource plan check to. And so he said he's experienced where changes are requested by the city and then sent to the third-party reviewer, but that third-party reviewer was not made aware of the changes requested by the city and therefore did not know what the changes were. And that leads to—I experienced this in my private business with other cities, so if we can really kind of focus on how to keep that line of communication solid—we've even talked about myself with Al of maybe always having the applicant copied on—the correspondence with the city with the third-party reviewer. We even had a call with a business owner that's opened up a coffee shop on Fifth Street where it seems like potentially maybe her architect had missed some things, and she wasn't in the loop, so we thought about maybe having everyone on the same email thread, the applicant, their architect, the city, the plan check reviewer, so that nothing's lost in translation. So I think if we kind of focus on those issues, we can really make this really streamlined, because in my opinion, this is going to be our best opportunity to increase economic activity and revenue to our cities if we streamline and make the—you know, make it more welcoming for businesses to open here and make the process easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you for putting this—I'm fine. Gracie's fine. Thank you for putting this together. I see some prices here, some costs that you put in here. Do you know when you would have more data?
We're slowly working on it. Part of it's also the prioritization, so moving through the data collection, surveying the other cities, and then really putting a priority on those items, but that's probably—that's really part of the next steps, for sure.
Okay, and we actually—Mayor Strickland and Casey and I were in a meeting with some business owners, and they're looking into coming to Huntington Beach, maybe for group—bring group events here. One of the main issues they said they had concerns with is renting spaces. They said if they—for example, if they wanted to rent a room at the library, it was one process where if they wanted to go in senior center or maybe use a room here. Is your One-Stop Shop going to make it so that maybe they can only go to one location and not have to go to different departments in order to get information regarding how much it would cost to rent a room or if it's available?
Ideally, one of the items, the customer advocate program, is really something all of the staff is interested in doing, because what that does is it is really a One-Stop person that can guide every customer through the city to the right place and get them the information we need, because with the decline in customers that are coming in, the few that are coming in are here for a reason. They're stuck, or they don't understand something, and they need help. So if we could really get that piloted, that would really benefit, I think, the people that are here and needing the assistance.
Okay, thank you. We—a lot of these businesses are actually going, they said, to Newport or to Long Beach because they're much more customer-friendly, so that'll help us. I know when we had our event out on the beach, just to figure out how to make a payment, we actually had Chris Cole was amazing. He walked us up from the fifth floor. They said you have to go to the first floor. We walked down to the first floor, then they said you have to go down to the lower level, then he walked us up to the fifth floor. Had we not had him guiding us, it would have been extremely frustrating, so that was our first experience, or at least mine, having to deal with this. Hopefully, other residents and people can avoid having to go through that. Thank you for all this, putting this together.
Just to add on that meeting, I was there. What we're talking about is a lot of our hotels are fighting for group sales, and we're in competition with Newport Beach, Long Beach, Anaheim, and others. And just so the public is aware, I've brought to our city manager's attention Al Zalinka, who's talking to Kelly Miller. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we do lose out to a lot of these group sales because in our city, we have to go to three or four different apartments.
because in our city, we have to go to three or four different apartments, where it's a one-stop shop in Long Beach, Newport, and some other areas, and so they end up picking those areas to do their group sales and their group conferences instead of Huntington Beach. And so, just so the public's aware of what we talked about, Al Zelenka, our city manager, is already in contact with Kelly Miller from Visit HB to see what we could do as a city to make sure that we are very competitive with our surrounding cities, that, that we can outperform them, to get those group sales for our hotels in town.
Mayor Strickland, if I just might add, to, sorry, right here.
Oh, sorry. I'm like looking, sorry.
Where am I? That primarily, when we think of the permitting process, it's for land development, entitlement, construction, and I'm hearing comments about the desire to add services that are kind of outside of those core functions, that community services is largely part of, economic development, and so absolutely, we can, moving forward, bring those other departments. They've been in some of the preliminary conversations, but hearing this emphasis on economic development, and through events, community events, have that be part of the process. So, thank you.
No, I appreciate it, and again, I, I just wanted, because probably a lot of the public is like, what are you talking about? And, and, you know, there are two different things, but the fact of the matter is, I just want to say that we're on top of it, the city manager's on top of it, and we're now actively doing what we can to make sure we win those group sales for our hotels in town, because we know when we bring in those groups to our city, then they, they are at our restaurants, or they're, you know, providing a lot of sales tax revenue for our city. So, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel one.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn Reynosa, because I was going to comment on that. I too want to make sure that we're welcoming everyone into the city for these large events, and that we have an efficient process to be able to do that, that the process isn't the reason that someone, or somebody, or some organization doesn't come here.
Well, I beg to differ, that's not what our hotel folks and Visit HB told us. They told us exactly the opposite, but go ahead, sorry.
I was, I was agreeing with you.
Oh, no, I thought you said that wasn't the case. I thought you said that wasn't the case.
No.
Sorry, I misheard you. Sorry, I misheard you.
It's okay. I was agreeing with you. We want to make it as easy as possible. That's okay, no, no big deal. That being said, I also, you know, one of the things that Councilmember McKeon mentioned was going through various process workflows, and I think that that looks like it's on the next, one of the next steps, and just wanted to appreciate that the team is looking at the process mapping, because I think that those opportunities will make themselves known, whether it's checklists, or workflows, gaps, and processes, that will likely all come out when all of that effort is made. The one thing that I was going to say, which is what Ursula brought up in a different way, is, you know, I think this was really more about the permitting department, and, you know, as someone who's done project management in the past, and still does in different ways, you know, you do have the potential of scope creep. You want to make sure that you get the project done that you're working on, but also acknowledge that there's additional items. So I don't know if it makes sense, of course, to incorporate everyone in the organization in the process, but I don't know if it makes sense to do this as an add-on and actually create an additional item or direction, because that wasn't part of the original direction. I know you're having the conversations in addition to that, but I don't know, City Manager, what your thoughts are on that.
So, one of the things, we're on this journey, right, and, and one of the beautiful things about what Dennis Snow told us all is that the gift of problems and complaints that come our way is that everyone offers an opportunity for us to make things better, and we learn from them. And so we're learning a lot from many different dimensions of this organization, and when the issue of, like, having a menu, if you will, of our meeting rooms, there's great examples, whether it's Forward Texas, or Brea, or Hayward, Laguna Niguel, on their websites. Soon as I learned that, I went on those websites, and it's a really great, easy-to-digest, kind of at-a-glance of all the public rooms that are available to reserve, and it has the attributes and the different setup styles. And so, scope creep is on our mind. I think you heard our building officials say that we're trying to understand the complete program, so that we don't want to build a one-stop shop that doesn't work for the program that we're trying to facilitate. We don't want to start with the physical, and then back into the programmatic, so we want to understand the scope. And so some of these things will be phased, only because of resources available, but nonetheless, they're super important for us to implement, so that maybe over the next year or two years, we capture them all, and, you know, and we're, we're the best catcher mitt for economic development there is. So, yeah. But I, I mean, I think your points well taken, all the points are well taken, it's just a matter of phasing and staging it all. So, yeah.
Thanks.
We're excited.
The only thing, I think it's awesome that you guys are doing this, but the one, one of the biggest complaints is how long it gets, takes to get through the process before people can break dirt, or start pounding nails, and if we can do something, because I don't see, I just don't understand how something can take a year, a year and a half, before they can start doing, you know, work on the property or whatever to get things through the process, and there's, that's one thing I'd like to see in this whole thing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Any other questions, members? Seeing none. Thanks so much, really appreciate the presentation. Okay, members, we're moving on. Our agenda, we're on the consent calendar, items five through 16. I just want to refer to our city manager regarding item eight.
Thank you, Mayor Strickland, as the city clerk noted, Monday morning, we got a communication from Casey Fokler of the Surf Rider Foundation, requesting that we table item eight to a date uncertain, so that Surf Rider can clarify some areas that they've seen, put together some milestone charts, pros and cons. They want to, they want to do some more work on it before this council considers it, even though they've done a lot of work on it already, they want to do more.
Okay, thank you, thanks, City Manager. So, with that, item eight has been polled. Would any council member like to poll item from item five to 16?
I'd like to poll seven and 12, please.
Seven and 12?
Fourteen, please.
Mr. Burns, fourteen?
Yes, sir.
Item fourteen, okay. Any other items? Seeing none. Clerk called the roll on all the consent item calendar other than seven, 12, and 14.
I'll make a motion to do just that.
Oh, sorry.
Motion. Motion, been seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Okay, and, Mr. Burns, are you the second?
Yes.
All right, so this will be for consent items five, six, nine, 10, 11, 13, 15, and 16. Please vote.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call. Oh, back to old habits.
Amen.
All right, Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
They're past seven, zero, thank you.
Okay, all right, members, so then we're going to file item seven. Councilman Kelmick, you may open on seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received a late communication from staff on some of these items, but I did want to point out that there was an email from some folks, from one person, basically, talking about Councilmember Peterson's point of view on the IRC stuff, and really making sure that items are germane to what this local government does, and there was a lot of positions, I think, taken on these that aren't really germane to what we do on a day-to-day basis here, and I think that we are also far away from what Cal Cities, for instance, is positioned on a lot of these bills are. I think they're mainly watch, and I think several of these bills have been polled or are on two-year cycles, or in the, on pause, effectively, I don't, I don't know the term off the top of my head.
The term is suspense.
Suspense file, thank you. And so, yeah, I, I wanted to pull this, because I think there's a larger conversation that should be had on at least all of these. I would like to see us watch all of them, as following the League of Cities guidelines, but I guess I'll go ahead and make that motion to, to make A through L to, instead of oppose, to watch, and come back after, see when these come back after the session, to come back from recess. So that's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
I make a second.
It's been moved and seconded to pause on these. Clerk call the roll. Your complex motion.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Motion fails three, four.
Okay, so seeing that motion's failed, I would like to have the staff move forward on each item, to move a vote on and explain each item. I would just say at the very beginning, I would disagree with the former Councilman Peterson, if he did indeed say those remarks, because every one of these bills does have an effect on citizens in Huntington Beach, number one, and number two, just because the item's on suspense, I've been in Sacramento, I've seen items move off of suspense in appropriations committee and move to the floor very, very rapidly, within a day sometimes. So I think it's important for our city to take stands on some of these important issues that affect citizens in Huntington Beach. So, with that, who's leading from staff to talk about each one of the bills? Or do we want to move this as a whole package?
Well, that would be up to you. There are summaries of each of these items in your packet, and as it stands, A through L, IRC took position to oppose each of those bills. So, if you would like...
I think it's probably better to go each one instead of a package, because I'm sure some of the members would agree or disagree on, on some of these, so.
Okay, I'll just, I'll do the quick summary. So, AB 223, Ward, Change of Gender and Sex Identifier. This bill provides for specified records to be kept confidential by the courts where minors petition for a change of gender and sex identifier. It is currently in the Senate Judiciary Committee for a thorough reading.
And so I'll move to oppose this bill.
My second.
Discussion. Clerk call the roll on number A.
Kelmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
Okay, the item passes four, two, and one. Four, one, and two, sorry.
AB 957, Wilson, Family Law Gender Identity. This bill clarifies that a family court, when determining the best interest of the child in a proceeding to determine custody or visitation for a child, shall consider as part of the consideration health, safety, and welfare of the child, a parent's affirmation of the child's gender identity, and this is ordered to a thorough reading in the Senate Judiciary Committee.
So I move that we oppose this bill.
Second.
Yeah, so I have the same comment about this bill and the previous one, which is, this is part of the cultural war stuff, this is talking about people's gender identity, and minors, and parents, and custody, and visitation, and it, to me, is not relevant to the business of the city, which is why I don't think we should even be considering this stuff, but just wanted to make that comment, that's my position.
Okay, this, this been moved and seconded to oppose 957. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
Okay, so the item passes four, one, two.
Okay.
Okay, SB 58, Weiner, Controlled Substances, Decriminalization of Certain Hallucinogenic Substances. This bill makes lawful the possession, preparation, obtaining, transfers, or transportation of specified quantities of psilocybin, psilocyn, DMT, ibogaine, and mescaline for personal use or facilitated or supported use as defined by and with persons 21 years of age or older. And this one is in a second reading, an amendment referred to Assembly Appropriations Committee.
So I move to oppose SB 58. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
It passes four, zero, three.
Okay.
Okay, SB 253, Weiner, Climate Corporate Data Accountability Act. This bill would require any partnership corporation, LLC, or other U.S. business entity in total annual revenues in excess of $1 billion, and that does business in California to publicly report their annual GHG emissions as specified by the California Air Resources Board, and this was referred to the Appropriations Committee.
I move to oppose SB 253.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes four, zero, three.
Okay, SB 770, Weiner McGuire, Healthcare Unified Care Financing. This bill directs the Secretary of California Health and Human Services Agency to pursue waiver discussions with the federal government, with the objectives of a unified healthcare financing system that incorporates specific features, including a comprehensive package of medical, behavioral health, pharmaceutical, dental, and vision benefits without cost-sharing for essential services and treatments, and this one is on the suspense file as of July 12.
I move that we oppose SB 770. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes four, zero, three.
Okay, AB 1287, Alvarez, Dense City Bonus Law. Requires a city, county, or city and county to grant additional density concessions and incentives if an applicant agrees to include additional low or moderate income units, on top of the maximum amounts of units for lower, very low, or moderate income units, and this was referred to the Senate Appropriations Committee.
I move that we oppose AB 1287.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Councilman.
I think this is the only relevant one to the city at this point. Density bonus, I think, takes away our, a lot of our local control, and I think it's more of a hammer than a scalpel in allowing folks to get a little more creative with, with a project, because it effectively allows you, mandates that you either approve or deny the entire project, and you can't pick away at some of the additional incentives that are given to developers, and I think this is, this goes a lot farther than what we currently have, and I would prefer to maintain the local control and our zoning code to allow housing if we need so, or as we need it, instead of a, you know, you can throw away parking and zoning and everything if you're going to add more housing, I just don't, I don't think it works in the way that we'd like it to, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Yeah, aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes seven, zero.
Okay.
Okay, SB 7, Blakespear, the Homeless Housing Obligation Act. SB 7 would require regional housing needs arena to include homeless as income category for local housing element planning purposes, and an act, Homeless Housing Obligation Act, which requires each city and county to develop a housing obligation plan to provide housing which requires each city and county to develop a housing obligation plan to provide housing opportunities for each homeless person within its jurisdiction by January 1, 2030. This bill would also require Department of Housing and Community Development to develop and administer a new program upon appropriation of funding by the legislature to provide grants to cities, counties, and nonprofit housing entities to fulfill the obligations to provide housing opportunities for homeless persons. On May 15th, this was placed in the suspense file.
I move that we oppose SB 7.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes four, zero, three.
Great. Thank you.
SB 555 Wahab, Stable Affordable Housing Act of 2023. This bill creates the Stable Affordable Housing Act for the purposes of planning for the development of social housing through a mix of acquisition and new production. And this is in the Assembly Appropriations Committee.
I move we oppose SB 555.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes four, zero, three.
Thank you.
SB 584 Limón Caballero, Caballero, sorry, Labor Force Housing Short Term Rental Tax Law. This bill requires a 15% state short-term tax occupancy tax when collected and allocates the funds for the construction, acquisition, and rehabilitation of affordable housing and renter protection programs. This bill creates a new program at HCD which would finance labor force housing units and provide grants to cities, counties, local housing authorities. The City of Huntington Beach imposes a transient occupancy tax of 10%.
I move to oppose SB 584.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Oh, discussion, go ahead, councilman.
Yeah, no, while this is, I think this has been created a two-year bill now, so it's not moving forward this year.
There's, there's no two, when they say it's a two-year bill, it means it stalled and it's still active within the legislature.
But it won't be acted on this year?
No, it doesn't mean that. Again, they could pull it off at any time and then bring it forward.
I just, I mean, the article's-
For example, it might be, it might fail by one vote in a committee.
Sure.
And they can ask for reconsideration and bring it up at any time. They pull it, and it could get pulled really quickly and go right to the floor. So I'm just letting you know that, like, even if they say it's a two-year bill, I've seen two-year bills, quote-unquote, two-year bills that pass by hyperspace speed.
Okay, so that being said, I think that this, again, a 15% TOT tax, that would be transient occupant tax on short-term rentals to fund affordable housing is a, is a bridge too far on this, but I, again, I, from the articles that I've read in Cal Matters and from our legislative analysts saying that this is likely not going to move forward this year, I would wait and see, so I just wanted to at least make that opinion here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes four, zero, three.
Okay. SB 50 Bradford, Vehicles Enforcement. This bill prohibits police officers from initiating a traffic stop for specified low-level infractions unless a separate independent basis for a stop exists, and to authorize local authorities to enforce traffic violations through the use of non-sworn government employees.
I move that we oppose SB 50.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns? Passes four, zero, three.
Okay.
SB 838 Menjivar, Victim Compensation Use of Force by a Law Enforcement Officer. SB 838 would revise the definition of a crime for purposes of the victim compensation program to include an incident in which an individual sustained serious bodily injury or death as a result of law enforcement officer's use of force. This bill would allow compensation claims for incidents in which individuals sustained seriously, serious bodily injury or death as a result of a law enforcement officer's use of force. This is on the suspense file also.
I move to oppose SB 83. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Four, zero, three.
Okay, and our last one is Assembly Constitutional Amendment Four, Eligibility to Vote. This repeals a constitutional amendment, constitutional requirement for the legislature to provide for the disqualification of electors while serving a state or federal prison term for the conviction of a felony subject to the approval of voters.
I'm, I move that we oppose ACA four.
Second.
Been seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Abstain.
Mosher?
Abstain.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Abstain.
Burns?
Aye.
Four, zero, three.
All right, members, we've gone through item seven. Now let's go consent to Calmick. You pulled item 12.
Yeah, I believe staff has a presentation on this one for, give some options on this, and it'd be great to see if we can see that.
Right.
Oh, wait, how do I load it? Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're presenting the project for Banning Avenue Improvements. So why do we have this project? The pavement condition for Banning is poor. It ranges as low as 37 to 75, and it requires rehabilitation now to avoid considerable higher construction costs. This artill rehab is an opportunity to do a clean slate and offers opportunities for implementing complete streets elements. And complete streets elements is basically designed for everyone, for cyclists, for pedestrians, and for drivers. Not only that, this project stems from concern from residents about high speeds and drivers doing donuts within the intersection. So the scope of work, the project includes replacing existing trees, replacing existing hardscape with sidewalk curb and gutter, curb ramp improvements, new pavement, striping, protected bike lanes, wider bike lanes, buffer areas, new rubberized asphalt, four new landscape medians, crosswalk enhancements, and that's including rectangular rapid flashing beacons. We're proposing two at existing intersections at Banning and Starfar and Banning at Malibu. So we're going to talk about the roundabout. Another complete streets element that we're proposing and that we've designed is a landscape traffic roundabout at Bouchard. This intersection is ideal for a roundabout because it is located midpoint between Magnolia and Brookhurst. Bouchard Street also has low traffic volume. So based on findings and studies from the FHWA, the Federal Highways Administration, roundabouts have proven to slow traffic, and they also reduce the risk of severe injuries and fatalities. This project also provides other benefits, the roundabout. It's going to beautify a landscape median and is sustainable because fewer, fewer vehicles will stop, and it reduces fuel emissions. The roundabout also requires no signal equipment. Prior to these community engagement meetings, we had a survey that was conducted in the southeast to prioritize AES funding. That survey was conducted in September 2021. The number one priority that we heard from our residents was traffic calming. They wanted us to slow down traffic. Thereafter, we conducted two community meetings, one in December and one in January. Here we have the bid alternates that was proposed in our plans and specs. We anticipated the rising cost of construction based on past bidding results, and so we wanted to provide options for flexibility within the budget. Alternate B is an option only if we don't propose the roundabout. If we don't do it, we can do option B. That's a price tag of $151,000. Alternate C is the roundabout. That came in at 1.5 million. Alternate D are the streetlights. That bid came in at $650,000. Here is the basis of award. We had two reputable firms bid on this contract, and 5.8 million was the lowest bid to do everything. Here are the funding sources to do the proposed recommendation for the base bid, which is the paving, the sidewalks, the ramps, the landscape medians, and the crosswalks. We are also recommending lighting. Based on our funding availability, staff is recommending to defer the roundabout, which is $1.5 million savings for a total cost of $4.65 million. I wanted to bring up the AES funding summary that was recently adopted in the city budget. Based on staff's recommendation, if we proceed with funding the 1.7 million out of AES funding, that leaves $860,000 to do other potential complete streets projects. None of these projects that have been identified in the AES funding has been designed. They have been presented to the community as concepts, their ideas, and that we can pursue funding once they've been vetted. Another reason to defer the roundabout is that we were recently notified of a call for projects through OCTA two weeks ago. That is an opportunity to go after 88% of funding to cover the roundabout as well as other potential complete streets projects within the city. The call for projects is going to award $55 million within Orange County. The call is going to come out August 14th. The deadline is September, and the board will approve this in November 2023. However, there's federal funding involved in this award and this, in this opportunity, and that could cause some delays in terms of construction because of the federal authorization that's required to receive this funding if we do get awarded. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions at this time.
Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you. I really appreciate the in-depth analysis here. I happened to be at OCTA today, and they talked about the call for funding through the Complete Streets Grants, 55 million with 12% city match, which is pretty great. I was reading through the white paper on it, and it was talking about that some of this, some of the Complete Streets dollars could go towards planning. And so that kind of got me thinking about some of the other options here, and, you know, what are we trying to solve for? And I really love the idea of the roundabout there, like, it solves a major issue for residents that we have been getting emails on for quite some time, and it's been consistently like, well, we're going to get, we're going to get to a project, we're getting to a project, we're getting to a, here's the project. It's unfortunate that building costs have increased so rapidly, but I would really like to see the, the roundabout go through at this, at this phase, and seeing that the other projects that the AES money would be using would be Complete Streets dollars. In theory, could we use, I mean, you can apply for three projects with that OCTA, I think it's actually SCAG dollars that's flow-through, but could we apply for some of the bike lanes on Newland, Magnolia, Bouchard? And I did ask about landscaping, and they did say landscaping, as long as it's part of the complete project, could be included in that? Is that something we could do a swap-out for, where we could consume the rest of the AES funding to do the roundabout now and do the other, and then earmark the other Complete Streets projects that we haven't even designed yet?
No, we have not, and-
As, as for planning?
The roundabout is a very competitive project because it is already designed, it is shovel-ready. And so that is a factor, readiness is a factor in scoring, but we can certainly go after Complete Streets funding for anything citywide, even AES opportunities along Brookhurst, Magnolia, Bouchard, Newland, you name it, bike lanes, landscape medians, yes, those are eligible, we could go after that. It's just going to take some time.
Right.
Like I mentioned with federal funding, it's two years out if we do get it for construction.
Sure. So, I mean, but that gets us, that would backfill the money that we could, would potentially be-
Yes.
-using for this.
Yes.
And then I had some, you know, the, I looked at, I'd spoken with Travis earlier today on, on some of the lighting, the lighting component. When I heard enhanced lighting, I'm like, oh, that's great, that's going to make it easier for, like, I was thinking the, you know, pedestrian-level lighting, so it would be fun to walk down Banning, but it appears to just be additional streetlights. And so, again, I would be interested in looking at the option to do-
Sure.
-the roundabout and, but forego the lighting at this point, and obviously the street rehab, and swapping out some of that, that money. But I'd be interested to see what my colleagues have to say, because I'm not, I just, I think the roundabout seemed like something that the residents were really interested in, so those are my comments.
Yeah, I'll go. Done a deep dive on this. I live right around the corner, I've been talking to a lot of residents. Child, but it's my understanding, I mean, we couldn't, we can't even build the roundabout this year anyway because we can't, from talking with Public Works, we can't start construction to get it completed, you know, during the school break before school year starts. So it would have to be next year anyway, is what I was told. So in my opinion, it makes sense because the, the roundabout costs, the bid was actually double from what we projected. So logistically, we can't even start construction on it now, we'd have to wait till next summer anyway. So I think it makes sense to wait, rebid it, see if costs come down, and then we can make the decision at that point. Is that your understanding, child?
We could do the project, however, there are significant impacts to traffic at the intersection.
Right.
Because it is a three-month full closure.
Right.
We have to close the street, we're going to detour traffic, and the roundabout is less than half a mile from the school.
Right.
And there will be some, some impacts that we have to-
Yeah, I just think, like, timing-wise, it makes sense if we just, I know people want it, I mean, it's, my feedback, and it's pretty split on, on people that want it, I'd say more do, but I think logistically and timing-wise, we should wait, rebid it next year, get the full three months, you know, to start construction when school gets out, so we're not disrupting all that, you know, traffic for, for schools. And then the lighting is actually a, a big issue to the residents on, on banning. They're very adamant that, you know, the AES funds were for the immediate area that affected by AES. I have talked with them and, and mentioned that we, you know, we're confident as a city that when we trim the trees, reduce some trees, the lighting on the south side of the street will, will be better. To, for people that don't know, there is zero lighting on the north side of the street. So I'd like, I like the option D that's proposed, but I'd like to make a motion that we have staff evaluate just putting in the conduits and the pull boxes in on the north side of the street, a banning, and then increase the lumens on the existing lightheads on the south side. So we're not actually physically putting in the lights on the north side, but we're putting the conduit in there while we're digging up the street and the sidewalks. I think it'll save us about half a million dollars by doing that, and then when the project's completed, if the residents are still like, hey, it's, it's really still too dark, it's not safe, the conduit's already in, and then we can just go in and put in the light poles and kind of doing some math, that could save us about half a million dollars if we do it that way. So I would just like you guys to evaluate that and see what that will look like if my numbers are correct.
Would you like to see a slide of the different scenarios?
Sure.
Okay, option two, we do the base bid, the sidewalks, the ramps, medians, crosswalks. We defer the roundabout. We remove the street lighting. So you're looking at $3.9 million for the total project cost in that scenario. The impact would be, as I mentioned earlier, deferring the round, apply for grant, rebid it, like you mentioned. So that's the second option. Third option to the right is we do the base bid, medians, paving, sidewalk, crosswalk. Third option to the right is we do the base bid, medians, paving, sidewalk, crosswalk. We do the roundabout, but we don't do the street lighting. And that, as I mentioned, is a six-hundred-and-fifty, oh, wait, I'm sorry. That is doing everything. I'm sorry. This, this is everything. Option three is doing everything and that's a six-point-four million dollar cost. The impact of that is almost all the AES Complete Streets funding will be depleted and we would reevaluate and seek other funding for, you know, the radar feedback signs, the bike lanes and, and the landscape medians.
Chal, what
The next slide, I have another
Oh, yeah, because it's not under, okay.
Yes. So option four, we do the base bid. We do the roundabout. We don't do the street lighting. And that is a savings. That's at least a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar savings. We will be spending five-point-six million dollars. That leaves nine-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars in AES Complete Streets funding where we would reevaluate the priorities, get it designed, and still be able to compete for any Complete Streets opportunities with OCTA.
I would just ask a clarifying question, Chal. When you say we don't do the lighting, do you mean we don't do the lighting at all or we don't do enhanced lighting that some of the residents had talked about?
Yeah, I think it's enhanced.
We don't do any of the street lights at all.
Okay.
And we're talking about twenty-four new street light poles and nine additional fixtures added to existing poles. That's, that's the count that we have in design.
Well, anybody, I live in the area too that's driven down Banning. It is extremely dark for driving or walking. I think it's going to be tough to not do anything with lighting. I wanted to ask, do you know whether it's feasible to put the conduit in as Council Member McKeon described? Is that, from a technical perspective, feasible to do?
We could look into that cost because we don't have bid results for that particular element. So I, I couldn't tell you what that cost savings could be. I don't know if it's a deduct. I don't know what that change order could look like, but it would turn into a change order.
Right. Well, Chal, that's what I was thinking. If you go back to option three, that, yeah, right there?
Yeah.
So basically you take out the roundabout. So we defer that to next year because we basically have to anyway. And then it's the enhanced street lighting, which is a six-hundred-and-fifty grand. It's my understanding that's enhanced. So that's where putting lights on the north side of the street. That's what I was told. That's the six-fifty. So I think if we put the conduit in only, that's probably a quarter million dollars. So two-hundred thousand. So maybe we save four to five hundred grand right there and then can come back later and do it. So if we, that was my direction is have you guys evaluate that and come back. But the lighting is really important for sure for the residents on Banning. It's my understanding the enhanced lighting is putting actual lights on the north side of the street. And what I'm asking is just putting it in the conduit on the north side of the street. So after we do the lighting improvements on the south side, trim the trees, look at increasing the lumens on the south side, is that light enough to now cast onto the north side of the street? We actually don't have to put the physical light poles in. And if it's not, we have the conduit in, ready to go, and they'll get put lights in later. Does that make sense?
So right now, the design shows twenty new signals, new, new street light poles
Right.
on the north side, thirteen on the south, and that's
But that's, that's what I'm saying. That's the enhanced street lighting is on the north side, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying is not, not do the north side street lighting, but just put in the conduit for that.
Okay.
Right? And then increase the lumens on the southern, on the south side lights. Because hopefully like, we, we believe is when you trim those trees up, remove them on the south side, increase the lumens.
Yes.
That light will cascade onto the north side of the street and it's not looking like this, you know, twelve noon at, at night during the day, when now you got lights on the north side of the street. So I would just like to see what that would look like coming back, that cost item. Because I think it's going to save us like half a million bucks. And I've talked to the residents and they're on board with that.
So you're looking to do option three?
Basically. Without the, without the
With a change order.
Right. Without the, yeah, well, yeah, exactly. Option three without the roundabout, right?
Option three includes the roundabout.
That's what I'm saying. But yeah, my motion would be remove that because we have to defer it anyway. Right? We can't do the construction this year. So if we're going to do it next year, let's just rebid it next year. Hopefully costs come down. I'm seeing it slightly in, in the industry. So if we can't do the work anyway, we're going to still work on federal funding. Rebid it next year when we can actually start the construction, when school's over. Hopefully that million five comes down. And then now just, instead of putting the enhanced street lighting.
It's this.
Does that make sense?
So this, this is supporting staff's recommendation
Right.
and doing a change order for the street lighting component.
Correct. Yes.
I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on. My understanding is that, but also delay the roundabout from what Councilman McKeon's saying.
But that is also currently in the staff's recommendation on the
Correct.
Is it a one-year or a two-year delay though?
If it's federal funding, it'll be a two-year delay. But if we can rebid it next year, if we get, if we get the determination from OCTA that we didn't get it, we're just going to dust it off and rebid it.
Right.
So we could do it next year.
Okay.
And we would not spend these funds. We would carry it over.
And in the meantime, we'll work with OCTA as well as the federal government to try to get those funds.
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question, Chal? The project then without the roundabout, what, what, what occurs then at the Banning intersection? Is it four-way stop?
We leave it alone. It will be a four-way stop. We don't touch it.
With crosswalks?
Correct. We don't, we don't do anything to it in the meantime.
But Chal, don't the landscape medians, aren't those traffic calming as well? So that'll help with some of the speed?
Yes. The ones that are being proposed in the base bid, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I just wanted to maybe address City Manager, Al's City Manager Zalika's question. What do we do at the intersection? If, if we weren't planning to do a roundabout at all, there's some, one of the, the base, one of the bid items is improvements to the intersection. It doesn't include a roundabout. It stays a four-way stop. If we're planning to do a roundabout next year or in two years with the federal funds, then we would leave the intersection as is now and do those improvements in a year with city funding or two years if we receive the federal funding.
Well, I mean, what I'm hearing from the discussion up on the dais and, correct me if I'm wrong, that we support the roundabout, correct? Yeah. So I would think it would be that, that, we support the roundabout just based on the timing. We do another phase and go out and rebid.
Right. Because it's more, it's more expensive than we anticipated, way more expensive.
Yeah, it's like double.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, is that your motion?
Yeah. So just to repeat it, just move the, the recommended staff recommendation with the change order on the enhanced street lighting to do an evaluation to only put in the conduit on the north side of the street and also increase the lumens on the existing light heads on the south side.
And with the goal of the city council also roundabout in the future.
Correct.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
I had a question.
Good.
Um, with, so I appreciate, we definitely need the roundabout. I appreciate the fact that it's double what was originally projected. It's great that OCTA came out with this so we can proceed with that. If we don't get it, we can dust it off, move forward with it. Great. My question, I appreciate Councilmember McKeon proposing kind of the, this alternative with regards to the lighting because it also seems that lighting is really important as well. My question though with that is, would it actually, so the cost savings would only be if we saw that we didn't need to actually add the physical light poles later? Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
So if we found that we did, we wouldn't really see any cost savings, but we would at least be able to observe whether or not it was needed.
Yeah. So basically like, we, right now, because we're, we're already be out there digging up the sidewalk and the street. So when we're out there, let's put in the conduit, put the sidewalk over. And then if we come back later, it's still not, you know, lit enough. The conduit's in there. So then we can just physically put in like light poles.
Right.
You know?
If it's, if we find out later though, that it's not bright enough and we have to add that in, wouldn't that actually increase the cost of the project? Because wouldn't the, the person or the entity doing that would actually charge more since they're not doing it at the same time? Correct? So right now we have a bid that includes everything.
Yes.
If we said, just put the conduit in and we might do the rest later, then the bid changes essentially or you have a change order. But that could then increase the cost for the future, maybe negligibly.
It could though, for sure, because you'll have to remobilize, of course. I'm just talking with staff.
Sure.
I'm confident there's going to be enough light and I'm, I'm willing to take that gamble that we can save five, five hundred thousand and not have to come back later and put the lights in. But worst case that it is not lit enough, we have to come back in. Yeah, it probably will be slightly more expensive, but I don't think it will be. Once we trim these trees, remove them and increase the lumens, I think there'll be enough light on the south side cascading to the north. But I'm, I'm willing to take that bet.
Does staff agree with that? I guess that's my, since I'm not an expert in that by any means.
I, I think that it, coming back later and doing those lights, doing all the underground when we're doing work there makes, definitely makes sense and can feasibly be done. And then if you come back, we bid that and see what that is. And it, it is a separate project and it could cost more or, or not depending on the, the time. One thing I just did want to clarify, Councilmember McKeon, does your recommendation say award the staff proposed project here and then work with the contractor afterward to, when it's awarded, then to remove the streetlights on the north side?
Yes.
Conduit in and remove the streetlights?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
That would also include, we'll be adding additional lights on the south side of the street because it looks like there's additional, nine addition, there's additional poles on the south side of the street.
Right.
So include all, basically do all the improvements on the south side of the street. Pull boxes on the north side of the street.
And conduit.
And conduit.
Yeah, exactly.
But okay. So I guess the, there was, I think something that costs are going to be coming down. So in my conversations with OCTA was, are seeing projects all over the state. Because the, the argument was like, well, the four oh five project will be done at the end of the year. There'll be plenty of asphalt and workers for everybody. They're not actually seeing that happen in any other part of the state. So I think rebid, like the goal of rebidding this and hopefully the roundabouts cheaper in the future. I don't, I don't think that that's going to be, I think it's going to be either the same or more. But when I'm reading this is it looks like we're looking at construction before summer of twenty-five or rebid for summer of twenty-six. If, am I, on option two you have up there, is that, is that accurate for staff's recommendation as well? We're looking at built, rebidding, or excuse me, we're looking at construction in summer of twenty-four or we're still going to have to rebid?
So the city council, if we, so you're asking Councilmember Calmick, if we rebid the project?
Rebid the roundabout.
Roundabout. Okay. So there's two options for the city council. One is if the city wants, would like to fund it with any of the, the city's fundings available now, rebid it for next summer. It's possible to do it next summer.
Okay.
If the council would like staff to apply for the grant funding we just talked about through OCTA, then it would be the follow, it would likely be the following year.
Okay, so
Correct.
And I just want to clarify, I'm going to ask a silly question because I, I'm down there occasionally, but it's usually on weekends. Ripping this up in the middle of school year, they would come and burn your house down?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying too. Like we, we can't actually do the roundabout now because it would
I mean, we could, but
I know, but it wouldn't be done.
They can bring your house down. Okay. I just want to make sure that that's, that's the case, that this would be that much of, that much of a deterrent. Because again, the longer we wait, the more expensive everything's going to get. So if we could start, you know, January one or over summer, winter break and, you know, January and February are horrible, that would be, I just, I don't know, I don't know that intersection well enough at, at eight o'clock in the morning, if that's a problem. If it's
You don't want to be there.
Anecdotally.
You don't want to be there.
Yeah, the school's right there. It's, everyone's dropping off. Sometimes it backs up into the intersection. So, yeah.
So we want to, we definitely want to wait until summer on that one. So then I, so I want to make clear then, the motion that's on the floor then is for deferring till next year.
On the round
But not doing, not going for the OCTA grants.
Well, I think we should
We should still go for it.
Yeah, we should still go for it.
So we're looking at summer of twenty-five then?
We're going for federal funding and the OCTA.
But also, we should also reb, you know, my motion was, make sure they're listening, but also rebid it next year. You know, if it's, pursue the, the OCTA funds for sure, but then also rebid, rebid the roundabout, you know, next year.
Because the other thing I contemplated, I just want to at least suss this all out so we can get something built, would be to use more of the AES money now and then bid out the other AES stuff for the OCT, not bid out, uh, go for the AES stuff through the OCTA grants. So the other bike lanes and things like that so that we could just use more of the money. But that was, that was just contemplated. I don't know if staff hadn't, hasn't totally, I think, evaluated any of that. Using OCTA dollars for the bike lanes and stuff and using the rest of the AES money to get the roundabout confirmed for next summer as opposed to like, we'll just pay, we're going to pay cash for it and then
That is an option.
Okay.
Council has that prerogative.
Is that, is that something that there's, anybody would be palatable to? Because again, like I really want to see this, A, the roundabout is great for the intersection, but B, I think it creates a, will create jealousy in other parts of the city for this type of product that could be very helpful in traffic flows and safety.
I think with the roundabout too, why we should defer it, A, physically we can't build it without disrupting school now. And we should wait till next year because it's my understanding, we only got like one bidder. And that's why also it's really expensive. I'm confident in a year from now we'll have multiple bidders. Being on, I, I've never seen that.
We had two, right? RJ and
We had two.
Okay.
RJ Noble and Alaman.
Which is still, which is still really low, so
Who usually does our stuff.
I understand your point. I just, based on my experience, I'd like, I'd like to keep my motion the way it is and then pursue the OCTA funds. And then let's rebid the roundabout next, next summer and
Or in January.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Or January. Yep.
Whenever we need to get it, whenever it needs to flow in.
Right, exactly.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Can we restate the, what the, what the plan is?
Yeah. So, repeat, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation with them doing a change order with the contractor to put in only the conduits and the pull boxes on the north side of the street for the enhanced lighting and also increase the lumens on the existing light heads on the south side. And obviously, your, the recommendation was deferring the roundabout till, till later. And to apply for the OCTA grants. Thank you.
And I would also add federal funding and everywhere else so we can get funding.
Right.
Because shovel-ready, there, there's other areas where you can get funding as well.
Got it?
I seconded that motion. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Members, now we're on file item fourteen. Councilman Burns, you pulled the item. You may open.
Hi, Chal. Hey, can you kind of pull that up just real quick?
We can present. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Shipley Nature Center. So staff is requesting authorization to submit an application for grant funds to the State Department of Parks and Recreation for the Habitat Conservation Fund. We are looking to realign the trail at the Shipley Nature Center that is currently underwater due to flooding. And here is the exhibit. This is the site plan that we've developed so far. Design has not been done. So the grant would cover design costs as well. That concludes staff report. The total cost is about seven-hundred-thousand dollars. The grant match is fifty percent.
Yeah, I think the, the total was seven-sixty-six, six-eighteen, which is three-quarters of a million dollars for a woodchip path around that lake. And I, and half of that, so about three-eighty-three would be our share of that grant money. That seems like three-quarters of a million dollars. And I, I mean, I love our parks. I love the nature center and all that. It just seems like a lot of money for a woodchip path when we have bulldozers. We have stuff that I would think that would take about a few hours of a, well, a good driver just to go mow it and then as the public works, cuts down trees, create those woodchips and throw it down. It just seems like a lot of money. Even if it's half, it's still taxpayer money in that grant. I just, is there, it's just brutal. I, I have a big problem with three-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars going towards a thousand, rather. I'm sorry. Whoa, whoa. No, but I'm just, what's your thoughts on that? Can we, I mean, is that out of the question? Just grabbing it?
This is just concept at this time. The project has not been designed. We've built in some construction costs increase based on the bids that we've seen so far with labor and materials and dirt and wood. So we've, we've escalated the cost. There is an opportunity, if we do get awarded, we will come back to this council to identify that fifty percent match. And if the bids come in, if we go through design and the bid comes in at four-hundred-thousand dollars, our match is still fifty percent. So
Two-hundred thousand?
Yes.
So, so what you're saying is it might be more than the seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand?
No, it could be less.
No, it could be less.
Could be less?
Man, that still sounds like a lot for a woodchip path.
But if we're just looking at trying to get grant money though, we should try to get it.
It's still taxpayer money. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question. So, Chal, if, if the city was successful in getting the grant, then we have to come back to the
Correct.
council in order to have the council accept the grant?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just authorization to submit.
So if we do this authorization, submit, are we on the hook for this, this money at all?
No, only if we come back with the grant agreement.
I'm sorry.
So that's excellent though, that we should always try to get whatever grants are available to us. I know Shipley Nature Center has been dealing with this situation. I, I went on a tour with Sean originally in this particular area before, and they're basically not able to go in that area at all. And it's not just woodchips. They've looked at different designs, though there's no shovel-ready design that's there. So I think that it's important, this is something that's been going on for a long time, to at least find out if we can or if they can get matching or get grant funds for that. And then of course, it can come back to us and we can see what makes sense. I, I would definitely make the motion to, to move forward with trying to get the grant funds and then see, you know, what it looks like when it comes back.
It's been moved. It's been seconded. If I could just add, I want to commend Councilman Burns for bringing it forward and pulling the item. It does seem like a very expensive project for what we get out of it, but we'll get a second shot, bite of the apple, see what the cost, total costs are and see what we get in terms of grant funding. So that's my comments. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton? Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes seven zero.
Okay, members, uh, now we're on file item 17, um, uh, appeal of the planning commissioner's action that upheld, uh, does anyone have an ex parte communications disclosed on this item 17?
I spoke with staff on the item.
Do you have to announce that you spoke to staff?
I mean, old, old school planning commission-
Okay, all right.
Ritual of, I spoke with staff.
Staff at this time, uh, please introduce your report.
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow council members, uh, tonight before the, uh, the council is an appeal of the planning commission's action on an application for conditional use permit number 23006. This project represents, uh, a request for a CUP pursuant to the HBZSO, it is a request to, uh, install and operate a new 60-foot-high freestanding mono-broadleaf wireless communication facility on a commercial property that's currently occupied by a church. The facility itself includes a four-sector array of four-panel antennas each and utilizes stealth design by disguising the facility within the branches of a fake broadleaf tree. Uh, providing a little bit of, uh, background context for the council, this application was originally filed in February of 2023, and subsequently, uh, the first review board, uh, was the design review board that, uh, heard the project on April 13th and recommended approval as proposed to the zoning administrator, uh, on April 19th, the zoning administrator held a public hearing and conditionally approved, uh, the conditional use permit. On May 1st, an appeal was filed by Christina Price, who's an adjacent property owner, and that triggered a new de novo public hearing before the planning commission. That planning commission meeting was scheduled for June 13th, at the meeting, the planning commission did not take an action, uh, rather, there were two separate motions, one was a motion to approve, another was a substitute, uh, substitute motion to deny the application, both of those failed on a three, three-in-one vote. As such, the zoning administrator's action to approve was upheld. On June 23rd, an appeal of the planning commission's action was filed, again, by Christina Price, and that triggers the subject de novo public hearing before the city council. Wanted to introduce the project site, uh, in this exhibit, we see the subject site outlined in dark red, and the address is 8101 Slater Avenue, uh, this is on the north side of Slater, east of Beach Boulevard, the subject site is currently developed, uh, with the Huntington Beach Community Church building and onsite parking and landscaped areas, the current zoning, uh, the current zoning land use designation is commercial office, and the current general plan designation is commercial general. To the north and east of the subject site are RL zones, it's residential single-family, to the south across Slater is a residential medium-high-density zone property, and to the west is a commercial general zone property. Here's a, an exhibit of the subject site plan, the property lines are outlined in orange, and called out in blue, you can see the proposed wireless facility will be located in an existing landscape, uh, median within the existing parking lot, and there will also be an above-ground, uh, associate equipment enclosure. Here is an elevation view of the proposed facility, as you can see, it is a freestanding, uh, monopole that will be stealth designed to mirror, um, the appearance of a broadleaf tree, the panel antennas themselves will, are proposed to be a maximum overall height of 55 feet, and an additional five feet in height will be provided for, uh, in order to shroud the remainder of the facility from view, uh, and each of the panel antennas will be include, will be wrapped and shrouded in what's referred to as, as socks, and those will be, uh, complementary in materials and colors of the branches of the faux tree. These are photo simulations provided by the applicant, this is a view looking north across Slater Avenue, on the left in the, uh, is the, is a picture showing the existing condition, and on the right is the proposed condition upon the installation of the facility. In this photo sim, the view is looking west from Markin Lane, and on the left is the existing condition, and on the right is the condition upon the installation of the facility. This is a view looking south from Windy Sand Circle in the direction of Slater Avenue, on the left is the existing condition, and on the right is the proposed condition upon installation. In the analysis, the, uh, subject request is, the conditional use permit is required because communication facilities are in allowed use in commercial districts, they are subject to design review, uh, and a conditional use permit is specifically required for any new ground or utility-mounted wireless facility. Wireless communication facilities are also granted an additional, uh, 10 feet in height by right, and the zoning administrator may approve a greater height through the CUP. Uh, as I mentioned before, the proposed project is for 60-foot-high ground-mounted wireless facility, the facility and the equipment enclosure comply with all current commercial office development, uh, standards, including setbacks, parking, excuse me, and landscaping. The proposed facility does utilize stealth design techniques, as the pole, antennae, and support equipment are disguised as a mature broadleaf tree, and the proposed project is also consistent with the general plan. Uh, the appellant provided a letter to staff and the city council, and I'm going, uh, they make several arguments, I'm just going to try to briefly touch upon, uh, the tenets of those arguments, uh, in its, in the basis of the appeal, the appellant claims that the planning commission vote was insufficient to grant the conditional use permit or make a finding of a sequoia exemption, I wanted to reiterate that the planning commission action did not actually grant the CUP, nor did it approve a sequoia exemption, the tie vote on both motions failed to meet findings for either approval or denial, and as such, the zoning administrator's approval was upheld. The next claim is that no planning commission vote, there was no planning commission vote to approve the sequoia exemption, each of the motions, either to approve or deny, was inclusive of a finding for, uh, the sequoia exemption, the tie votes made neither determination, and again, the zoning administrator's approval was upheld. There is also a claim in the appellant letter that the application was incomplete, uh, I just wanted to clarify that the wireless permit application is not necessary for the subject request, the application for the CUP was deemed complete by staff in order to move forward for processing. Additionally, there was a claim of insufficient evidence submitted, and there are several subcategories, and the nature of no detriment to property values, uh, the ZSO does not require the applicant to specifically demonstrate, uh, a reduction in property values, and in addition, the appellant has not supplied any specific, site-specific data or information to support that claim. Uh, additionally, that, there was a claim that, uh, future modifications to the facility, and any future modification to either the height or the appearance of this proposed facility would be subject to a new conditional use permit, so we feel that that is a bit out of context of the subject CUP. Uh, there is also a identification of other facilities that are within a thousand feet of the subject site, and although the demonstration of this was not a requirement for the CUP, staff did identify at the planning commission level that we verified that there were no antennas within a thousand feet, I would like to clarify for the record and for the council, um, that the appellant's letter in this specific instance was correct, there is a facility that's located approximately 840 feet due west of the subject site, um, this is a roof-mounted wireless facility that was modified in 2020, uh, and so the difference in that case is that, um, a roof-mounted facility is defined separately from a ground-mounted facility, um, and so in addition to this not being a requirement for the conditional use permit application to be reviewed by the city, um, there was not a violation of the submittal or processing requirements with this facility being that certain distance. Further, there was a claim of, uh, no detriment to the property values, as, as I recommended, or as I pointed out earlier, the demonstration is not a requirement, and there was no data or information submitted to support that claim. There's also a claim that the project does not qualify for a sequoia exemption under the guideline section 15303, staff contends that the proposed project does fall within the scope of the cited exemption, and we are recommending as such. The appellant also identifies unusual circumstances that may exist regarding, uh, Cooper's hawk. Uh, staff would like to state that the presence of the hawk does not necessarily indicate harm that can be directly tied to a proposed project, and further compliance with the Migratory Bird Treaty Act is also not a requirement under the HBZSO. Finally, the, uh, claim, the appellant claims that the applicant has not demonstrated that a federal preemption applies, um, more specifically, that there was a material incomplete application, that inadequate documentation, uh, to identify a gap in service, and that the city has not retained an expert opinion prior to accepting a claim. This is a pretty specific requirement in the ZSO, a claim of denial of service would be applicable after the first action of discretionary review, that would be at the zoning administrator level, and it would be applicable if the zoning administrator had denied the project, that did not in fact occur, and so in this particular case, uh, staff does not believe that this is germane to what's before the council tonight. And just for a comparison between the objectives of the ZSO in its stealth technique, uh, requirement, again, we have just some comparison, on the left is one of the photo sims provided by the applicant showing that the facility will be enclosed and mimic the appearance of a broadleaf tree, uh, and on the right are several other freestanding wireless facilities that are currently installed and operating on Huntington Beach High School, um, and so the ZSO's requirement for stealth techniques is in, in response to the desire to not have facilities look like what we see, uh, at the high school, and in that, in that context, we feel that this proposed project does meet the requirements of the ZSO. At this time, staff's recommendation is that the council deny the appeal and approve the conditional use permit as proposed, staff's available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions, members? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Is this-
Mayor Protem.
Is this, is this really the only location you guys can, that tower can go up, is there no other location available?
So, I, from, from staff's perspective, um, it's, it's not, uh, a decision that we can make as a local agency, so, uh, the applicant has submitted, uh, evidence of their efforts to, I, identify, meet with, and converse with other property owners in the area, uh, sites that would meet the, uh, gap in service that they're trying to remedy, so, uh, to the extent that the application is complete, the applicant has demonstrated a good faith effort to find alternative sites.
Could you describe what that good faith effort would look like? I'm, I'm trying to just figure out the process, did, did they say, well, we looked at five of these sites, we looked at 10 sites, did they show proof that they looked, um, four other sites?
Um, it, I'll ask the applicant to come up and just kind of support that, that question, but, um, effectively, uh, as part of the application, they did identify a site justification request, they identified multiple other commercial properties that, uh, fell within the, the scope of, of their desire for additional, uh, infrastructure, and so, to the extent that our code requires that disclosure, they did satisfy that.
And this is on private property, right?
The subject site is privately owned, yes.
So, back in 2009, they were going to put a cell tower out by the Harborview Park, that was public property, and I believe Measure C, um, actually applied to that, we were able to stop it only because of that, um, I don't believe they've ever brought a cell tower down, once it's been up is what we were told back in 2009, when a bunch of us actually were upset about it, we were not comfortable, it was around a school, we weren't comfortable that, it was literally 10 feet from the school, um, I actually do not like that, it's, I, if I recall correctly, could you go back a few slides?
Sure.
I saw, I believe I saw a house, like, that one, where the arrow, is that a house? Like-
Yes.
House to the right, all around.
How far is that?
Sixty-five feet.
Sixty-five.
I'm gonna pull up the site plan for some additional context here.
Mayor?
Yes.
We're just, I'm getting some signals from our attorney that we do have the public hearing and some testimony, our applicant's here, he could probably share some information, he's the first one to be called to speak.
No, I was just going along with the agenda that you sent me.
We were just kind of like flagging each other here.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we can-
I was just going along with the agenda-
Some of these questions might be answered.
Yeah, we, we can, um-
Well, just for, just for clarification, so everybody understands the process, so at this point, if, if you have, if council members have questions for staff, that's fine, but before you get into opinions or commentary or how you might vote, you just want to hold off on that until you've gotten all the input from the public.
Right now, it's the section of, uh, uh, council member questions to staff.
So, that was a house, like, 55 feet away?
There are homes surrounding the site, yes.
Okay, at this time-
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mrs. Luna Reynosa, can you just explain how federal law only allows, uh, the city to have discretion over the aesthetic design guidelines?
Yes, and, and actually, Hayden is probably much more eloquent at that than I am, but essentially, um, we, our jurisdiction, the area we have purview over is related to the aesthetics and the development standards in that zone, um, so federal law has preempted cities from, um, taking health concerns and other matters that typically come up in these types of issues, um, from our consideration.
Do we have discretion, though, over the height of the tower?
Well, the height is an objective standard in this, in the code, and so, the analysis that staff does is looks at the height and sees if it complies with that objective standard, and it, it does.
Okay, but we do have discretion over that theoretically?
Um, yes, it's difficult to implore discretion on objective standards, but there could be other things like aesthetics, uh, if you didn't like the tree, um, as the stealth solution and wanted to propose a different type of solution, you would have discretion in that matter.
Thank you.
What you're saying, I'm sorry, I'll follow up, uh, but what you're saying is we don't have discretion in terms of the exact location, um, it's just the aesthetics that we have discretion over.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, City Attorney Michael Gates, is that your understanding as well?
Well, there's a, there's a host of issues, the, the FCC does have jurisdiction over a project like this, and the FCC basically, um, basically dictates to local jurisdictions what they can and cannot, um, and I think Ms. Luna Reynosa articulated, basically, um-
So, we can't deny this based on the exact location, uh, because obviously, if we did something that was a violation of federal law, it would go right to you.
Well, and according to planning staff, and, and there's a whole team of folks who've been working with the, the applicant, they've met all the requirements, um, basically that the federal law contemplates, um, to sort of check the boxes, um, and so this location is what's left.
So, I want to ask you the question, if, for whatever reason, the city council denies this, uh, at this time, it would just go right to court case and right to you, correct? Because federal law is pretty clear on, on this.
There could be a federal challenge, for sure.
Okay.
And, and Mayor Strickland, if I may, just to add a little bit related to location, it's as the zoning code subscribes in terms of setbacks, height, so there's some ability to talk about the site, the citation of this, um, in relation to the standards provided in the zoning code.
Okay, thank you, thanks for that clarification, any other questions, some members? If not, then, um, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak for this portion of the public hearing?
Yes, we do, so we can open it, for sure.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I'd like to read some supplemental communications that were received on this item, 17, we received letters, uh, three letters, actually, one, two, three, five letters and 12 emails on this item, and they were uploaded to the city's website as part of supplemental communication, and then, um, we have right now currently six people signed up to speak, and I'm gonna call them out, John Silverman. Um, is it?
Coral Jean.
Zeno. Zeno, I'm sorry, Rick Cook, David Gridley, Scott Boxley, Ariel Stravis.
Okay, before we move forward on the speakers, I have to announce this, uh, individuals wishing to provide a comment on items scheduled in the public hearing may do so either in person or by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk, all speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name, each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of the speaker's warrants reducing, uh, the time allowance, um, and with that, uh, please, uh, before, thank you for being here.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council, my name is John Silverman, I'm a smart link, uh, we're the developers who work with AT&amp;T in site acquisition for these sorts of projects, just as a general note, we would like to stress the point that the purpose of this project and all of these projects is to serve the surrounding community and not to do their detriment, specifically in our specific focus on FirstNet, which grants a priority, and we have a specific, AT&amp;T has a specific contract with this product, which is, FirstNet grants priority to first responders' calls in situations of emergencies over other calls, um, just to address some of the complaints, uh, not the complaints but the arguments against by, uh, Mr. Strauss, who's the attorney for the applicant, uh, we would like to note that the property values, uh, in our experience, more and more homebuyers are placing a premium on wireless community connectivity, um, specifically, the location is very important when it comes to evaluating whether or not there will be any sort of detriment to the property values, and none of the evidence that was submitted, uh, is in regards to anything even remotely like Huntington Beach, it's all rural areas in Santa Cruz County, and another site that's about 300 miles away, significantly different. Um, concerning the, uh, applicant, oh, I'm sorry, the appellant, the appellant's concern about that Cooper's hawk and any other nesting birds, AT&amp;T is readily agreeable to a condition of approval, such that we would do a nesting study prior to construction, prior to, uh, the pulling of the construction, uh, permits, to show that these birds were not present. Uh, also- that these birds were not present. Also, the appellant complains about noise and that our project as proposed would violate the noise ordinance. We would, again, readily agree to a condition of approval, which is normal in these sorts of situations, that we would meet the thresholds or be below the thresholds of the noise ordinance before we pulled the construction permit. And I would make myself, the rest of my time, available for any questions.
Thank you for being here. Next, go ahead.
Yeah, we're waiting for public comment, and Pat, then Councilman Burns, and we can bring him back up.
Yeah, great.
All right. Ma'am, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Coral Jean Zeno, and appreciate being here. And I spoke with Casey on the phone, and we appreciated being reached out to by, by some of the members. And I especially appreciated Butch Twining being here tonight. He was one of the ones who was very supportive during our last meeting, and, and he agreed he would not buy a house with this thing 55 feet behind your, you know, and I know we're not supposed to talk about health risks and things, but another man mentioned tonight an Indian proverb that you have to think seven generations down. 5G is new technology. What, what are we gonna be looking at in another 20, 30 years? So you can't just blanket say we can't be concerned about our health. And, and Butch Twining also had mentioned that he, he said, how many people did you reach out to? Because when I had emailed prior to the first meeting, basically the church was the only one that responded to the offer. They want the money, flat out. He said, I know some of the owners of these other places on Beach Boulevard. I'll help you. I'll go talk to them. I'm sure they'd like easy money. And, but that meeting, there were supposed to be seven people. We paid $5,000 to go before the seven people, and then we thought, wow, three, three voted in our favor. It's a tie. That's gonna go in our favor. And then we were told, no, the one was on vacation, and the 3-3 meant that the original decision was upheld. And we were shocked. But it's just, it's amazing to me that something like this, that everyone acknowledges they don't want in their backyard. And we don't live in Wyoming. Having a cell tower nearby may be great for that, but if you go on AT&amp;T's advertisements for new customers, they don't show a gap in coverage. I have, my internet's fine, how about yours? Yeah. This is not something, when I look at, I sent a picture through my, from my bar in my kitchen. This thing will be in my sight view, and it's not acceptable. And I, I know that you say there's nothing you can do, and it might lead directly to a lawsuit, but I don't think the city has ever steered away from a lawsuit before. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Well, I've got a lot to say, three minutes, so I want to speak fast, and be completely straightforward with you. There's been more than 12 emails, because last time we were here, they said there was over 30, so plus the 12. This is, I got three minutes to speak. So, you know, do you realize it's cost $4,000 every time we come here to speak with you? And there's nothing we could do. Well, why are you taking our money? Why don't you give us a chance to appeal? And I don't believe there, there is something you could do. You're the mayor, you're the city council members. Are we married to FCC and lawsuits and money? I see in God we trust. Take it down. Take it down. God's about families and safety and well-being. I'm a firefighter, I'm a fire captain for the county, and I'm a public servant like you, we're the same. We just do different jobs. I protect them, you protect me, we protect them, right? I pay $100 in union dues every month, $100. You know where that money goes to? Electing politicians, lobbying, who's gonna come in to support us? So why are you gonna put it in my front yard? Those are all homes. Do you understand from that sign and that over here to there, that's the distance? Can you, like, if you forget anything I say, just remember how close this is to our house. That's the window where they put their, and I don't want to hear stealth one more time. There's nothing stealth about this. If we can't go based on the studies from 1997 from the FCC, that's what they're going on, we're so afraid of it, whatever. You can't go for the Cooper's hawk. They didn't do their environmental checklist. Why are we exempt from Sea Wallop, son? Well, there's been no environmental checklists. I'm like, I just, I just want to throw up, and by the way, it's supposed to be in the mountains again, this is the second time, supposed to be in the deck having a cocktail, but I'm here. If you're not gonna do it based on the environment and the safety, which we can't talk about, if you can't talk about, that's, that's red flags right there. Why don't you do the property values? The civilians, the residents aren't responsible for provide. Last time, the applicant said, yeah, there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a drop in property values. We all know that. The last time we were here, there was also consensus that no one wanted it here. And there was a tie vote, and there was a tie because one guy was in Italy. We paid $4,500 for not a tie vote, and it didn't go to the runner. It went to the applicant. It just, it just makes me sick. So anyway, so we're, this has already affected our well-being, stress for four months, and this has cost us $15,000. $8,000 for just to apply, because you said there's nothing we could do. So why are we here? Plus, we have a lawyer, and please give him the time, because last time we were here, it was 3 to 1. The applicant had, and he didn't, I heard they paid $160, $160. He had the floor, 3 to 1. Our lawyer got cut and shut off. There's a lot of sidebars, hey, we'll talk about that in private. Kennedy had a lot of great questions. He was always silenced. Hey, we'll talk about it in private at a public hearing. Nothing was recorded. And then Oscar Rodriguez goes, hey, I'm a conflict of interest, I live too close. There's a little sidebar, tit, 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 that wasn't recorded. He goes, oh, I could vote, we're fine. He was the first emotion to deny us. So, oh, six days later, you wanna, you wanna appeal? You got six days, come back with another $4,500. We had, did you guys look at the 100 petition signatures we had? The emails? You cannot put this monster, we are literally...
Five seconds.
We're facing the giants. This is literally David, the headline will be David versus Goliath. I plead with you. Don't put this in my yard. I beg of you. We'll find out tonight where you guys hang your hat, with the citizens or with AT&amp;T Incorporated.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Yes, hello, my name's David Gridley. I live at 8062 Windy Sands Circle. I just want to say our planning commission meeting seemed very slanted towards AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T had all the time to talk to the commission, and when it was our turn, it was very limited. We were cut out of many, we were cut off many times, but, but the AT&amp;T representative was not cut off once. We paid the appeal, not, not AT&amp;T. We did have 50% of the appeal or the vote, but yet it, it fell back to the original decision for the seventh vote. It just seemed very unfair. And even the AT&amp;T, very disrespectful to Huntington Beach citizens that were opposed to the tower. I do want to thank the planning commission for reprimanding the AT&amp;T representative for his comments. You know, and we had another member on, on, on the, on the board saying how it wasn't fair for people who couldn't afford this, you know, like, like in the future, like, so we can't really, you know, we have to keep it approving, and yet we live in one of the cheapest single-family living, our homes. Whenever it comes for sale in Huntington Beach, it's just one of the cheapest areas there are for a single-family home. We don't have the money for this. And we keep trying to fight it, and it seems for, for no reason at all. There was some sites that they had talked about, but it seemed like there was no point of contact with anybody that replied, just, just, just the church. So I don't know, think it was very, you know, they put the effort and time into it. It, it, like we said, it's 60 feet, 60, 70 feet to one of the houses that live there. You know, how do we, as Huntington Beach residents, have to pay to stop AT&amp;T for putting this in my backyard? We are hard working people that pay our taxes, but yet AT&amp;T seems to have more say than HB resident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
What?
Thank you for being here.
Okay. I'm Scott Boxley. My wife is a original homeowner at 8081 Windy Sands Circle, and we are very much opposed to it in that the site is not exactly ugly, but I mean, it's slightly. We don't care for it, we don't want the, the obstructions, we don't like the, the things that have been approved, that we feel that we have a vote that should be listened to as far as what our opinions are and the cases that have been brought up. Your objections of about 10 feet and stuff, we're, we're talking, they said that it's supposed to be, cell sites are supposed to be, you know, 500 to 1,000 feet away from, from dense population. Well, it's, the community is not dense, but it is a small little community of 24 homes. We had issues with other things happening other than just the cell towers. I mean, the dealerships used to park and block our streets off when they would unload their vehicles for the, for the car dealerships. We've had other issues from people at the Salvation Army. These, these things have been ongoing over and over, and different things are coming up, and this just seems like the camel that's breaking the camel, I mean, the straw that breaks the camel back. We just would like to be considered as far as our views in getting something more, a better site, a better location, whatever you want to call it. We, we're here as a, as a body of people that object to it, and I don't see anybody that's really fighting for it, other than the lawyers on the side of, of the church and the other people that are just not living there. The church is only active two or three days a week, so there's nobody being hurt there, sure, because they're not around the, the cell tower. As I've listened to different FBS programs about cell towers, how the bees are being affected, so now we don't have a good pollination, pollination between plants and, and the bees. We don't have all kinds of different things that supposedly is safe, but it's not. I heard the bell, so...
10 seconds.
Pardon?
10 seconds left.
Okay.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Okay, my name is Jen. I'm gonna try to get through this without getting emotional, but, and some of the stuff's already been said, but I'm just really upset about this cell phone tower. It's gonna sit 75 feet from my son's bedroom and our backyard. I'm concerned for the health, aesthetics of the tower as well, the value of the home. I think everyone can agree that these terrible towers are terrible looking, and no one in this room would really want this in their backyard. The tower doesn't look anything like a real tree. They can say it does, but it doesn't. It's something we're gonna have to look at every day. Every time I look out my bedroom window, my kitchen window, I'll just have to look at it. As stealthy as they want to make it, they are hideous. Please vote no on this proposal. I ask you, what if this was going in your backyard? Would you still say yes? What happens in 20 years if someone, this is what happened to me. 20 years ago, we purchased this house. There was no cell phone tower in the backyard. So this is what's happening to us, and it just doesn't seem fair. I understand, and I've heard multiple times tonight that your hands are tied, and there's nothing, anything anyone can do, and which makes getting up here to do public speaking, which I hate anyway, even harder. I just, I, I sort of heard you answer, but I was curious as the 2009 Harborview area, how you guys, the city at that time voted no, and they took that down. That, that had already started. And I'm just curious if the rules are different now than they were then, and maybe it has something to do with the private, it was on private land and this is, that was on public land. I'm not certain about that. Another concern is our, is our property values. One of your planning commissioners stated that his research showed studies saying values of home go down by 6 to 30%, and also that a number of people don't want to live by them. I think we all can agree, no one wants to live by this. No one would want this in their yard. No one would want to deal with this. There are many other open areas. There's a huge lot on Beach and Slater, just in the front of, off Beach Boulevard by where the Pizza Head is. Did they try that area? I understand, I don't understand why you can't take into consideration any arguments about our health. It makes zero sense. No one knows the effect of these RF waves on our body. The scary part is, and we could end up finding, finding out years later that they had a lot of, they caused a lot of health issues, asbestos roundup, all of those things now are bad. So I'm concerned for my family, and I'm concerned for our health. AT&amp;T has met the burden of fulfilling the letter of the law, but how about the spirit of the law? Just because something is lawful does not make it right. They may have checked off all the boxes to meet the federal requirements set forth by the federal government, but installation of this device will negatively impact the quality of life of HB residents and those living close to the, to the tower. Please vote this down. Please say no to something that isn't necessary. I can't vote. Please vote for me, my family, and my neighbors. If there was a way in 2019, please find a way in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for Ariel Strauss.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm Protem. Council members, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Ariel Strauss. I'm counsel for Christina Price, the appellant. I would be happy to answer any questions later tonight, and I hope I have the opportunity to do so. This is not a complicated case, and it's not a problem of federal preemption. The city has full authority to impose its own standards and mandate that the ordinance as written be complied with fully. There are numerous cases holding this in federal court, that a failure to complete an application as required by the ordinance is a basis for denial. It is not, there is no federal preemption issue there whatsoever. Your ordinance would have to be attacked on its face to do so, and no one here has contained your ordinance as invalid. The issue here is that unfortunately, staff have not required AT&amp;T to actually comply with the ordinance, and I'm perplexed by some of the things I'm hearing. You know, I'm hearing, for instance, somehow that property that, that there's no requirement to consider co-location on roof-mounted antennas when you seek a CUP, but if an applicant wanted a simple wireless permit, they would have to co-locate? This is absurd, and it's simply not consistent whatsoever with the definitions in the code itself. So there's a requirement of locations of all otherwise antennas within 1,000 feet of opposed ground-mounted facility be identified, and co-location be taken whenever technically feasible. And this is obvious because you have the situation we're seeing, situation we're seeing right now, where this new tower is going up, has massive impacts, and they can be avoided by co-location. And now we're hearing just tonight, for the first time, that basically the work that I was hired to do and that the public has done somehow discovers that within 1,000 feet, within 850 feet, there was in fact an existing wireless, wireless antenna, and no one evaluated the opportunity to co-locate there. And in fact, that site, that building is the tallest building of all the buildings on that intersection. It's taller than the Walgreens that was identified by AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T was obligated to identify sites within 1,000 feet. They did not do so. They're obligated to determine where they could co-locate on those sites. They did not do so. This is not the time and place where we can assess whether that co-location is feasible. It has to be done in a proper, technical, and settled manner, not with 38 seconds left. So you have all the discretion you need. The code, your code is well-written, it's clear. In order to obtain a conditional use permit, permit, there's a requirement that it not be detrimental to the value of property improvements in the vicinity. I don't understand how that does not mean that you look into whether the property value of a site within, a house within 55 feet will be impacted. It plainly must be done, and you can see with your own eyes and from the testimony of the people who live there, that when they look out their house, they're gonna see a large tower that's plastic. And this plastic has not been shown to be visibly...
Five seconds.
...compliant with your own requirements in the application itself. I look forward to the opportunity to speak with you further and answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more speakers, so you could close the public hearing.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And then now, members will have discussion on the item. Any other, I believe Councilman Burns, you had a question? Do you want to bring up someone?
Yeah, anybody, both you guys can come up if you want.
Both you guys can come up if you want. Obviously, this is, this is difficult, and yeah, I wouldn't want it by my house. I sure wouldn't want it in my backyard, and there's no doubt about that. But do either of you guys have the answer of comparable, what's the, that, that tower's gonna be, we all agree, it's gonna be emitting some kind of RF, right?
That's right.
Are we, okay, how does that compare to like a cell phone against your head?
So just to clarify, those questions are for the FCC to evaluate in terms of whether or not they will be licensing, they will be licensing and allowing this site to go online or not. It is not up to the local jurisdiction to evaluate those things, because the federal law is already dictated. And the law, though it does empower the FCC, was passed in 1997. The regulations have been updated regularly since then. So the regulations in regards to the RF emissions, which we have already shown through submitted materials, which was an EME report attached... materials, which was an EME report attached, as I believe attachment be to our legal letter, we are already significantly under the proposed, in terms of the proposed setup of this site, we are under the legal limits required, or maximum requirements for a setup by the FCC.
Yeah, I was just looking for a perspective on a comparison of some kind.
Hey, Councilman, while I in general do agree that this is a matter for the FCC, you don't have discretion to set different levels. The FCC, in fact, just a few years ago, was in federal court, was determined actually to have acted arbitrarily and capriciously in determining that the levels are appropriate for health, and they are in fact are required to re-review them now. I don't mean to say that gives you additional authority here. Again, the focus needs to be, as I see it, and I would advise, would be to focus on your own code and make sure that it's fully compliant. And your code, I want to point out, Section 230.96G6 says, quote, "All wireless communication facilities must meet or exceed current federal and state laws, standards, regulations of the FCC." And the FCC has environmental regulations, which right now, a petition is before the FCC whether or not AT&amp;T has complied. And we were informed just a few days ago that the FCC is reviewing the potential AT&amp;T failure to comply with FCC environmental regulations.
So to clarify, those regulations are met with every single site before those sites are brought online, and the process is through the federal government, through the FCC, and usually it takes much longer than the zoning process. We will, in this project, and in every single project that AT&amp;T proposes, or any wireless proposes, have to meet those guidelines. So even without the letter that Mr. Strauss sent to the FCC, we would still have to prove that we would be meeting the environmental guidelines as set out by the FCC, which we will do.
I would direct you to, perhaps you don't have the opportunity right now, but I sent a letter a few days ago that included as an attachment communications with AT&amp;T prior to the planning commission hearing, in which AT&amp;T had stated that they did not intend to conduct an environmental assessment. And that is what the issue is before the FCC.
You guys, we're not going to let you guys litigate this thing here. It's a tough decision. It's just, it's brutal, but we're not going to let you guys litigate it here. You guys are going to have to find a forum for that on your own.
Councilman McKinn.
Yeah, I have a massive issue with this. This goes against my core beliefs, which is always defending local control. And the residents obviously are adamantly opposed to this. Yeah, we have federal law slash overreach removing our local control. So I have a massive issue with that. So rather than voting to deny it, which I will do, I always look to find a solution. And I'm in the commercial real estate sector, and so I would like to understand and pursue other site opportunities, because looking at the list of the 11 sites you guys looked at, I find it hard to believe that some of these property owners would not be interested in a lease with AT&amp;T for a cellphone tower. These are very sought after if you have shopping centers, commercial properties, et cetera. I'm sure you guys have flushed it out, but I mean, just looking at the list, like Site 1, the 8071 Slater Avenue, it was going to take up too many parking spaces. Consequently, the property owner declined to lease space. Why can't you do a rooftop cellphone tower?
Because the rooftop is not structurally sound for the weight of the equipment. We evaluated that.
You can't reinforce the roof?
Not without the landlord's approvals, and they said we were not allowed to do so.
Okay.
And that we would also not allowed to be built on the roof, even if the roof was effective.
So, all right. Site 2, you know, Charter Center, tall building, again, they're not interested in leasing space at all for a cellphone tower?
They said no, twice.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Because they said they had no more roof.
Okay.
They already have two sites there, apparently.
All right.
And they also, we also asked about not just the rooftop, but they have a parking structure behind that. If the, which address are we talking about, right?
Charter Center. 17011 Beach Boulevard.
Right. So they, we also asked about the area behind the building, which I believe has a parking structure, but they also said no, because they already had a wireless unit there as well.
Okay. So let's put a pin in that. A175 Warner Avenue, the Lowe's, I mean, to me, that's a perfect opportunity for.
It's owned by the school district.
Okay, so that's public. Yep, you're right, good call.
Also, we asked them, and they said no.
The owners of 17262 Beach Boulevard, that vacant lot?
They never responded.
Okay.
Despite certified letters, despite emails, despite calls. All made by myself over the last eight months.
All right, we'll put a pin in that one, too. 17191 Beach Boulevard, that basically a vacant lot?
Yeah, they'd never responded either. When I first was approaching them, there was what seemed to be a business in operation there, which was a first impression, full-service sign shop. I approached the owners personally, but they never responded. And no one was ever there when I went to the property.
Okay, so I think there's three there, three potentials, if I look at it correctly. The one question was.
Sorry, which three?
So one Charter Center, when I said put a pin in it, the attorney for the appellant brought up a really good opportunity, a really good point, in my opinion, with now there is another cell tower within 800 feet, so are there co?
Just to clarify.
Sure.
There isn't another cell tower within 1,000 feet. There's a rooftop site.
Okay.
And that regulation regards from the local laws is concerning the ground-mounted facilities. As far as I understand, my review and the city's review of the nearby area, there is no ground-mounted, that was always our first step, is to try and see if we can co-locate with a pole that's already present within the area.
So you cannot pursue these co-locate opportunities, like the existing one that's within 800 feet?
Sorry, which address is that?
Whatever they just brought up, that there was one within 800 feet, and you said it's a rooftop-mounted system, right? Can you not co-locate with that?
Well, it depends on whether or not the owners want to.
Okay.
But there's no co-location with specifically that wireless site. To be clear, when, when we're building on a, on a building rooftop, a co-location, it's not really the same as when there's a ground-mounted pole, which we would just put our antennas above or below the currently existing antennas on the same pole. We would have to be leasing a separate piece of the building, so it's not technically a co-location.
I understand. What I'm trying to do is find a solution that makes everybody happy, and if, A, it's finding one of these sites where the owners haven't gone back to you.
Could we ask the city what?
Sure. But let me just finish real quick.
Councilmember, if I have opportunity, I would appreciate a moment, but I don't want to interrupt.
Just let me finish, and then we'll get to it.
Certainly.
And then, so there's those opportunities with those property owners. Then first, I think we should pursue these co-locate opportunities, right? I understand you have maybe connected with them, but then lastly, because it's a lot easier to add on existing locations to co-locate, right? To, you know, reduce your guys, or reduce the coverage gap. But then, is there ways where the city can incentivize you guys, or incentivize these property owners that haven't gotten back to you, to maybe do a lease with you in these locations that haven't responded? I mean, you know, I would look to staff as a way we can help you contact them. I mean, myself and my business, we contact property owners all the time that we can't get a hold of. I'm happy to help myself. You know, so it's just like, I don't feel we've exhausted every opportunity. I know you've tried, I know they haven't gotten back to you, but that's pretty common. But especially this vacant lot on Beach, and then the other owner on this 17191 Beach Boulevard, I mean, I think he would be, they would be climbing over themselves to have a lease with AT&amp;T for a cellphone tower, so.
I can't speak to what they would or wouldn't do.
Sure, I understand, but it is very lucrative to have this on your property, so.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, so I just, I feel like that's opportunities to maybe table this, to help you guys, contact these owners.
So normally, we would be fine with that, but as we applied in February, the year is a federally mandated shot clock, which is up in a week or so, if, I believe it's 7:24.
What does that mean?
I believe the city attorney could probably discuss better what viability, or what vulnerabilities that puts the city at if the shot clock has gone past.
Yeah, and we're lucky tonight, we have one of my attorneys who is more specialized in this area. Connor Highland is on hand to help answer these questions. I would like to know, too, maybe it's Connor or one of the attorneys about extension, or maybe our planning staff extensions to the federal shot clock, because sometimes those deadlines can be continued. So anyway, Connor, if you can help out.
Yeah, the FCC regulations do require that a city takes action on a application for a wireless facility within 150 days, and that would be up, I believe, July 27th for the current application.
Options to extend?
I don't believe there are any options to extend.
Can I, can I get a clarification, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Is taking action denial as well?
Yes, denial would be taking action.
If we denied, we've, we've fulfilled that, that action, and then we can then move back and see if there's other locations, is that correct?
You would have taken action on the application, yes.
So denial is an action?
It is an action, yes.
Good. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. These are always really hard items, I think, as Councilmember Burns said, right? The FCC has preempted us on quite a few issues here. I don't know if, as an applicant who's applied in February, like, I mean, take this as not a cellphone tower, somebody that wants to build a house. Are we going to add every instance, say, well, what if you look at this location to build your house, you look at this location to build your house? Like, it's very subjective, I think, in, in the role of this body to up or down, approve or deny a project that's been submitted. We did a bunch of these on, on planning commission, and they are difficult to get through, because obviously the residents don't want them in their backyard. But this is, you know, I was, I've looked at this as infrastructure for a very long time, and the reason that the FCC is, has these rules is so that they could build out this infrastructure in a rapid fashion, and that was part of the Telecommunications Act of 96. Again, like, my daughter's going to school at Lakeview in September, and so, you know, I hear the residents that don't want to see these things pop up, but they're, they're in a lot of places you don't actually see, and I think the aesthetics of this are, a macro tower is a macro tower. I'm guessing AT&amp;T wouldn't want to build one of these if they didn't have to, right? They're not going to, they're not going to go spend a million dollars. I don't, I don't know what the cost is of these, but.
I think the construction stocks cost right now are estimated around $800,000, but yes.
So a close guess, but like, if they didn't have to, right? They're a for-profit company that if they could build, I mean, you can tell some, where you drop a call, it's your 80 feet in the wrong direction. Most companies are spacing towers as far as possible as can and building as few as possible. I think asking an applicant to sit down and go through and co-locate on another facility is not what they're being asked, what they're asking for tonight, and it sounds like they went through quite a bit of diligence on their own, and some of our, this is the problem why Beach Boulevard hasn't developed in a certain, in certain fashion, why we still have dirt lots, because nobody answers their phone when a developer calls, right? Like, I'm sure someone would jump to build, you know, something on Beach Boulevard at some of these dirt lots, but haven't, because they don't answer their phone, or it's owned by a family trust in Idaho, and we saw a bunch of those projects come through, too, where, you know, the owners in Hawaii, or Idaho, or Colorado, and they're not local owners anymore. So, yeah, I mean, I think that by denying this project, I think we would end up in federal court pretty quickly, and with, I don't know our exposure on this, but I have a feeling it costs us a lot of money and a cellphone tower gets built. Like, I, that would be my concern. I mean, I don't know if this is a question for the city attorney's office. I mean, have we denied a cellphone tower in town in the last 15 years?
I don't know if we've denied any, and I would look to planning staff for help on that. We have worked with Verizon, other providers, to actually get different locations. I will say that while there are potentially federal issues at stake in terms of a potential challenge, it remains to be seen what those challenges are. I don't know how they fit with the FCC or some other entity. I will tell you that I didn't mean to suggest that the FCC or the federal government is choosing this location, right? So if there is an alternate location that's discovered, and it makes everybody happy, the FCC will be just as happy with that alternate location. So it's not this location that the federal government was concerned about. And I'm just saying that when you talk about there's a challenge, a federal lawsuit, then it remains to be seen how that's articulated and what's, what's brought to bear in that.
I understand. So I guess, I mean, I guess if staff can quickly talk about what happened at Harborview, we've got some emails on that. I didn't have, I vaguely have the history, and so if staff could talk about what, the difference between Harborview and this project, and then if you could answer the direct question of have we denied any cellphone towers?
Well, I'll answer that question first. I think Harborview is the only one that we are aware of that has been denied, and that was on public property, which means it was subject to Measure C. And so I think we're all familiar with Measure C and what that means in terms of building on public property. It needs to go to a vote of the people, and that was a successful way for the applicant to understand that that process was in place, and they had to comply with it.
And so, I mean, can you take us through the, the end of that discussion, right? So they applied, Measure C was going to be invoked, and so they withdrew their application, or the city ended up denying the application?
Prior to my tenure with the city, Hayden, do you happen, I think you did some research?
Sure. Per, per the records, the two wireless permit applications in that scenario were revoked by a vote of the council. And those were conditional use permits or wireless applications? Those were wireless applications. Okay, so not necessarily apples to apples. Okay. Yeah, as I said, this, these are, these are always obviously difficult when we're preempted by everything but aesthetics, and I, again, the, our zoning code, obviously, it sounds like there's some ambiguities potentially, but staff, in my conversations with them, feel that the, and their recommendation is to approve the project. So staff is agreeing effectively, including this, assuming the city attorney's office, that the application's complete, and that the items brought up by the appellant are not, we disagree with them, and so that's, I mean, I think, unfortunately, where we're at, I just, I just worry that we end up in a situation where we end up in court, and the cellphone tower gets built, and we're out a bunch of money in addition to that. I don't see, I have not seen a lot of cases where, that cities have denied towers and prevailed in court. I mean, I'm not saying that we don't, but I have worries about that.
If I can follow up on your comments, as you mentioned, if this was a development project, we wouldn't want the developer and just say, hey, after you've done all this. But I do think that if the kind of community output that was like this community coming here, and from at least what I've seen come to mind, there hasn't been one constituent that told me they wanted this, and almost every constituent said they were against this. And the question I have is what the city attorney mentioned in terms of FCC not being wedded to this location, and I believe your staff also said an action would be denial. What would be the exposure if we denied tonight and said, hey, we would like to work with, because I think we, we do want cellphone towers, because we want cellphone service. But currently, where this is being proposed, clearly has a lot of opposition from our community. And as a council member, as a mayor, I think we do need to listen to our constituents. And then maybe there is another way that we can work to mitigate, to get another location and work as a staff to get another location for AT&amp;T to get that cellphone tower. But clearly, this location, at least what's come to me, has been overwhelmingly in opposition. Mr. Gates, what would be the likelihood if we denied tonight? And then as a council, say, hey, we want to work with AT&amp;T to get, because they're not wedded to this particular location?
Well, and I, much of it, I think, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, is up to AT&amp;T, because if, if the project were denied tonight, you know, AT&amp;T would be basically at the tip of the spear of a challenge if it, if that were to occur. It's not like the FCC's got hawks flying around looking for city council meetings where there's denials, and they, they swoop in and sue. Not maybe to, to simplify things, hopefully it's not complicating things, I will tell you that we did some quick research on FCC shot clock extensions, and although it's unclear as to the outer limits of an extension, if the applicant agrees to an extension, we actually can get additional time beyond the shot clock extension of 150 days.
Yeah, tolling agreement is pretty common in these situations, but I really very much doubt they would be able to get through both your office and AT&amp;T Legal's office in the next 11 days? Mr. Highland said it was the 7:27.
Well, and I can look to Mr. Highland again on this, but we would obviously do whatever it takes to expedite things on our end, so I, do you have any further comments on that?
We can work fast if you need.
Through the mayor, if I might have the opportunity to just provide some input, I know that AT&amp;T appropriately has had quite an opportunity to, to respond. I'd like to do something similar. I'm concerned that what we're hearing is a lot of obfuscation from AT&amp;T. The shot clock is not an outside problem. It is an AT&amp;T imposition. I'll just read you the regulations that say, unless a written agreement between the applicant and the citing authority provides otherwise, the tolling period for the application is as set forth. They can do whatever they want. If they send you letters saying you have all the time in the world, then you have all the time in the world. So it's not the FCC. They're not involved in this, they don't know about this. They don't sue cities. It's the applicants who sue the cities. And you should know the Supreme Court has held that when an applicant sues, they are not entitled to legal fees. That is different, and I'm sure you know this from your own recent litigation experience, that if my client or someone else was to sue over a sequel violation or otherwise, that public individual. that public individual, that individual would generally be eligible for attorney's fees against the city. So, the city could take an action, correct? A denial is an action within the shot clock period. If AT&amp;T sued, you could, you could approve the project, you could do whatever you want. It doesn't have to be expensive. But I do want to point out that the shot clock, that's an AT&amp;T-created problem. This notion that we don't know if we can put it on a rooftop is bizarre and not consistent with particular number eight of the alternatives. That's the Walgreen site where they discuss a rooftop. I'd say the last thing that's, I think, important to think about is that some of these notions, but we didn't do it because we weren't required to because it was a freestanding facility, is backwards. It's the freestanding facilities under the ordinance that require the most review. The conditional use permit is not apples to apples, because the conditional use permit is the highest standard of analysis that provides you the most discretion because of the recognition that they have the worst impacts, and you want to mitigate them whenever possible, which is why it states, "At a minimum, the applicant shall provide the following information." Quote, "Location of all other wireless antennas within 1,000 feet of proposed ground-mounted facility, and co-location of ground-mounted facilities shall be required where feasible." So, it's not that you have to co-locate on a ground-mounted facility. If it is a ground-mounted facility you propose, which will have these very visible impacts that the public is opposing, then it's very important that you find a way to mitigate that through a roof-mounted facility, through a totally stealth facility, through whatever approach is technically feasible.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure that we've actually asked, explicitly asked the AT&amp;T representative if he believes that AT&amp;T is willing to work on this, because everybody is correct, we're stuck because the FCC, the federal law is really strict about this. And I think, you know, we have to ask because they don't have any obligation to hold off.
Well, I believe the representative said he couldn't get back to us in the 12 days.
That you could, or you could not?
That he could not.
That's not what I said. What I said on the record...
That's what I understand.
But that it would be difficult, not to say that we wouldn't do it. And that would be a tolling agreement, which would allow for the postponement of this decision so that we could continue on the matter. That's specifically what that was in reference to.
But if we postpone the decision, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, but if we postpone the decision, then we wouldn't have an action taken, and then we would be in violation at that point. Is that correct?
If we don't have a tolling agreement extending the shot clock in place, then yes.
So, if we table this, our next meeting is not till August 1st, is, and that's past the shot clock timeline, correct?
I believe so.
So, we have to take an action tonight? Is tabling, is tabling an action?
Table, tabling continuing, it would not be an action.
So, what's, what's the tolling agreement you referenced?
Yes, AT&amp;T willing to sign a tolling agreement?
We always are, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we want to work with cities.
Yeah, so then that's how you do it.
And I don't believe the tolling agreement would have to be executed at a city council meeting, although the city council...
No, I mean, if, if city council basically agreed that they're willing to enter into a tolling agreement, and then you just said AT&amp;T does it all the time.
Absolutely.
So, it sounds like there's no resistance to getting one executed, and all we would have to do is get it executed before the 24th?
27th.
27th?
I mean, I would do everything in my power to expedite as well.
Well, and if you do it all the time, then the attorney shouldn't resist something like that, right? I mean, I'm just...
Sorry, what?
If you do this regularly, then it's something that we can do in the next few days, it sounds like.
No, I'm not making that promise. I don't want to overpromise.
Councilman?
So, didn't the zoning administrator take action on the item?
They did, the zoning administrator conditionally approved the project on April 19th.
Yeah, so, because that doesn't count? Because we haven't, they haven't gotten past the appeal period and it hasn't taken effect?
No, it doesn't count as a final determination.
And if we were to direct staff to agree to get a tolling agreement with AT&amp;T, and it doesn't get done because corporate's on holiday or something at the end of the month, and we end up at the 27th, or, I'm not saying it is, but there's, it's a, not necessarily, it doesn't happen, right, for any, any reason whatsoever, then we're upside down. So, yeah, so, denial of the project tonight, AT&amp;T doesn't have to do anything. They could say, yeah, we will do it, there's no tolling agreement at that point, right? We could deny it without prejudice and then reschedule, but with AT&amp;T saying, I mean, they've got no incentive at that point to do anything with us except go to court and have a judge say, you did it wrong, and...
Well, I mean, we can move, for action purposes, move to deny with the hope of a tolling agreement, or move to do a tolling agreement, and if we can't get one, then we move to deny.
Yeah, we're in the same spot anyways, right?
Deny.
Well...
Can we do that?
I don't know.
I don't know, can we do that?
Actually, can I ask a technical question before that? That actually covers this. One of the attorneys stated that AT&amp;T can't get attorney's fees from that. Can somebody confirm that that's...
True. I can't confirm that right now.
Okay.
I don't know.
Because that would, I mean, you always say it's, it's free for us to do stuff, so...
That's, that's cute.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, may I just attempt to answer that question? I believe that the case is T-Mobile v. Roswell, that holds, that the Supreme Court holds that it is not a Section 1983 action, it's not a civil rights action by a, by an applicant, and they're not eligible for legal fees. If I also just may add in fairness to my client, toll, a tolling agreement is not without cost. My client paid $4,000 twice to appeal this matter. I flew down here to be here today. Many people take this very seriously, they have a lot of stress over what may happen. I don't think that to think that you should just keep rolling it down the road. I identified these same problems in my letter in June 12th. The planning commissioner has identified the same problems. One of them offered to assist AT&amp;T in reaching out to some of these potential alternative sites. I identified the problems again in my letter from a few days ago. I don't think it's appropriate to just continue this down the road. This is a time and place for a decision, and I do...
Well, and all due respect, we're trying to figure out, from our, our standpoint, of trying to see if there's a way to feasible move this project to a different location without exposing the city for lawsuits, and for all, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, but you have to also understand where we stand on this dais. On this dais, we're trying to work with you to try to figure out another way to move it away, because clearly the citizens don't want this at this location. We're trying to see how we can get that done. And, and my advice is just understand where we're coming from as well.
And, yes, mayor, I... Just, just a point of clarification, just in terms of process, right? So, I'm looking to staff on this. If basically the same project gets moved to another location, another, a different property owner agrees, does it go back through the entire process again? Go back before the ZA?
It, it would, yes. The entitlements are site-specific, but that being said, of course, staff would be working with this applicant under the same premises, guidelines, and findings as were applied in this case.
So, I just want to ask, this hypothetical other property, I personally have searched out this area, specifically the geographic area that's outlined in our documents, and none of the other properties responded except for in the negative. So, you know, AT&amp;T has done their due diligence here.
May I make a recommendation, Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, hold on. I, I believe Councilman McKeon made a commitment that he will work, and the city will work, to help find that location with you as well, work hand-in-hand, to find a, a location that's more feasible for AT&amp;T as well as the city on Huntington Beach. I believe that's what I've heard from the councilmen on the dais here.
Right, so either way, that's a denial of this project.
I would, I think the...
This site.
Yes, but I think, in my opinion, the, the correct move is to make a motion to execute the tolling agreement, right? And then work with the applicant to exhaust all their due diligence options for other properties. I'm highly confident 11 days that a private company attorney can turn around a tolling agreement. Don't you think?
I'm not going to make a promise.
I understand, but he's usually the public sector attorney.
I'm not going to promise for other people.
Well, you know, it's private company, 11 days, boilerplate toll, tolling agreement that you said you do all the time.
Well, all the time in a relative sense.
Sure, but I'm sure you have a...
We work on hundreds of sites, not thousands, and those take place over three to four years, so...
But I'm sure you have a boilerplate tolling agreement that you guys have used, and I'm sure our attorneys make a commitment a couple of days to flush it out.
Of course, but there's no problem with the tolling agreement, but the concern is this, the tolling agreement is in pursuit of an alternate site.
Correct.
And if no other alternate site is found?
I guess we'll have to re, re-approach it then, right?
Just to be clear, this does meet the city plan. I don't know where it violates the city laws or federal laws. I'm not sure what the project is in violation of. We have no problem extending.
I think we're just trying to find a workable solution for everybody.
To be clear, that's not really a workable solution, because it's on my company and AT&amp;T to find an alternative site, which we've tried to do. If you have a suggestion, or, I'm not sure how that relationship would work, the city council actually being involved in the site selection using prior, I, I don't know how that works. That's never been my experience.
Have you gone to the city to, to see if they have ownership information on these property owners? Or did you just go to...
I have the ownership information.
Yeah, but did you work with the city to see if potentially they have some connections there with these property owners, or did you just go yourself privately?
We don't normally ask the city to do that job, no.
So, the answer's no?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know why I would ask, I mean...
Again, we're trying, we're trying to find a solution, we're trying to find a solution that doesn't deny the project, right?
I just wanted to clarify that I don't, I personally, and AT&amp;T has no problem with this.
Okay.
I just want to clarify what it is that AT&amp;T's potentially agreeing to here.
A tolling agreement to find another location or to co-locate. A tolling agreement to give you enough runway that will help you with, with whatever incentives or resources we can to help you find another location or potentially co-locate on an existing location.
AT&amp;T will probably not be signing a tolling agreement that specifically is granted on the condition that an alternate site is found.
Okay.
That's, a tolling agreement is to extend this determination process, so...
You understand, though, we're trying to keep a whole neighborhood happy, and we'd love to see the tower come in, but we're still trying to work with the neighborhood.
I personally, I'm just doing my job. I'm just trying to communicate that I know AT&amp;T probably wouldn't go on a conditional toll agreement. I could be wrong, we could ask them, but in my experience, the tolling agreements that they've agreed to have been about a timeline, not on the basis of finding an alternative site.
We're trying, right? So, I guess I'll just put on the record that I'm going to vote to uphold the appeal and deny the project as presented, because I believe AT&amp;T has not sufficiently exhausted due diligence for other locations. That's all I'm going to vote.
Through the mayor, the question I think posed correctly by AT&amp;T's representative is what ordinance conditions are violated here? And I think what, to put perhaps what's been said by many differently, is a question is, has AT&amp;T considered all location for 1,000 feet of proposed facility, sorry, considered all other wireless antennas with 1,000 feet of proposed ground-mounted facility? And have they co-located where feasible? The other question is, have they demonstrated that the facility will not be detrimental to those neighboring property values? And I don't believe that they have. They haven't provided any, any meaningful evidence whatsoever, and I think you hear a lot of people who are saying that it would. It's within your discretion to determine, based on your experience in the community, whether that eventuality is likely to occur, particularly when the facility can be raised by 20 additional feet within the same, within the period of time of this specific conditional use permit, and that would be without of your, outside of your control to stop. So, if it, if the city is going to go ahead, I believe, I recommend, I would strongly urge that the city goes ahead with, with some type of tolling agreement or continuance, it's important that they do hire an expert to determine whether overriding those two conditions is appropriate. Section, or paragraph A of the Wireless Communication Facilities Ordinance does say that the city will acquire scientific evidence from an expert in the field demonstrating existence of significant gap in service and a lack of feasible alternative sites. And here, no expert was consulted. It's very difficult work for you to do in, on, on one foot or on a dais, and it's very important that if you do try to resolve this in that manner, that you have appropriate expertise.
Councilman?
So, staff, I was reading that same language, and how do you prove that you're not going to decrease property values? Like, I don't understand how you prove a negative. Like, what evidence, what evidence is someone supposed to bring forward to make that proof?
There, there's no defined metric in the ZSO for what would constitute sufficient evidence for that. We have objective standards that are clearly defined, but as we've discussed at length tonight, those are very limited in the context of a wireless facility. So, it can be challenging to define that, but I think there is certainly some leeway at the council level at your discretion in making that finding.
Through the mayor, if I might attempt to give you some information from a court case. It's, quote, "When the evidence specifically focuses on advanced, adverse visual impact at the tower at a particular location at issue, more than a mere scintilla of evidence generally will exist. Mere scintilla of evidence is illegal nomenclature for the standard the city must meet in order to justify its denial. And if the city believes, based on the evidence presented, that..." And I apologize, this is sort of the inverse of the question that was asked, but if the city presents that level of information, then you are justified in moving forward with denial.
Yeah, Casey made the motion.
I will second Councilmember McKeon's motion.
It's been moved, it's been seconded.
Yeah, I'll repeat it. My motion is to uphold the appeal and deny the project as presented, because I believe AT&amp;T has not sufficiently exhausted due diligence for the other locations for the cellphone tower.
Is, I have a question for staff on, is that enough of a finding for denial for this? Because we're building a legal, like, we're building...
Connor, did you, did you get the question?
All right, I missed the question.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I thought you guys were discussing...
In terms, the question's about findings for denial, and...
Right.
Can we please recess?
Yes, let's have a 10-minute recess.
Understanding their frustration, but I can't make legally defensible findings. I can't with a straight face say there was evidence presented. Sure, it feels like this would be detrimental to property values, but there was no evidence presented. There was no information directly to Huntington Beach with comps where, hey, we put a cell phone tower up here and property values dropped. Like, there's no direct correlation between that. And I think staff made a pretty solid case that this doesn't violate the ZSO. And I think that when we're talking about land use issues like this as opposed to some of the other more subjective issues, you know, we're operating in our quasi-judicial role in this case. We have to, this is building the record to go, if there is litigation, this is building that record. And I honestly don't think that we can make legally defensible findings for denial at that. So I'll make a substitute motion to approve the item with the condition added to provide a nesting study into the record. And I do apologize to the residents that we're in a tight, I believe that we're in a tight situation here where the FCC has stepped in, and this is one of those very, very hard preemptive issues that, you know, as the city, we would, you know, love to say, look, this, the residents don't want this, it's our city, we don't want it. But we do not have that local control on citing these issues, and I don't believe in, we're in a legally defensible position to get there. And I wish that, you know, there were findings to be made, but on, you know, in the planning realm like this, we've got to build a record. So that's my motion.
Is there a second to Councilman Kelmick's motion? Is there a second? Seeing no second to that motion. Let's take up the motion that's been moved by McKean, seconded by Vandermark.
Yep, correct. Okay, Councilmember Kelmick.
No.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes four-three.
Thank you. All right, members, we're moving on.
Just to let the audience know, the vote is to deny the project.
So, members, we're now on Filem 18. Staff, please introduce your report.
Sorry, try it again. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and councilmembers. We're here tonight to ask the council to consider Resolution 23-2023 dash 34, approving a side letter with the Management Employees Organization, or MEO. Effective August 4, 2014, MEO and city representatives agreed to Resolution Number 2014 dash 57, which approved a side letter addressing a retiree medical subsidy. Part of the language included in this side letter was inadvertently omitted from subsequent MEOs and was just recently discovered. The omitted language provides that married city retirees that are hired prior to October 1, 2014 are both eligible for this retiree medical subsidy as a dependent of their spouse. There is no financial impact for this side letter as this medical benefit was implemented in 2014, 2015. The city council options are to approve Resolution 2023 dash 34, approving the side letter between the city and MEO, or not to approve Resolution 2023 dash 34, approving the side letter between the city and MEO. Does the council have any questions of staff?
No, I would like to move that we approve the Resolution Number 2023-34. And what's it, and with the M, with the MEO.
I'll second.
Right. With the side letter. It's been moved and seconded. Court call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
I don't know, passes seven-zero.
Okay, members, agenda, item number 19. Staff, please introduce your report.
Get the presentation up, please. Thank you, Mayor Strickland, members of the city council. This agenda item, future development of 17642 Beach Boulevard, includes a presentation that will be provided by both Lieutenant Smith and myself. Next slide, please. I will present the first half of the presentation through the slide, acquisition, site acquisition, and Lieutenant Smith will take it from there. Next slide, please. So, a little bit of background regarding the history of redevelopment. The purpose of Community Redevelopment Act was to eliminate blight through the development, reconstruction, and rehabilitation of residential, commercial, industrial, and retail districts. Funding from local property taxes to promote redevelopment of blighted areas through tax increment financing, or TIF. TIF uses future increases in property taxes to subsidize current improvements, which are projected to create the conditions for the increases. And this graphic is trying to illustrate how tax increment financing works. Next slide. Oh, wait, sorry. Twenty percent of the TIF, which is the funding used to fund redevelopment, must be set aside for affordable housing under redevelopment law, and it was called housing set aside. Next slide, please. So redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2011. The legislature passed legislation to dissolve redevelopment agencies in response to budget deficits. As part of dissolution, successor agencies were established to oversee the dissolution process. Successor agencies were able to retain housing assets, continue to enforce housing contracts and restrictions, and exercise all duties and obligations of the former redevelopment agency as it relates to affordable housing. As part of dissolution operations related to housing assets and activities of successor agencies, each housing successor was required to establish a restricted fund called the Low Moderate Income Housing Fund, or LMEHA. LMEHA funds must be spent on the development of affordable housing. Unencumbered funds that exceed the greater of a million dollars or the aggregate amount deposited into the fund during the preceding four fiscal years is called excess surplus. An annual report is required that sets forth certain details of the LMEHA regarding expenditures during the fiscal year. One function of the annual report is to conduct an excess surplus test, which provides the amount of excess surplus in the LMEHA, if any, and the length of time the excess surplus has existed, and a plan to eliminate the excess surplus. Next slide, please. The Huntington Beach Housing Authority was established in 2011 for the purpose of addressing a shortage of safe and sanitary dwelling accommodations in the city available to persons of low income at rents they can afford. In 2012, the city council approved a resolution to confirm the housing authority's role as the housing successor. In fiscal year 1920, a large deposit in excess of $6.5 million was deposited into the LMEHA, and as a result, excess surplus of $3 million was anticipated if the housing authority did not encumber the funds within fiscal year 2021. Excess surplus, once identified in an annual report, must be encumbered by ineligible activity within three fiscal years. Failure to encumber the excess surplus within the allocated timeframe requires that the excess surplus is either, one, transferred to an eligible jurisdiction for an eligible use, and two, or to transferred to the Department of Housing and Community Development. The opportunity to acquire the property, that is the subject of this presentation, became available, and that acquisition resolved the excess surplus situation. 17631 Cameron Lane was acquired in August of 2020, and 17642 Beach Boulevard was acquired in January of 2021. In December of 2020, a new address using the 17642 Beach Boulevard was applied to both properties, and the Cameron Lane address was eliminated. A total of $6,94,847 was the cumulative purchase price for both parcels. In December of 2020, the Temporary Navigation Center opened. In June of 2022, after a request for qualifications, after a request for qualifications processed, the city council approved an exclusive negotiations agreement, an ENA, with Jamboree Housing Corporation. George Seersey and Michael Massey, representatives of Jamboree, are here this evening to answer any questions if necessary. And quickly, Jamboree is a mission-driven nonprofit corporation founded in 1990 with expertise in real estate development, integrated resident and supportive services, and a full construction team. Jamboree's developments house more than 20,000 California residents statewide in more than 100 California cities and communities. Jamboree is highly skilled in financing and the utilization of a wide range of innovative tools to deliver their developments. Jamboree is one of California's largest nonprofit developers of affordable housing with a portfolio valued at $3.2 billion. Founded in 1990 in Irvine, California, which is where their headquarters, Jamboree, develops, acquires, renovates, and operates housing for a wide variety of vulnerable populations. Jamboree also provides a wide range of supportive services for working families, children, seniors, and people with special needs. More than 50% of Jamboree employees are in their services division. And with that, I'll hand the presentation over to Lieutenant Smith.
Thank you. On December 13 of 2022, city staff provided an overview of this project to several council members. On December 20 of 2022, the city council tabled a motion to authorize the executive director to sign a letter of support for Jamboree Housing Corporation's applicant for grant funding from State Department of Healthcare Services and Social Services through the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure and Community Care Expansion Program, seeking additional time to learn about this project. In light of this, on May 9, 2023, staff arranged for council members to tour two permanent supportive housing sites in Anaheim, Rockwood Apartments, and Fenimore Place, both operated by Jamboree Housing, which are shown here in those images. While the initial process was focused solely on a healing center concept, we have identified four potential development concepts for the site of the current Temporary Navigation Center site. The first being a healing center, which is a multi-use facility consisting of a navigation center, sobering center, facilities for supportive services, and a combination of transitional, permanent supportive, and/or affordable housing. While this would create a one-stop shop for services, the extra amenities could occupy space for housing in an area where there are existing medical facilities within close proximity. The Pathways Project is a concept of developing a multi-use facility consisting of an adaptable navigation center facility and permanent supportive housing. This will provide opportunities for residents to receive permanent supportive services as well as a permanent navigation center facility. We believe the navigation center facility component could be designed in a manner where it could be converted to alternative uses should the need for shelter space decrease over time. Third, a permanent supportive and/or affordable housing only option would be an acceptable use of the property. However, the city wouldn't need to find an alternative location for a navigation center site. We could also develop the location solely for a permanent navigation center. However, since this would not qualify for low or moderate income housing, the city would need to reimburse the LMEHA account, placing us in an excess surplus situation. As an alternative, we could choose to not develop the site. However, long-term use of the site for anything other than qualifying affordable housing development would require repayment. At this time, selection of one of the above proposed concepts would not commit the city to any development of the property. Rather, it would provide guidance to staff in Jamboree Housing, allowing us to refine the concepts and identify potential funding sources for the development. At a future date, proposals will be brought before the city council housing authority board for consideration, along with project details, including concept designs, operations plans, and estimated total project cost for construction, operations, and sources of funding. Thank you for your time. City staff, along with Jamboree Housing representatives, are available to answer any questions.
All right, members, any questions? Councilman Burns. Is that, Ursula, I don't know if you're the proper, the TIF, is that still in practice?
No, redevelopment agency has been dissolved, I believe, for the recognized enforceable obligations, the ROPS, that was subject of recent litigation, that we are able to receive, and Sunny can correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the tax increment that had formerly been available so that we can continue to service those obligations.
So Ursula is correct. So with the Health and Safety Code, Section 34191.4, the most recently approved city agency loans for Emerald Cove and Waterfront do allow for a 20% deposit of those funds into the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund.
So taxpayer funds are still being used to pay for some of these amenities for the homeless and?
Only in these two instances, just because these are, just because these are city agency loans, and they would fall under a different provision.
All right.
But for our normal enforceable obligations, there are no additional deposits to the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund.
And those developments that Jamboree build, who owns those?
Jamboree forms a subsidiary, and those entities own the properties.
And who would be those entities?
Well, I can't remember the one in Huntington Beach, but it usually has the city's, like, it's an LLC, so they'll form an LLC to, as most developers do, so that the assets held within the LLC, which is a legal entity.
Is Jamboree in that?
They're like a partner, they're.
They're a partner in it, so.
But they will ground lease.
Huh?
They will ground lease, like, they ground lease those two Anaheim properties, and they could, they would ground lease this one as well, so we can.
What do you mean, ground?
So like, they lease the land, and we can retain ownership.
Councilmember Burns, Jamboree's here if you want to ask them.
No, it's just that they say they're nonprofit, but yet they have $2 million worth of buildings and stuff. I just, it just, I don't know, this whole, I still have a very, I have a lot of trouble with this low-income housing and providing taxpayers paying for other people's houses and stuff. It just kind of goes against my grain, and I just don't understand kind of some of the aspects, and I'm just trying to grasp some of it, that's all. Councilman McKean?
For me, this one's pretty easy. Concept one, the healing center, is a nonstarter, that's the county's responsibility, and the B-Well private campuses in Anaheim and now Irvine handle that. So for me, the logical path is the Pathways Project. It gives us the most flexibility with the main component of having the navigation center be a part of it, so we can enforce our anti-camping laws. And it gives us the flexibility to, you know, hopefully, in the future, you know, mitigate our homeless populations so much that we can, you know, convert some of that supportive housing to potentially like, commercial space we could lease, et cetera. So for me, the one with the most flexibility that allows us to keep the navigation center is concept two, the Pathways Project.
I'll second that motion. Any other comments?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. First, I appreciate the efforts that have gone into bringing all of these ideas forward. I think that the two options, both the Pathways Project and the Healing Center are really the only two options that we should really be considering moving forward with. I appreciate that the Councilmember McKean was supporting the Pathways Project, you know, when, back when we started all of this, back in December, I was fearful that there would be no reasonable path forward, and I haven't heard from everybody here, so I don't know if there is. But I think it's worth noting that I think we've come a long way with different options. So for me, either the Healing Center or the Pathways Project, you know, offers a comprehensive option to, you know, build our capacity to address the needs of our local residents experiencing homelessness. And as Councilmember McKean mentioned, the Pathways Project does provide the flexible facility as things might change and as councils might change in the future. However, at the same time, I think that I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and honor the value of the Healing Center. You know, I think that homelessness is obviously a very complex issue requiring comprehensive solutions, and the Healing Center was really put together initially as more of a holistic approach, where we looked at, you know, more of the root challenges, root causes of some of homelessness, which include, you know, there are so many different issues that are there, but includes substance abuse, it includes mental health and all of these different things. And I know that we've always, the council has often said that that's the responsibility of the county, but in the end, the people who are in our community are also our responsibility, and also, we end up bearing the costs of those actions as well. I think that while the Pathways Project is a good start, the Healing Center's more comprehensive and holistic approach is likely to yield better outcomes, and improved outcomes mean more people transition from homelessness to stable housing, resulting in reduced long-term costs, and this potential for improved ROI justifies the additional upfront investment in the Healing Center. I also think that, you know, when we initially talked about the Healing Center, we actually talked about it more as a continuum, looking at essentially what the Pathways Project is all the way up to what the Healing Center could be, wanting to give Jamboree the authority or ability to go out and look for the funds to be able to stack, to say, this is what is available to you, based upon an evidence-based approach, and then the council would be able to determine what it wanted to do. I understand that this council, I don't think, has an appetite for that, so acknowledge that. At the same time, I do think that it's important to acknowledge that a Healing Center would be an investment in our residents, in our community, and it would show leadership and demonstrate that, I think, with other cities who have already looked at the city of Huntington Beach with what we do, to say, like, you know, we found opportunities, we found solutions that hadn't been found in the past, and they are mimicking many of the things that we've done. One of the things that Lieutenant Smith mentioned was that there, the Healing Center offers sobering center. Can you mention just some of the other supportive services that are offered within the Healing Center that would not be included in the Pathways Project?
Mental health services and treatment facilities.
And sobering center as well.
Overing detox, yes.
Got it. And I think it was mentioned that there were existing medical facilities locally in the area that provide those services, is that correct?
There's adjacent medical offices and medical facilities. I think it would provide us opportunities to work with private industry to provide those services.
But they don't currently provide those. We don't currently, and I know we talked about, and I, B-Well, I think, has provided an incredible model and was initially looking at being part of the Healing Center model that we might have here. And I know that in Orange, and now they're looking at, or they're in the middle of creating that in Irvine, but it won't be there for a bit, you know, there is nothing local here. I do think that it's always worthwhile to look at private industry to create those opportunities too. I do think it's unfortunate that we're not giving direction to be able to go and stack all of the available funds that might be available too, so we can provide a more comprehensive solution, because in the end, we want to make sure that whoever is coming into our navigation center, one, it's great that we're going to have housing that's available to them to move into, that's wonderful, because a lot of the challenge right now within our navigation center is lack of available housing for them to be able to move out of that, and also with supportive housing. I also want to appreciate and thank Jamboree for bringing us to Anaheim to look at the facilities, which were incredible, but also the fact that there is supportive services there to make sure that the people who have gone into those sites continue to be successful and don't come back out of that housing unless they have to. And when we discussed that, they had a very high success rate there, so I appreciate all of that. I just, again, think it would be, I'd be remiss not to, you know, make the recommendation that the city move with the Healing Center, move forward with that project, just because I do think it's just a more holistic approach that will, in the end, cost us less, because we are always going to be spending money on things, and we want to make sure that the community, you know, that our economy, you know, that the businesses understand that if we're doing everything that we can and we're more successful, then it will show in its outcome with the ROI. So I would make a substitute motion to move forward with a direction for the Healing Center, acknowledging that. I honestly don't believe I have the support to have it moved through, but I think that there is value in really looking at all of the things that, you know, public safety issues, public health challenges, and increased use of emergency services, all our impacts of having an unsuccessful solution. I hope that the Pathways Project will be successful. I just don't think it's as comprehensive as we could provide, especially given that we have a potential of available funding through the county and through CalAim, et cetera.
I'll second the motion.
All right, the motion has been moved, it's been seconded, Councilwoman?
So I agree with Councilmember Mosher that the Healing Center or Pathways are the two most viable and logical options for us to consider. I do have a question for you, Lieutenant Smith, just to clarify. If there is an individual in Huntington Beach that needs to go to a sobering facility, if they go to B-Well, for example, in Orange, does the police department have to transport that person there, or if they need to go to, you know, ER or UCI or something like that for a mental health, serious mental health issue, are the police involved in transporting that person?
It is optional. If B-Well is not available, or if it's an involuntary situation, then yes, police officers could facilitate the transportation, or any emergency medical services could facilitate that in lieu of B-Well.
Yeah, I was just thinking that having those things close at hand might also create an efficiency in that the police officers don't have to go to Orange and don't have to go to Irvine or what have you in order to be able to make sure that people get that treatment. And there's been a lot of criticism, not here, but just generally, of the housing-first model, where people are put into housing and we're not, you know, localities are not addressing their underlying problems, so not addressing the substance use disorder, not addressing the mental health issues, putting people in the housing first, and then they're not successful, and they're, end up back out on the street because they're still working through the underlying causes. So I think that whatever we can do to address underlying causes here is, it makes sense, and it's a good investment. So I'll be supporting the Healing Center.
Great, so we have a substitute motion and a second. Let's deal first with Councilwoman Mosher's substitute motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something before we have a vote.
Go ahead.
You were calling for the vote, sorry. We don't have our button system anymore, I miss it, it was really lit up on your chart there. Yeah, no, I appreciate you for the opportunity to speak on this. I also agree that the Healing Center is, I think, what we should be striving for, looking at how we've, the opportunity cost of all of the things that the county should be doing but aren't. I hear this a lot, and I still haven't heard a good answer for, sure, we all agree the county should be doing this, but they're not, so what should we do? I believe it's on us to pick up the slack where the county's not doing what we think they should be doing. And again, like, I don't think anyone's in disagreement, and I think, you know, we heard years ago, the same argument, I don't think we should be doing this because it's the county's role. Yes, we all, we agree. But, you know, we brought up B-Well in Anaheim and Irvine. Anaheim's, or Orange's facility is beautiful, and I would, it would be lovely to have that on Beach Boulevard. I think it would be a massive upgrade to the facility that's currently there and provide all these services that will help get our population off the street and into becoming taxpayers again. We were at B-Well, and someone just walked in off the street that looked like a regular person and said, I'm having an issue. I don't remember specifically what it was, but they came in and were able to get the help they needed instead of spiraling into whatever situation ends up spiraling when that happens. Facility allows folks, our folks to be able to take, our public safety folks to be able to take people into a facility and get them hopefully out the other end as a taxpaying member of society. I mean, that's always been my goal, is to create taxpayers, not to create criminals and prisoners, because that is so much more expensive than trying to provide social services before the crimes start, before, as you fall out of homelessness, or as you fall out of the housing market into homelessness, that we're able to provide those services, because it gets so much more expensive as you are longer and longer on the street, and such a drain on resources that our residents need for other, that our housed residents are paying for and would like to have. So why not do it the most efficient way possible, assuming, agreeing that there is a problem that needs to be solved and the county's not solving it? Like, that's the disconnect I still haven't heard an answer to, which is, if not the county, then who? And so I think the Healing Center, I think, solves that problem in the most efficient way possible, and so I'll also be supporting the Healing Center, but obviously, I don't know if there's the votes for that. If. the votes for that. If not, I think the Pathways Project helps get us to where we want to be.
Counselwoman.
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, just to clarify my statement in terms of the county. I also mentioned B-Well. We're already paying for Healing Center. We have B-Well. We have their campus in Orange, and we have their campus in Irvine. That's what they're there for. They work alongside our police officers to handle these issues. They build relationships. When someone qualifies for one of these issues where the Sobering Center, Support Services, Transitional Permanent Supportive Housing, the B-Well people in their vans take them to the campuses in Orange and Irvine. It's duplicative. We don't need to spend this money, in my opinion, to have our own Healing Center. We already have it through B-Well. That's our extension. They're a private company. Went to their campus in Orange. It was really impressive. Talked to the Board of Supervisor, Mr. Don Wagner, about it. They really like B-Well also, and they're, seems like they're going to support them. They've done a great job uniting all the hospitals. We already have a Healing Center. It's through B-Well. That's why I think the Pathways Project is the most sense.
Councilman Burns.
Yeah, we keep hearing county, city, it's responsibility, whomever. I just don't believe they'll take homeless, drug addicts, we'll take whatever we give them. If we keep giving them, giving them, giving them, they're going to take all they can. What they shouldn't be is a taxpayer burden, in my book. Yeah, I'd like to help them, but they won't help themselves if we give them too much. Jamboree, you've done a great job. Those things are beautiful, those buildings and stuff. They are nice, but we keep on making it too easy, and I just have a big problem with these guys, the homeless and drug addicts and stuff becoming, we, us, taxpayers are burdened with giving them a life, a very comfortable life, because they will take as much as we give them without holding them accountable to work for it. And I just, I think that needy has been abused, and we got to just start holding people accountable and not make it so easy to be a taxpayer burden. And, I mean, we just got a responsibility to answer to the people, and that's just kind of the direction I'm at. I get so frustrated at that.
Councilwoman.
I think that I would encourage everyone to read the study that just came out, California Statewide Study of People Experiencing Homelessness. It's evidence-based, there's stories, there's data. It's about 94 pages long, and I would love for you, maybe the council, maybe in groups of three or more, I think we should read it and talk about it, because I think that it kind of takes the wind out of all the things that you're saying right now, but I think it's fair initially, when you look at it all, it seems like, well, there's all of these things, there's a company that has a nonprofit that has all this money, they're, we just keep building, et cetera, et cetera. But the thing is, is there's policy recommendations with this study, and I think that they're worth reading. And I'll just summarize them really quickly here. Increase access to housing affordable to extremely low-income households. Those making less than 30% of the area median income through supportive production of housing, low-income housing tax credits, et cetera, et cetera. The good news with what we're talking about here is we're looking at the permanent supportive housing, so it at least manages part of that. But if you read this study, it talks about how people are like one paycheck away, one rent payment away from going into homelessness. It's not just everybody who's bilking everyone and relying on the local economies to pull them back out. There are a lot of people who are impacted by this. Number two, expand targeted homelessness prevention. Obviously, we're doing that to some extent, but what we're hoping to support here is to do that more. Obviously, we have our caseworkers that are doing that, but expanding prevention and transition services at institutional exits like our jails is another important piece, and prisons as well. The main one that I have highlighted for us, though, is to provide robust supports, and this is where I think the Healing Center comes in, to match the behavioral health needs of the population by, one, increasing access to low-barrier mental health, substance abuse and harm reduction services during episodes of homelessness, including unsheltered settings, and, two, appropriately staffing permanent supportive housing with evidence-based models. For example, pathways to housing, assertive community treatment, and intensive case management that meets the needs of the population. There are others, another one that I have highlighted, increased outreach and service delivery to people experiencing homelessness, including a focus on unsheltered settings. You know, the people who are included in this are homelessness, population is aging, homelessness, people experiencing homelessness in California are Californians, there's often a discussion of people coming in from everywhere else. I just think, but without going over this entire study, there's a lot of really good data here, and I think that we should all review it when we're going through things like this, because if we're looking at things like, when we were first in a meeting back in December, Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark talked at the time, I remember, and it was a meeting to talk about kind of what the Healing Center was supposed to be, talked about, we need to deal with the root causes of homelessness. And, you know, I appreciate the, I appreciate, number one, I appreciate B-Well being there, but they're not our Healing Center. They don't have the scale or capacity for the entirety of the county, which is what they're providing right now. Obviously, adding Irvine in will help that, but it's important that we don't have our public safety people driving all over town to bring people elsewhere, if they could get that assistance here, and if that might lead to better outcomes. Because for me, if we are spending the money, hopefully it's not general fund money, I acknowledge that sale, or tax money is still residents' money, but if we're spending those monies, I want to make sure that we're getting the best possible outcome, and there are so many different pieces to this. It's not just people who are bilking the system, and it's not just, you know, providers that are in it to be in business. We want people to actually be helped, and I hope that maybe, Pat, you and I can read through it and go over it together and have a good conversation, because I think that there's a lot of valid, good data, and I think it might at least open your mind to thinking about things a little bit differently with regards to this.
It's just, when do we stop before we're full-blown socialism? I mean, when does it, when do we stop? I mean, it's just scary that we're not holding some of these people responsible for their own lives, and I just see it going further and further. Probably some of these people are on their last check because they're paying so much in taxes to pay for these other programs. I just, I just, I am very uncomfortable with all this becoming a taxpayer burden, and people just going, oh, well, it's just tax money.
The city already bears considerable costs related to homelessness, though. It's just more passive, right? Because it's our, at our emergency facilities, our police interactions, sanitation issues, potential decrease in local business that have to be addressed with that. So I understand what you're saying as far as the costs, but we also have a shared responsibility to be able to work with all of these various governments, because our tax monies should go towards things to make sure that we live in the best community possible and to lift everybody up. I think it'd be, I think we can all agree that lifting everyone up wouldn't hurt.
All right. Madam Clerk, we've had a substitute motion by Councilwoman Moser. Let's take up that item first, and then we'll deal with Councilman McKeon's motion.
Okay, so let's start the vote on the Healing Center concept, correct?
Yes.
All right, so Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Vandermark.
No.
Strickland.
No.
McKeon.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
No.
The item fails.
Okay, next, Madam Clerk, let's, a motion by Mr. McKeon, seconded by Mayor Strickland on the Pathway Project.
Correct. All right. Councilmember Kelmick.
Aye.
Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
All right. Item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Members, we go to File IM number 20, Middle Income Housing Program Update. Staff, please introduce your report.
I'm sorry, if we can have two minutes to do some musical chairs.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Mayor Strickland, members of the City Council, appreciate your patience. I want to quickly introduce Ben Barker from Community Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, and Jordan Moss with Catalyst. They will be presenting, following a brief staff presentation. I'd also like to acknowledge that Charles Kovak, our Housing Manager, and Steve Holt, our Deputy Director, are here this evening to answer questions and facilitate it in putting this agenda item together. This program, this Workforce Middle Income Housing Program, has been presented at a study session on July 6th, 2021, and then there was Council Action on July 20th, 2021, to move forward with the program. There were detailed presentations given at those times, so I'm not going to regurgitate all of that. There's a lot of information in the staff report as well. I am not going to go into all of that detail, but we'll answer any questions related to it. I did want to ask the council, considering that the hour, whether the specific questions that were identified in the H item, they're all answered in the staff report. Do you want those answers presented orally this evening as well? And I guess maybe, Councilmember McKeon, I'll pose that question to you, since it was your H item.
I don't think so. I mean, I have questions on some of the answers, so I think I can just repeat it, yeah.
I think we can keep it a little bit more brief that way, then. So this initial slide represents some workers. This was a workforce housing program to help provide affordable housing for that population. But what I'd like to frame it as also is an affordable preservation program. There's commentary about we're losing affordable housing, and what does that mean? What, some people are going out and demolishing affordable housing? No, it's that as properties transition and as we have this supply and demand problem, that rents are being driven up, and so we're losing affordability in rents through that means. And so this program, yes, it creates housing for middle-income folks or workforce housing through preservation of existing rents. So these were rents that people could afford, they were living in these properties, and if these properties were to transfer and get new investment, the rents go up. And rents are just going up also even without properties changing hands. So it was really a policy position for the City Council to take. And to that point, in January of 2021, there was a strategic planning session where affordable housing was identified as a priority of the City Council, and specifically, a myriad of housing choices. And so we just heard about the efforts the city has made on homelessness. That's for the less than 30% area median income folks, that's extremely low income, or in many cases, no income. There's been some permanent supportive housing progress, so the picture down below is the Jamboree Project, which is under construction right now. That's less than 60% of AMI. We've done low-income housing through the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. There's a picture there of one of those projects. And we have the City Council approved this sort of workforce housing or moderate-income housing. That's been accomplished in multiple ways through, this is a picture of Belatera, where that's some moderate-income housing that was done as part of the city's Inclusionary Ordinance. And so this project was another way to do that. I'm not going to go over too much detail on how this Middle Income Housing Program works, because Catalyst will, Jordan Moss with Catalyst will be presenting a similar slide later that goes over that. I did want to kind of touch on a couple of differences from the June, sorry, July 20th, 2021 staff report. So one was that, at the time, there was reference to a 30-year bond maturity, but the underwriting was still underway. It wasn't completed until after City Council approval. And upon the completion of the underwriting and based on the market conditions at the time of the sale of the bonds, both projects required a 35-year maturity in the limited offering memorandums. So the analysis to answer the questions that were posed in the H item, we've used this 35-year maturity. Also, in the July 2021 analysis, it was based on an average 14% of the city's share of the 1% property tax levied on the assessed value of properties, and did not include the voter-approved 1.5% supplemental public safety employee retirement levy. When you add the public safety retirement levy, the effective rate is 15.5%. Further, the July 2021 analysis was based on pre-acquisition assessed valuation. And this is because, at the time, that's what we knew, that the properties did generate. So the analysis was done on the property tax that the properties were generating at the time. But in the staff report, you'll note that there were some answers that did take those factors into consideration that I've just mentioned. So why this policy decision? And so it's a cost-benefit analysis. So the cost of the project is clearly the foregone property tax. And in that regard, I will actually just read verbatim from the staff report. That was one of the questions that was asked, which was, "To fund the Middle Income Housing Program, the city has to forego future property tax revenues for up to a 30-year period." However, we did the analysis under 35 years. How much in property tax did the city forego in 2022? What is the estimated amount for 2023? And over the next 30 years, again, we did 35 years. So this question will be answered based on a 35-year bond maturity instead of a 30-year bond maturity, as previously noted in the staff report, or I just mentioned why. Further, the 2021 staff report analyzed the foregone property tax based on the assessed value pre-acquisition and the property taxes that the city was collecting at the time. It is uncertain whether these assets would have transferred without the program, therefore the analysis was based on the pre-acquisition assessed value. With that being said, following the change in ownership, Breakwater's assessed value increased by nearly $46 million, from $139 million to $185 million. It's a 33% increase. Elan's assessed value increased nearly $9 million, from $125 million to $134 million, a 7% increase. As mentioned earlier in the staff report, the 2021 analysis was based on an average 14% of the 1% tax levied on the assessed value of the properties, and did not include the voter-approved 1.5% supplemental public safety employee retirement levy. Due to these dynamic variables, providing a static response to this question is difficult. The following narrative assumes the same methodology used in 2021, so pre-acquisition value with a 2% annual property tax inflation, which is the maximum allowed, and we did not actually achieve that historically in the last, you know, 10 years, but we use that for this analysis here to be conservative. An average 14% of the property tax levy and a 1.5% public safety employee retirement levy, except that it includes a 35-year bond maturity date instead of a 30-year. The narrative response, below the narrative response is a chart, which is in your staff report, that shows and compares the foregone property tax utilizing the average 14% share of the levy, a scenario utilizing the average 14% levy plus the supplemental retirement levy of 1.5% for a total of 15.5%, and a scenario utilizing the average 14% levy plus the supplemental retirement levy and the post-acquisition assessed value. So I'm going to give you answers related to Breakwater and Elan, but in the staff report, there's another chart that shows those different scenarios. So for Breakwater, it is estimated that the city would have collected $220,413 in property taxes from this asset in 2022, based on the 2021 pre-acquisition tax valuation and including the public safety employee retirement levy. Assuming 2% annual property tax inflation, it is estimated that the city will forego $224,822 in property taxes from this asset in 2023. Over a 35-year period, which reflects the full term of the outstanding bonds, the city's foregone property taxes related to this asset are estimated to be a little over $11 million should the property remain JPA-owned. This amount represents approximately 3% of the anticipated value of the property after the bonds are matured in 35 years, and as outlined in Breakwater's Public Benefit Agreement. If the city sells the property, this is the anticipated amount, 300, in excess of $345 million, that the city would receive. For Elan, it is estimated that the city would have collected $198,163 in property taxes from this asset in 2022, based on the 2021 pre-acquisition tax valuation and including from this asset in 2022, based on the 2021 pre-acquisition tax value and including the public safety employee retirement levy. Assuming 2% annual property tax inflation, it is estimated that the city will forego $202,127 in property taxes from this asset in 2023. Over a 35-year period, which reflects the full term of the outstanding bonds, the city's foregone property taxes related to this asset are estimated to be almost $10 million should the property remain JPA-owned. This amount represents approximately 4% of the anticipated value of the property after the bonds are matured in 35 years, in excess of 250 million, as outlined in Elan's public benefit agreement. If the city sells the property, this is the anticipated amount the city would receive. So that's the cost of this item, and when you're looking at the benefits, it's hard to necessarily put a number associated with public policy. There was this preservation of this housing that does have some value, and that value can be different in different people's minds. But when you look at traditional affordable housing projects that have many layers of financing in them, so many layers of subsidy, you know, for example, just because we talked about it at the last item and showed the picture of the Jamboree deal, there's county money going into that, state money going into that. The city had put a $3 million acquisition loan into that deal. So multiple layers, and then the tax credits on top of that in order to fund that traditional project. When you look at the cost per door, that's close to $100,000. That's typically what you see for that type of a project. Plus, those projects qualify for the welfare exemption, meaning that they forego property taxes as well. So if you add that on top of it, it's a lot more expensive in the staff report. So this particular project, it is just foregoing the property tax, that's the subsidy that's going into it. And yes, the city ends up being the kind of sole bearer of that subsidy, but that's because there's not a lot, really, there's not any funding sources available for moderate income housing, and that was a policy goal and directive of the city council at the An ancillary benefit to this program, so certainly not the driver of the public policy, the driver was preservation of this attainable housing or workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. That was the driver of this. But an ancillary benefit was this opportunity to create some public equity, and...
Ursula?
Yes?
What exactly is public equity?
Well, so equity in real estate is appreciation. It's when, once you, you know, the value of the property, if there's debt on it, once the debt's paid off, what the value of that property is, is that, you know, your equity, like your equity in your house. And so public equity is just because this is government-owned through the JPA, and that the city has the opportunity after year 15 to force a sale to where the city will actually own the asset itself, so not, currently it's owned by the JPA, the Joint Power Authority. But under this program, the city can cause a sale that the city can actually own the property, and after the bonds are paid off in year 35. So we're not forced to trigger a sale in year 16, it's an option. And the only reason that the city would possibly want to do that is if we're cash poor, and we really need some cash at that time, and the property is valued such that we could pay off the outstanding debt, so the debt that's owed at that year, this asset would have to be worth more than that in order for the city to get that cash. But by waiting until the bonds are actually paid off in year, at this point it's looking like year 33, there would be no more debt to pay. There is agreement that we would make all of the other taxing entities whole, but whatever's left over now becomes equity for the city. It becomes money for the city to be able to utilize in whatever capacity it wants to. So it could either sell the property to, you know, the highest and best-use buyer, take the cash. It could decide to sell it to an affordable housing developer to rehab these units, or to demo these units and build something new, but the city would have a lot of options at that time. So that's what the public equity...
So that's after the 30, you're looking at 33 years before it's paid off?
Before the bonds are paid off. It's a function of the rents that are brought in. So like, this 35-year bond term, the reason why it's 33 years now instead of 35 years is because the units haven't transitioned as quickly as we would have liked, and there's a lot of information in the staff report related to that. It has to do with a lot of the COVID protections that were put in place to protect tenants, and in fact, those protections have only come up in May of this year. So if you had a tenant that wasn't paying rent, you couldn't evict them until May of this year. So those protections also related to this asset in terms of Catalyst not being able to transition them quite as quickly. And because of that, there were, so in the staff report, it mentions, I think it's like 53% and 54% to the different properties that have transitioned. So both of them have over, half of the units have transitioned to the targeted income levels, but the other units are paying market rent, which means the bonds are being paid off faster, because no one's making, that money isn't being, you know, there's no one benefiting from that, except that the bonds are being paid off faster than they otherwise would have been. So I suppose if that were to continue, the 33 years could go down, but...
But that's where we're at now.
That's where we're at right now.
And one more question. A little while ago, you said the Breakwater, we were foregoing $224,000 in 2023. Did you give a number for 2022?
Let me go back and look. So for Breakwater... Breakwater, let's see. Breakwater in 2022, I said 220,413.
Okay.
Okay. And then, on this slide quickly, and this is the last, I'm going to be reading from the staff report, but, "So beyond the public benefit of creating the restricted middle income units, the properties also represent an investment opportunity with potential long-term financial benefits for the city in the form of public equity. Under the recorded public benefit agreement, the city at its sole discretion may force a sale of the properties between year 15 and year 35, and the city would receive the net sale proceeds. Since the properties are financed through the issuance of tax-exempt bonds and there are no equity partners, all excess sale proceeds after payoff of the bonds go to the city. Over a 35-year period, the properties could realize $596 million in valuation at the end of year 35, and that's assuming a conservative annual appreciation of 1.8%. If you use the more typical analysis, using a net operating income analysis, which is more typical in real estate, it's in excess of $700 million. The city could realize significant value in owning major real estate assets that could be sold to market-rate buyers, thereby maximizing value to the city. Alternatively, it could be sold to affordable housing developers to be rehabilitated with new, more deeply restricted affordable housing covenants. The point is, is that this decision could be made in the future, depending upon the city's needs and policy priorities at the time."
Ursula, real quick, how much bonds have we issued? How much, what's the value of the bonds that we put out?
We did not issue the bonds, the JPA issued the bonds.
The JPA.
And I will defer to Ben on that amount, or...
I'm happy to try to address that. I don't have the full numbers in front of me. Hi, I'm Jordan Moss, Catalyst Housing. The, so starting with Breakwater, the purchase price was $185 million. I have the renovation budget in front of me, which is another $23.5 million. There's other closing costs, debt service reserves, things of that nature. So, you know, I would put it in the $230 million range, probably. We can definitely get back to you at the exact amount. And on Elan, purchase price was $134 million, much smaller capital budget because it was a pretty new asset, so that was $5 million. I would say all in, that's probably more like $140 million.
Yeah. I have the numbers right here. So Breakwater is 224, Elan is 155.
Do you guys have a presentation you wanted to?
Sure, sure.
Yes, I'll get...
Well, real quick, though, 379 million between the two of them, right? How much by the end of all these bonds, how much will we be, how much do you project will have been paid towards paying off the bonds?
100% of the bond amount. That's what Ursula was getting at, was that current, the current projections are that in 33 years.
No, no. So there's no interest on that? I mean, total, how much went into paying off the bonds? I know we're going to pay off the 379, but how much of that, how much interest in?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I can tell you what was remarkable about this program, and we'll get into sort of what allowed this to work, was that the cost of capital was pretty remarkably low, and I know we've got real estate professionals in the room. This was 100% finance in the municipal bond market, and I think on Breakwater, the all-in cost of capital was below 3%. That was the interest rate for, you know, long-dated fixed rate, 100% leveraged financing, and Elan was right around there. So, you know, I would call it, I would call it 3%.
We don't know how much is going to be expended on that 379 at the end of it. You guys don't have those figures?
Well, part of that goes into what are the capital needs, if the roof flies off, or if you have to do other things, you know, those costs come into play too, so you can't anticipate all of those costs over the next 30 years.
I'm sure you guys estimate it, though.
Are you asking about the remaining balance after 33 years?
No, no.
Just the interest payments.
Well, I mean, because you're talking about what it's going to be worth at the end of it, but if we're going to be paying for that all these years, I just, I'm just trying to get figures in my head, that's all. All right, go ahead.
We've, I've introduced the partners, but I did want to say that there was a lot of due diligence. There were other entities that had approached the city about such a program, and the city was particular about CMFA in particular, they're the largest issuer of bonds in the state of California, so there was a lot of confidence in their underwriting, and also the willingness to share in their fees with the city, and there were nonprofits that the city council was able to identify, and Catalyst is truly committed to this mission, and I'm just going to share, not to put you on the spot, Jordan, but when we had our initial conversation, it was that the teacher of one of his children had to drive three hours in order to get to their job, and the point was, you know, I don't want my children being taught by somebody who has to drive three hours, there's this need for this workforce housing. And so in those conversations, the kind of mission of Catalyst came through. But moving along, this slide was just to represent some answers to some of the questions in the H item, but we've decided to move on from those, and you'll ask some questions on those. And so now I will turn it over to either, to Ben to do a market overview. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for having us, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ben Barker. I'm a financial, or municipal advisor to the California Municipal Finance Authority. We're the largest conduit issuer in the state of California. Typically, we issue somewhere between $2 to $4 billion worth of bonds per year, roughly 100 to 150 projects per year. Just as a point of interest, the projects can range from like the LAX airport, the People Movers that's going on, to zoos, to private and charter schools, to a goodwill. So from a couple billion dollars to a million dollars in issuances, along with multiple housing deals. So the CMFA has been a longtime member of the city of Huntington Beach since 2012. With the city, we have issued bonds for charter schools, manufacturing projects, and other projects located within the city of Huntington Beach. The CMFA being the largest issuer in the state, we've looked at numerous types of programs continually. We hear about things constantly, we get calls, if people want to invest billions of dollars into things. So we evaluate all types of projects. We heard about this style of financing for a number of years. We reviewed it for quite a few years, and at the beginning, we were against this type of financing. Once we went through the financial analysts of it and looked at how the projects were performing, we proceeded to lightly step our foot into this hemisphere of financing. So the CMFA, well, at that point, you know, so from 2019 to 2022 was kind of a period here for these, there are 50, about 55 projects that were financed. It was really an environment of interest rates and market conditions that made these projects viable. They're no longer viable due to the interest rate increases. But we had started looking at projects, we, I received a call from the city of Huntington Beach asking if I could talk to them about four projects they are approached with. I'm not a registered advisor to the city of Huntington Beach, but I gave them my opinion because we've done a number of projects for the city of Huntington Beach. We went through the four projects, we told them too, we would not be interested in moving forward with or helping out with, and we think that the staff should steer clear. They're with other groups and entities, and we, CMFA was not comfortable doing those projects. So we reviewed the two projects that we have here, we went through quite a while of due diligence, we had another of other, a few other projects this time that were performing remarkably well, and so we started moving forward. So from that, the city contacted us, we started working through them, and really, the CMFA is the purchaser of the project, and like, like what was stated is that year 15, through the public benefit agreement, the city is in control of the project. So if the city doesn't want the projects anymore, roughly 13 years from this point, the city can say, eh, we don't want affordable housing in the city, sell the projects, and we would be forced to sell them. At the year of 33 is where we're looking at, it could trend lower, 32, you know, these are publicly offered deals, and we can get into public offerings if we need to later on, but really, these projects are projected to pay off somewhere between 32 and 33 years. At that point, any outstanding debt, which we project to have zero, because everything would be paid off, the city can then direct us also what to do with the projects. During that time, through Jordan, there will be capital improvements throughout the life of deals, they'll be continually to be rehabbed, and they will be in pristine shape. When the city's ready to take over the project, have the CMFA sell the project, really do whatever the city wants to do with the project at that point. There's no disposition upside like most traditional real estate projects. So when we sell the project, CMFA is not going to take a big seller's fee of $2, $3 million. All of our fees are fixed throughout the life of the deal, so there's no incentive for CMFA to really do anything different, other than provide a great project for the city. Same with Jordan, he doesn't get an upside if the city sells us to tell the project, he's not paid a commission. It, the, all the fees and benefit go back to the city at that point. And so just to kind of talk about why we got into this project, you look at the year over year rent increases in Orange County, it's running roughly 20% from 19 through 22, so that means every time somebody moves out, the landlords jack the rent up 20%. If you're in a house, right now, the state law, or in Orange County prohibits you from increasing the rent over 10%. And so what CMFA thinks there's a benefit into this, and I believe Jordan will go into, is the rent decreases we've had that we put in place, and then how much we save year over year on rent increases, Jordan will also go into that, though, is we believe that these projects, we're able to buy a project, keep it from being purchased by another market rate, and just again, we went through a full market rate process, this project could have been sold to any other market rate purchasers. We were lucky enough to win these two projects on an open market. But what happens with these ad hoc, or these value-add developers is they purchase a project, typically they paint them, fix them up, and then they increase the rents 10% for renters in them, once a renter, once a renter leaves, they increase it 20%. So CMFA's mission is not financially driven, we're a governmental agency, every fee we bring in, we've given over $35 million back to cities and counties. We are, our mission is really driven to create public benefit for the, our partners, which Huntington Beach is. So we view this as an opportunity for the residents to stay and be able to live in a project, not have astronomical rent increases, and therefore be able to have a sustained rent, that they know what it's going to be, and hopefully they'll be able to transition out of the house and into a home within Huntington Beach. The big problem with affordable housing is you have incomes that start at 30% AMI, they go up to 60% AMI, and then they stop. There's nothing in an affordable housing project to really to incentivize them to leave the project. You got to look at, if you're in affordable housing, those projects are always nice. I've personally been on over 400 to 500 issuances of affordable housing projects. Typically, in those neighborhoods, they're the best projects in the neighborhoods. Incentivizing a person to move out of an affordable housing project is difficult, because if they're going to move into a like project, their rent's going to increase by thousands of dollars. This creates an opportunity for someone to move out of affordable, move into a moderate, and then move out of moderate into just plain market-rate housing. It gives them, the residents, an opportunity to save up a down payment and live and work in the city of Huntington Beach. And so that's, that's basically CMFA in a nutshell, and why we got into this program is we want the residents to stay and live in their cities they're in. We don't want police officers to travel for three hours a week. We don't want police officers to travel from three hours away to come and be a police officer in a city that they're unfamiliar with, the same as teachers and other workforce.
Well, I'm happy to jump into these slides. Again, my name is Jordan Moss, Catalyst Housing Group. We tried to back up and just, you know, from thirty thousand feet, give a picture as to the crisis that exists in California today, how this program came to be, and why, why it's been successful. So for starters, this references a report that was recently done. On a national scale, and California, as you can see here, represents more than twenty-five percent of the total shortfall across the country from a housing perspective. So no surprise that we've seen the issues that we have. Ben was hinting at this moments ago, but if you look over the past six-plus decades, rents continue to grow at a really significant pace. Household incomes have not. And so essentially, you know, the delta between these two lines here is the housing crisis in California, where rents have outpaced incomes by two and a half percent. What this means is that more and more of someone's paycheck is increasingly being eaten up by rent. The ramifications of that on a long-term basis is people decide to tap out and move somewhere else that's more affordable. Public Policy Institute of California did this study recently. Three-quarters of Californians who were surveyed said housing affordability is a big problem. A third of Californians are currently considering moving to another state. And this year will be the twenty-fourth consecutive year that there will be negative net interstate migration, where California continues to export valuable essential workers, nurses, teachers, first responders, to other states. This is really hitting on what Ben was just referencing. There is an entire industry around capital A affordable housing, addressing households who generally earn between zero and sixty percent of median income. If you're familiar with the low-income housing tax credit, private activity bonds, housing choice vouchers, commonly known as Section Eight vouchers. All of those resources go into financing capital A affordable housing. Ursula was talking earlier about the layers and layers of subsidy that are typically needed to make those deals work. And on the other end of the spectrum, there's been plenty of high-cost capital to build high-income, or, you know, high-end housing for high-income households, market-rate housing. But there has been nothing in the middle. There's been no subsidy motivation program of any kind, which was why this program came to be, which is all-around governmental ownership of assets, tax-advantaged financing. We talked about the ability to place thirty-five-year fixed-rate financing at a hundred percent leverage at a remarkably low cost of capital, and property tax exemptions that are by right because of the governmental nature of the ownership. And essential housing really lives at the center of that. This has scaled pretty rapidly. As Ben said, this all came to be at a time when interest rates were at all-time lows. So fifty of these communities, fifty-plus, were acquired by three different joint powers authorities throughout the state. In total, that's about fourteen thousand units of governmentally-owned income and rent-restricted housing for essential middle-income households. We estimate the total public benefit creation. To get back to this concept of the long-term retirement of that debt, the long-term value of those assets, and what will be transferred to the host municipalities throughout California, at being twenty-five billion dollars. To touch on Breakwater specifically, this just highlights some features of the asset. Four hundred units, pretty interesting unit mix of two and three bedrooms, including some townhomes that are great for families, entirely restricted to households who are earning below a hundred and twenty percent AMI today, generally bridging that gap between where capital A affordable housing leaves off at sixty percent AMI and to that hundred and twenty percent level, which is starting to get closer to households who can afford market-rate rents. Next slide. We tried to highlight some of the metrics and how this is working today, a couple of years in. The current rents, if you look at in-place rents for qualified households, so fifty-seven percent of the households across these two assets have now been qualified as either low or moderate-income households. And the rents at Breakwater are twenty-four percent below current market-rate rents, which is significant. We tried to highlight for you, if you were to look at the total rent subsidies today, which is that difference of the in-place rents versus market rents in comparison to what the city is currently foregoing in tax revenues, it's about a ten X multiple. And if you look on a long-term basis of what we expect the proceeds to be after all of the other municipalities are reimbursed for the foregone property taxes over the thirty-five years, you know, you're approaching a thirty-five to forty X multiple of what comes back to the city versus what was foregone over the period of CMFA's ownership. And then another, the other property here, Elon, was a much newer property than Breakwater, kind of other end of the spectrum. Once again, addressing sixty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, much smaller capital budget, given the newer nature of the property, but very similar metrics. So rents are twenty-three percent below market today, similar affordability and public benefit multiples. But that is really the end of the presentation.
Thank you, guys, for coming in. Ursula, for presenting, and, you know, gentlemen, for coming in. This was my H item from May sixteenth. And as I mentioned, back then, that as part of this acquisition or transaction, if you will, the previous city council willingly agreed that the city will not receive property tax on these two properties. And back then, in twenty-one, it was actually five hundred thousand per year, but it's actually gotten worse now. It's six hundred thousand per year. For operators of, was thirty years, now it's thirty-five. So now that's a total of twenty-one million dollars in lost property tax revenue that the voters did not get the vote on. And it's been almost two years. And so I think it's due time that the residents receive an updated comprehensive report from the sponsor Catalyst on how these projects are going. So I just have some questions regarding the answers that you guys provided. First, who provided these answers? Was it you, Ms. Luna Reynoso, or was it Catalyst?
We asked Catalyst for the information.
Okay. So of the three hundred and eighty units at Breakwater, only thirty-five have been renovated in two years. It's less than ten percent. Any reason why?
There's a number of reasons. I mean, for starters, as I'm sure you're well aware, being in the business, there's always the development of the scope, and then there's the, you know, putting the budget together and then getting the contractors. We've been dealing with COVID-related tenant protections, which has been one of the primary issues. It's been really difficult, given, you know, having our hands tied by the state of California around how we could approach tenants, how we could, you know, not displace tenants, but encourage people that were not paying their rent to either pay their rent or move on. And so we just didn't have the turnover that we would normally have. But, you know, I think at this point, we're moving at a pretty good clip. The twenty units that are offline are expected to come back online. Of the units that are available, we were actually at both properties today. The updated numbers, we gave you all of this data, or I should say, we gave Ursula this data as of June thirtieth, just to, you know, cap it at the end of the month. But the properties are currently ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent leased, respectively. So, you know, we're going to see much lower turnover in these assets than you would traditionally see in market-rate assets. And so the ability to get to those units and then implement the renovations is just going to be a little slower than it would normally be.
Well, I guess the concern is after now thirty-five years, you know, what are these properties? What are the conditions of these properties going to be? I mean, you know, you guys haven't renovated any units in Elon, because your answer says you don't need to, but it is eight years old. So do you guys have any plans to renovate the, the units in Elon?
There were no plans as far as like a capitalized budget on the way in to address any deficiencies within the units, because again, the property was relatively new and modern and didn't need any of that. The reserves, if you just look at the capital reserves within the pro forma, they ramp up pretty aggressively over time to account for a bigger and bigger capex reserve to address those things over time. So I can't tell you that, you know, we made an estimate that, or an estimation that in year twenty, for example, or year, you know, fifteen, or whatever it may be, that we were going to have to do X, Y, and Z. But we think that we were relatively thoughtful around making sure that there's always going to be enough reserves in the asset to address whatever may be needed.
Okay.
One other thing.
Yeah.
I think in addition to that, while there hasn't been the turnover where we could get into the units and actually renovate, because people are staying in, if you visited the projects, you would see a stark difference between Breakwater from two years ago to where it's at today.
Right.
I mean, it's, it blew my mind. That was the first time I've been back since I was at the city council meeting. In addition to the Elon, you know, the outside improvements, the tenant improvements, the pools, all the decking, you know, everything else is being improved. So as much as can be done, while tenants don't move out, we're doing, we're doing the most we can do at this point.
Got it.
Yeah, I should have touched on that, and I apologize. And when we, when we talk about the units that have been renovated, we're really talking about a gut renovation, you know, the entire interior. But everything's gotten new windows, for example, so those units were touched. But it's just not that the, you know, interiors haven't necessarily, but there's a lot of common area stuff that's been addressed.
Thank you for that clarity. The transaction was billed at providing middle-income workforce housing. But as mentioned earlier, when I asked how many units are leased to persons earning eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, the number was a paltry fifty-eight percent at Breakwater and fifty-six percent at Elon. I know you're going to say it was COVID-related, but now that those restrictions are lifted, how soon can you guys lease these units to the intent to provide workforce housing?
Well, we feel pretty good about the fifty-seven percent for what it's worth. I mean, given what we've been dealing with and given the lower turnover rates in these assets and the fact that we specifically have a non-displacement clause within the regulatory agreement that we're dealing with, the view on the way in was that even if existing households were over income, it's generally not a good idea to be displacing anyone. And so to the extent that people want to stay and they really like living there, so go back to what Ben just said about Breakwater. If you were already living at Breakwater and you had made the decision to live there as a market-rate asset because it was the right price point or the right location, and you're still living there, and now the property is even better than it was before, and we don't have any hammer to, you know, force people out, getting to fifty-seven percent in a two-year period of time, we actually feel pretty good about, especially in light of all of the COVID tenant protection. So I guess what I can tell you is every single unit that turns has to be leased to a qualified household. And so we're constantly making best efforts. There's no way to do anything other than make best efforts. And as I mentioned, we're ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent leased at the two assets. And so it's going to happen as, you know, it can happen naturally or as quickly as it can. But we can't take any unnatural, you know, actions to make it happen any faster.
I think a big point was within the regulatory agreement, the non-displacement that the city has directly said, and our commitment not to kick seniors out of their house just because they're at one-twenty-one. And so you have to look at these units, and you have to look at who's living in them. If they don't want to leave, we can't go in and force and invict them.
Sure. Well, no one wants to kick anybody out, but this is billed as a public benefit for the missing middle, right? Workforce housing, and we are foregoing twenty-one million dollars in property tax revenue that the voters didn't get the vote on, but it's not meeting its intended goal of providing workforce housing. So I'm just, want to understand why that is. Yeah.
Hold on really quick. City attorney, I seem to remember eleven o'clock was a deadline somewhere.
Just a, just a quick motion to go extend the meeting past eleven o'clock.
I moved, moved the meeting past eleven o'clock.
Second.
I moved and seconded.
Any objections?
Any objection?
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So anyway, so it's just not fulfilling its intent that it was sold to the community on. And then on, at the July twenty-first, July twenty, twenty twenty-first meeting, where this was voted on, Councilmember Mike Posey said that part of this agreement was to require local preference for people that work in Huntington Beach, the workforce housing. And there's supposed to be an audit with a list of established people that are certified as local preference. And do you guys have that list available?
I'll have to check with the management company. Catalyst does not run the day-to-day at these assets. We serve as project administrator to CMFA, Graystar, who's the largest property management company in the country, actually is the property manager. I will definitely check with them and circle back to you.
To me, that's critical. We need that. I mean, you guys had mentioned it tonight, that this is for people that, that, you know, work here so they can live here. So if that's the crux of this public benefit, how do we not have a list of actually how many residents work in the city and live here as part of workforce housing?
Sure. And as everyone knows, through COVID, people are working from home and not necessarily working at their corporate office. So, I mean, there's a big group of people that are living and working from home that would count as Huntington residents. But it's also, we can't go through and demand people to disclose their employment and turn it over in a public forum.
I understand, but again, this was, this is how it was sold? And there's supposed to be an audit with the list of established people that are local preference? And you're telling me we can't get this information? I'm, I'm not squaring the two together.
I'm not saying I can't get the information. I'm saying that we can't disclose the information in a public setting because that's illegal. And so we can go through and ask, but we can't go in and force people to disclose.
So how do, how do we get, as was mentioned at twenty twenty-one meeting, how do we get this, this audit list of established people that was mentioned at that meeting?
I was at the meetings that I remember agreed upon audit list, but I, we can go back and review it.
Okay. I mean, I just watched it this morning, actually.
Councilmember McKean, I just want to clarify, too, that the local preference is basically a decision of who, when one of these units becomes available, and there's multiple people who want the unit, the preference goes to what was identified by the council, which was, it could have been, you know, we're going to do it for police officers, we're going to do it for veterans, we're going to do. But I think my recollection is that the preference was if they work in Huntington Beach, they get the preference. So I just want to be clear that that's what this preference was for, for selecting who gets the unit when there's competition for these units.
But that was the point of this transaction. So how do we verify that there is local preference and people that work here are actually living in the, in these units?
Well, let me just say that the purpose of the program was to ensure that income-qualified people live in these units. So, and then there's.
The slides, the slides on workforce housing, the ultimate.
Income-qualified is, is, is the same thing. So the, the income target is workforce housing, right? So it's moderate income, that's workforce housing. So everybody who transitions is in that, they have to be, they have to be income-qualified. So it is meeting those public policy objectives. The preference is for them to work in Huntington Beach. But if they work in Costa Mesa, they are still income-qualified. So they're still fulfilling the public benefit of the project.
I understand, but we hear every meeting that people that, you know, work here should live here, and this was, what this was billed as. So I would like to see the list of the local preferences, people that work here that can live in these units. I mean, that was what this was billed and sold to the community as.
And we will follow up with Catalyst about what can be disclosed publicly.
Just, just to add a point of clarification, this was marketed as workforce housing. This was marketed for the people that live, currently live in the projects, that they'll have a rent reduction, and that the people that are, meet these qualifications from sixty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, that they'll be able to continue to live in, they'll be able to continue to live in Huntington Beach and not be displaced. Again, this is police, this is anybody, this could be your guys' kids. They're leaving these places, and they can't afford to live here anymore, so they're displaced to another city. That's what this was marketed for. The preference was an after point where it was, the council had said, we prefer to have people that live, and we brought this up, do you want police first, do you want firemen first, do you want teachers first? The preference was, as people come in, we would prefer that they're Huntington Beach, they're employed by people in Huntington Beach. That, it was a preference. It was not the mission of the project.
Okay. Thank you for providing that. The annual property management fees for Breakwater are two hundred and nineteen thousand and one hundred and eighty-seven for Elon. This one's a big one. I asked how many of the retail shops on the ground floor of Elon are leased, and the answer is zero. You guys have had two years of leased units, and zero are leased. This is a high-profile property on a prominent corner, and those units have been vacant for two years. So are you guys actively negotiating with any prospective tenants with letters of intent? Or is this just completely dark?
There were three occupied units. The visible, you know, units from the frontage were occupied at the time that CMFA closed on the asset. All three of them at, you know, during the period of time that CMFA was in escrow were already experiencing difficulties. The barber shop was actually not even operational any longer. The other two's leases were expiring shortly after CMFA closed on the asset and had already let it be known that they were not going to be renewing. The spaces have been marketed the entire time. I know that we've talked about, you know, COVID-related issues already and the difficulty of leasing retail generally. There's also, you're in the retail business, is that right?
I am, yep.
So hopefully you would agree with me that there's some challenges to this space in that while it's a high-visibility corridor, at least for the spaces that are visible from the street, the other half of the retail is buried behind and has no visibility. There's also some significant challenges from a parking standpoint, where you have to find your way off of those high-speed streets and into the parking garage. So that has not necessarily been of interest to the retailers that our brokers have been out talking to. My understanding, and you probably know these statistics better than I do, but if you look at the vacancy rate of retail just in Huntington Beach, not even the neighboring counties, I think between the spaces that are actually listed for rent today, in addition to some shadow, you know, sublease space, you're approaching five hundred thousand square feet. In the close proximity to our assets, you have plenty of surface-parked, highly-visible retail centers at very similar price points. And we have nothing but, you know, motivation or interest in leasing the space. There's no reason. And we have nothing but, you know, motivation or interest in leasing the space. There's no reason that we would not want to lease the space. It would make the community a more desirable place to live. Should there be, you know, retailers that people wanted to shop at and visit on the ground floor. I will also say that we were highly concerned about the inward-facing retail spaces. And if you look back at the bond documents, those spaces were underwritten to be vacant for the entirety of CMFA's ownership.
Okay.
The thought was that it actually may be more valuable to convert those to some form of resident use, whether they're coworking lounges or something like that, that, you know, may be helpful from attracting, retaining residential tenants. The entire income that was projected over the thirty-five years in the bond documents amounts to, I think, one-point-four percent of all of the income of the project. So I don't say that to say that no one has an interest in keeping them vacant, but it definitely is not the driving force. I know that that's not the main thing that the city would be concerned about because you don't want to have highly-visible retail vacancies. We did just hire a new retail broker. They happen to have the largest market share in Orange County as far as we know.
Who's that?
SRS.
Okay.
You-
Harrison?
Happy with them? I'm, I actually, we have portfolio managers and asset managers that retain them. But I know that generally everyone is encouraged, and we have recently been working with them on a separate CMFA asset in Anaheim, and I think we've gotten some pretty good results already. So I think people are excited about that.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the, you know, the site-specific challenges such as park and in-frontage attributes with Elon because Elon was always billed as like the poster child for high-density, mixed-use living. And yet here we are admitting that it's, you know, Elon is a failure. And to me, this, this whole transaction is exactly what that is, is it's a failure. This is a government-owned subsidized housing failure. The previous council through this transaction abused the intent of a joint powers authority agreement, which was designed to allow cities to work together on projects. But instead, the previous council, along with the project-sponsored catalyst, used a joint power authority agreement to circumvent the approval of the voters to allow these properties to be purchased, whereby the tax-paying residents of Huntington Beach have to forego property tax on these two properties for the next, I guess, thirty-three years. And the residents did not even get to vote on it. And I, I brought this article because I really urge everyone to read it, and it was posted on Forbes.com on the separate, second, twenty-twenty-one. It's called California Scheming, and it provides in great detail the real motivation behind the so-called middle-income workforce housing projects. And I just wanted to read a couple excerpts from the article. So Jordan Moss, thank you for coming, says he has an exceptionally big heart. His brand county firm Catalyst is dedicated to developing affordable housing. But in twenty-nineteen, he partnered with a group of municipal bond wizards and has since acquired fourteen fully-occupied luxury apartment buildings in some of California's most expensive zip codes like Salcelito, Larkspur, and Huntington Beach. Even better, because he promises to turn these billions into so-called essential or workforce housing, his deals were one-hundred percent financed by two-point-five billion in tax-exempt municipal bonds, mostly courtesy of a little-known government entity he helped create, the California Community Housing Agency, CalCHA. Now Moss's catalyst has already reaped more than twenty-five million in upfront fees from his apartment deals. And over the thirty-to-forty-year lifespan of the bonds, he stands to make hundreds of millions more. Welcome to the most exciting innovation to hit the municipal bond business in decades. Essential housing bonds issued by quasi-governmental agencies like CalCHA aren't limited by state municipal volume caps and cleverly sidestep the bureaucratic red tape required for tax-credit-based financing, i.e. the voters. Since two thousand and nineteen, more than six billion in muni-bonds have been issued to acquire more than thirty-five upscale apartment buildings at nosebleed prices. Bankers from firms such as Goldman Sachs and Jefferies, property managers like Gray Star and white shoe law firms are feasting on hundreds of millions in fees. Then there are the sellers like Equity Residential REIT and Lennar, getting top-dollar prices and yield-hungry municipal bond funds snapping up to three-to-five percent tax-exempt debt as fast as it hits the market. Lastly, not everyone is a fan of California's housing bond boom. Besides the front-loaded fees, these highly-leveraged deals rely on rosy thirty-plus-year recession-free forecasts. For the cities and counties that will ultimately own the buildings, it means foregoing millions in property tax revenue for decades. And it's doubtful where the often modest rent discounts being offered to middle-income tenants will ever make up for the lost tax revenue. It's like getting a slight discount on a Ferrari and calling it affordable, says Matt Schwartz, president of California Housing Partnership, an affordable housing advocate. So as you guys will see later in tonight's H-item, in my opinion, this can never be allowed to happen again without the consent of the voters. Thank you.
Councilman Kelman.
I appreciate that. So ninety-nine percent occupied is a failed project?
No, the mixed-use living with the retail, it's a total failure.
Okay.
Build up right on the street, you can't, you can't get to it. Right. It's Isla on the, on the, on the busiest corner in our city, and it's vacant on the bottom floor.
So yeah, so that was a large part, I mean, if you've read the downtown specific plan, which you did obviously because you wanted to get rid of the EIR, it's the downtown, the beach edge or corner specific plan, that was meant to be like a whole corner, new gateway to Huntington. It didn't happen because there was no incentive to make any of it happen. I agree that that project looks like a big thumb in the middle of nowhere. Sure, but we can convert those units to residential potentially, right? Like, it's still ninety-nine percent leased and from the presentation, they didn't account for that retail in there. So to say that it's a failed project with ninety-nine percent leasing when usually like five percent occup, vacancy is like standard seems to be pretty decent. So this, again, this, this larger concept here, and I appreciate staff and thank you, Councilmember McKean, for bringing this forward to get an update on, on how this looks. It's just a public policy discussion. The nefarious idea that this was done in closed doors and that the residents get to vote on this, and we're gonna bring and talk later about all the implications of never being able to do something like this again, is a public policy discussion that was being had about creating affordable housing without building anything. We created units without having to build anything. It was the compromise between residents that didn't want to see anything else built in our city and our ability to find and, and keep folks housed. Uh, I guess the question is, how many folks already qualified to live in their units? Ballpark.
I think we've had forty to fifty existing residents who are now qualified, which leads me to believe that they were previously paying forty, fifty-plus percent of their rent and were able to stay in place and receive a pretty significant reduction and are now saving, you know, hundreds of dollars a month.
Right. And I think the argument for that is that lower-income folks tend to spend a more, a larger portion of their income on, on, into the economy because they have to. And that money likely goes directly in, back into the economy. The, I guess the, the public policy larger discussion, again, without creating this as the most nefarious thing, was we said we want to create units. So this was a, I think, a reasonable upfront way to understand what the total cost of the bonds are gonna be over thirty years, thirty-five years, thirty-one years now, if it was thirty-three.
Thirty-three, I believe.
Thirty-three, but we're two years in, so thirty-one years, so. Sure. Uh, but to receive half a billion dollars in assets at the end of this, like, that's the, that was like the cake. That was like, all right, this kind of makes sense. Oh, but in thirty-five years, we can force a sale and we get half a billion dollars. That's the discussion, right? That was the public policy trade-off. Like, the half a million dollars a year, at this point today, yeah, sure, we could probably use that money. But two years ago, we didn't necessarily, we, we made this decision to, to create housing for folks, have some folks save some money on the rents, as rents are just skyrocketing so that we have places not to displace local residents. And the cake was that in fifteen years, sixteen, year sixteen, we can force a sale and get some cash if we need it, which is now thirteen years away. So we're, you know, chipping away at that quickly. Or we wait till the end of this and we've made a bet on real estate in Huntington Beach to appreciate in value. If at the end of thirty-five years, this is not worth more than what we pay, what we, more than twenty-one million dollars, there's something drastically wrong with the economy and this will be the least of our problems. So again, I appreciate staff and Catalyst and CMFA coming down to, to talk about this project, but the presentation was very much upfront in what we were getting into. Disagreement on whether or not residents should be voting on bonds in this regard, like, we can float a, we can float several types of bonds without the voters approving them. The state can float bonds without, certain types of bonds without the voters approving them. We floated pension obligation bonds, which saved us millions of dollars a year because the delta was so high. We took advantage of very low interest rates at the time in order to save this future generations, I mean, large sums of money. And so, I mean, in thirty-five years, I, I'll be interested to see what the city does with half a billion dollars. I think it's, I think it was well worth the exercise for this. And it's, again, it's, it's a public policy disagreement. It's not nefarious or secrets or anything. It's, it was upfront. We had public meetings on it. I had a lot of questions on this, and we actually didn't do the first folks that knocked on the door. There was another agency that floats bonds that has a much worse fee structure that we opted not to go with, and we stalled out and said, all right, somebody else could potentially do this, and we came across CMFA. And again, like, all of this was upfront. And so the orders of magnitude and change between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-three are, are, I think, de minimis, and I still stand by the fact that we've created a lot of affordable housing for folks and saving some folks some money in the city so they can stay in our city and, and maintain that. And again, that's, I'm fine to have that public policy disagreement. We don't believe that the city should be working to provide affordable housing. That's just a, that's a fine disagreement to have. But I think that the investment was well worth it, and I'm happy to see that we are, you know, have more than half-occupied, even though it's July, May was when the restrictions disappeared, so like June one, so it's been sixty days since you can actually ask folks to, to leave, and that obviously takes some time if you have to go through the eviction process if they haven't been paying rent. And, you know, I actually live across the street, but farther than a thousand feet from the, the Breakwater, and I see it, you know, the paint job on the outside as a drive-down beach looks great. So thank you very much for coming and I look forward to the next discussion on this.
Mayor, just one final question, going back to local preference, to Mr. Gates. Is there any legal concern on reporting local preference, like, you know, the residents' profile info, where they work, how much they make?
Uh, no, profile data is fine. I mean, that's basically census data. And so it can be shared publicly. I mean, as long as you're not revealing social security numbers, cell phone numbers. You know, usually, you know, if we're gonna share information on individuals from the public, we'll redact the last name so they can retain some level of anonymity, but all the data, the profile data, that's, that can be shared.
Okay. So as I, as I said earlier, please request the local preference audit data for the two properties.
You're not talking about taking these people's names and information and publishing it, are you? You're just talking about-
Yeah, I just want like data, like, I want to understand, you know, numbers.
All right. Well, thank you so much, staff.
To be clear, exactly what information do you want us to gather so that we can present it or we can provide it?
Sure, just, you know, essentially just how many of the units are qualified as local preference, right?
As new move-ins.
Or just current, and then what you have now.
I mean, so obviously, they were ninety-five, ninety-nine percent full.
Sure.
And we had no preference over who was living there at the time, so this would, we could only dictate new move-ins.
Fine.
And then what audit would be from the new ones.
Yeah, whatever results you guys have now moving forward and, you know.
Not a problem.
I have some-
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thanks. Um, so also, really, it was about local preference on people coming in to new units. So I think that, what I think would be more applicable is to understand with the processes and to make sure that that's happening. So I'd like to, I guess, just confirm that because that's what was, I think, promised to us in the first place. Also, just to acknowledge, I think Councilmember Kelman really went over most of the things that I would say, but I'm, you talked about this, that it was really, and you didn't use this language, but it was kind of a unicorn moment in that the interest rate and the market conditions, like, provided this kind of a once-in-a-lifetime potential opportunity for us to be able to invest in our local economy and our, in our local residents, our local workers, hopefully, as we move forward. We already talked about the fact that, you know, these properties were up for sale at the time. You essentially, we'll say, won the properties, right? And if they had been purchased by a market-rate owner or property owner, they would have automatically raised the rents for those existing-
Well, what, what they could do automatically is raise the rents ten percent at least renewal. And then any new residents, the trend for the last, for that time period was twenty percent on, once someone moves out and someone moves in, it would increase the rents twenty percent.
That's a lot of money.
It's a ton.
And, you know, we've already seen, as you talked about, the housing crisis, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent occupied right now. From what I understand from talking to Jamboree, et cetera, before, like, a typical healthy vacancy rate is like four, five percent. So there's like no availability.
We're the issuer on most Jamborees. I don't know if Michael's still here or not, but.
Okay, yeah.
Um, yeah, so on affordable li-tech deals, it runs somewhere between ninety-three to ninety-seven percent occupancy.
Okay. Okay. And then, so in essence, we were making a policy decision to, as Ms. Lina Ronosa said, to maintain or preserve the existing rents. We don't want people displaced, which is part of why we also had the displacement, where we were asking people not to be displaced with this change in, in ownership. You know, I, I just find it unfortunate that, again, we can have a policy discussion, but the whole nefarious narrative is, is just so worn out. It was really such the part of the basis of the recall efforts and just this whole language that we're, everyone was trying to do something wrong and bad and behind closed doors, and as Councilmember Kelman said, this was done in, in public. We, we made sure that we had the right entity. You know, I, I don't see where we're, I, I understand that we are foregoing property taxes annually, and at the time, we had plenty of surplus monies not to be concerned about that. But even then now, moving forward, the people who have their rents essentially subsidized or at least preserved as what they were and/or lowered are now going out into the community here, they live here, regardless of where they work, and spending money here. And looking at this, they have seven-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, six-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars, so about seven-hundred dollars a month, essentially in a discount. So, I mean, those monies are likely to be spent in the local economy. Do you have data on, on that? Not here, but just more-
Yeah, I mean, obviously, people, you know, there's always Amazon and things like that, but a big percentage of the money that's brought in. And, and again, to be clear, this is people had a reduction from their current rent of six to seven-hundred dollars in their pocket. People that are at the bottom sixty percent and lower tend to spend all of their money. And so they're not saving that money. It's being spent and taxes are being generated.
And we talked earlier tonight about homelessness and people being one paycheck away from being homeless. Those are also the same people who are, frankly, if, if they're, this is providing them the ability for improved health and health outcomes as well, because people who are strapped to be able to pay rents are not able to pay for their health insurance and those types of things as well. So in the, in the objective of trying to invest in a healthier, more productive community, I think that from my perspective, the policy decision that we made, especially at that particular time, which wouldn't be conducive now, I think, makes sense. And I welcome more reporting that's appropriate. But it sounds like things are moving along the way that we anticipated them, especially given that it was during a time that was unprecedented with the pandemic as well. And I do think it's important that, I guess, it'll, in the audit or what have you, since more people are working from home now, I mean, that, I guess, would be considered working in Huntington Beach. But in fact, most people, I would say, they would not necessarily indicate that. So maybe if you can make sure that that's like an asterisk on that, because a lot of people are working for a company outside of Huntington Beach, but they're working at home.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, because I've been hit by the media many times. What Forbes said about you wasn't too flattering.
Well, it wasn't about me. It was a different group.
I'm just saying. Do you have a response to some of the things that Forbes have kind of characterized?
And first, number one, CMFA was not named in the Forbes article. And so that's one of the reasons that Huntington Beach looked at the CMFA is because we're not named in any of those articles. CSG wrote a number of articles. There's a number of papers that have been put out. So number one, there's probably three different papers that people look at. San Jose put out a paper, the city of Long Beach put out a paper, and then people have rehashed that information over and over and over again. The original author was the CSG article that Forbes then piggybacked off of. The CSG article was written by a gentleman that has never done a publicly, publicly-offered deal, has no background in doing any of these deals. He's never structured any of these deals. And so a lot of this information he was using was pure speculation. When we asked to help provide information for rebuttal for the, what it's called the white page that people used, they asked that we disclose, you know, all the fees and everything that's done, which we were happy to do, but then they decided it wasn't worth their effort to change their paper. So the paper stood. The Forbes article came out about six months later. You read highlights. I can name about ten inaccuracies within those highlights that were published. Really, I mean, if you look at it, that's why the CMFA took quite some time to jump into this. There is a lot of bad information. There's a lot of bad publicized information. And then you, you hear that, you know, these are socialist deals, you hear that this is government run amok. If you look at what's happened, if you look at these deals compared to a market rate deal, or these deals compared to a li-tac deal, which is the tax credit deals, and the fee structures in them, they're, they're not even close. CMFA caps all of our fees. We shared half of our fees with the city. And then in regards to the fees that are taken down at the beginning, those are half of what a regular market rate transaction would look like. At the end, there's no disposition of equity in the deal. So most people that are doing li-tac deals at year 15 take a disposition of their equity. They're given free tax credits into the deals, the bonds are paid off. And then li-tac deals have their money typically, they're, they're nonprofits who then put the money into new nonprofit deals. They don't have to, and they could walk away with 20, 30, 40 million dollars. If you look at the average nonprofit or tax, uh, tax credit deal right now, it's roughly about $56 million. So they're going to walk away with that at year 15. These deals, the only person that walks away with anything is the City of Huntington Beach. At disposition, we don't get anything. Jordan doesn't get anything. It's pure the cities. You guys could do it at year 15 if you want. If you don't want any housing, if you don't want, if you don't like this, if this is a failed project, it's 99% full. We bought the project as is. We didn't construct the project, we didn't put the mixed use at the bottom of the project. I looked around earlier, typically in those shops, you would have nail salons, tax accounts. Within one mile, there's 12 nail salons, and there's seven different tax places. There are small shops and there's, the walking to those mixed use projects is not accessible. The back use of those, I don't know who would rent a, would rent an office on the backside of those. It just doesn't make sense.
So understanding that market, would you shy away, shy away as policymakers from some of these high density mixed use kind of projects moving forward?
So mixed use policy doesn't work. The problem is you have a mixed use policy for the state of California. Doesn't work everywhere. Okay?
Fair enough.
So in this instance, though, the Forbes article, I would say...
I mean, we're, we're going to be looking at opportunities and we're, as city council members, and a lot of things have been talked to us about mixed use down the line and high density. So from your, your experience, it seems like the mix, mixed use is not a really good option.
Yeah, again, I financed over 600-plus projects. I've issued bonds for 600-plus project. Mixed use was really big a few years ago. It's definitely backing off.
Okay.
Because you get the same types of businesses. And like I just stated the stats, here's the businesses that are typically going to run a mixed use. You can only have so many, I don't know what the correct word, nail salons, per square mile. But again, the Forbes article, just going back to that, I know Matt Schwartz, I know him very well, I've issued all the bonds for Matt Schwartz's company. The information that they're relying on was bad information, and it has been rehashed over and over again. I, I don't know how you look at a project and say it's 99% at capacity, you guys are going to get 100% of the proceeds once the bonds are paid off? I don't know. To, to me, it's a pretty good deal.
Well, I would agree with my councilman, uh, council member that it is a policy discussion because we are deferring a lot of tax revenue at that time.
You are, yeah, of course.
It is a policy, it is a policy discussion. But with that, we, we've been here a long period of time on this item. I just want to thank all of you for the presentation. And I believe that we don't even need to move on anything, right? Just accept the report.
We can get the information next quarter, though, for you. I think that'd be a reasonable...
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. So I just move that we accept this report and, and, and follow-up information down line.
Thank you, guys.
Second.
All right.
Okay, can we just do a quick vote?
Yep.
Calmick?
It's been moved and seconded.
Mosher?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Okay, the report will be filed.
All right. Members, now we're on file, uh, council member items. We're on file item number 21. Councilmember Bolton, would you like to introduce your item?
Yes, thank you. And I'll be quick because everybody can read the item. So, right after we did the contract with POA, it prompted me to start thinking about what we could do to make the city attractive to candidates. And not just for the police department, but just generally. We can't just compete on dollars and cents. If we do that, it'll be an arms race. Right after we did our POA contract, I think Anaheim did their budget and they're hiring a bunch more people. We've got to figure out some other way to compete for employees besides just dollars and cents. And so, the whole point of this is just to ask the staff to research what types of kind of outside the box incentives, you know, municipalities and other public employers are offering to attract people and get people to stay. You know, we don't want to have a whole lot of turnover. Turnover is really expensive. And so, it just seems like in this environment, when there's a shortage of folks who are qualified and able to come and work and be public employees here, it just makes sense to see, you know, what we can do to be as competitive as we can possibly be. So, that's, that's the rationale behind the item.
Great.
I'll, I'll move the item.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKean?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Yeah, item fails 4-3.
Okay, members, we're moving on to file item number 22. Mayor Protem Vandermark and Councilman McKean, would you like to introduce your item?
And I want to correct myself, that was 3-4, sorry. I said it the wrong order.
Let me read it. All right, the city's finance commission reviewed the recent transactions that converted the properties Elon and Breakwater, as we just discussed, from privately owned residential income properties, to quote workforce housing. And the finance commission has determined that the scope of these real estate investments is outside of the city's primary investment objectives. According to the Huntington Beach treasurer's invest policy, the investment policies and practices are number one, to assure compliance with all federal, state, and local laws governing the investment of public funds under the control of the city treasurer; two, to protect the principal monies entrusted to this office; and three, to achieve a reasonable rate of return within the parameters of prudent risk management while minimizing the potential for capital losses arising from market changes or issue of default. In a recent finance commission issued memo, the finance commission observed that elected and appointed public officials owe fiduciary duty to their citizens with regard to the officials' handling of the public's money. In accepting fiduciary duty, the city council accepts a legal commitment to act in the best interests of the, of their beneficiary, the citizens. It is the conclusion of the finance commission that real estate investments that require the city to forego property tax collection for any particular property does not represent the best interest of the citizens of Huntington Beach, nor does it show prudent money management or prudent risk management. Moreover, any foregoing of property tax is essentially an expense or burden to the taxpayer, which should not be capriciously done by city councils. The finance commission therefore requests the city council to consider proposing an amendment to the city charter that would restrict city councils from engaging in real property transactions that would require the City of Huntington Beach to forego regularly collected property taxes on investment property unless those purchases are approved by the voters of the City of Huntington Beach. Exceptions to this rule would may include real property transactions that are important for acquisition of private property for infrastructure. So the recommended action would be to consider proposing an amendment to the city charter that would restrict city councils from engaging in real property transactions that would require the City of Huntington Beach to forego regularly collected property taxes on investment property unless those purchases are approved by the voters of the City of Huntington Beach. Exceptions to this rule would may include real property transactions that are important for acquisition of private property for infrastructure. Request a charter review ad hoc committee propose parameters, language, and timing of the charter amendment measure for council consideration. And secondly, to direct the city manager to come back with a system for the city to have a real property leasing, purchasing, and disposition policy and essentialize real property function.
All right. Mayor Protem, it's part of your, your measure. Do you want to just second it, or do you want...
No, I just, I'll keep it short. It's almost midnight. While we were out campaigning and with this deal happened, we had tons of residents say, well, how could just seven council members make these decisions that affect all of us, including me? So I do think that it is in the city's best interest and the taxpayers' best interest to give them a voice on this. So that's why this item was brought forward.
All right, any other discussion? Go ahead, Councilman.
So some of the terms in this are pretty vague, and I don't know, I mean, the charter review committee is already active, so I'm a little confused as to part one, where the charter review committee could have just brought this forward later. But I ran, I mean, just spitballing on edge cases here, like, what if the Naylor Act gets invoked? And we've got a bunch of residents saying we want to come down and buy this school It's unclear as if it's foregoing property tax from existing non-property tax generating properties? Because as I read it, it would effectively say any transfer of, any property that would forego property tax. The term investment property is also unclear because the, this actually wouldn't stop the CMFA deal that went through, based on my reading of this, because the city doesn't actually own anything. We just joined a, a JPA, and then a third party issued bonds to buy a property. All we entered into was a, um, an agreement to take the property after 15 years. We ended into a disposition agreement. But we don't actually own that property. So this actually wouldn't even fix that problem. So I'm confused as to, we don't want to get involved in any investment property that would collect, that would forego property taxes. But again, what if there's a church that needs help? Any tax increment financing that would come back would be, would have to go out to the voters on that. I feel like this could potentially run against the Surplus Land Act. So say we have to dispose, we have a piece of surplus property that potentially we have to give to a nonprofit, a housing nonprofit under the Surplus Land Act, that would, that housing nonprofit wouldn't be paying taxes, we'd have to go to a vote of the people, people say no, and now we're a foul of state law again. Any affordable city housing project in the city would have to go before the voters on this. The navigation center likely couldn't have gotten built as quickly as it did. And this likely creates another barrier to building housing in the city, affordable housing in the city, which I think gives a state potentially another claim against us. So it's, again, it's unclear as to the, I mean, if the intent is, don't ever do a CMFA project again, then just bring an ordinance, ask, have to bring an ordinance forward that says that's, we're not, we're never going to do that again. So it'll take three votes of a council to do something like, to do a deal like that again. But my reading of this says that this would, voters wouldn't even be able to vote on this. So I understand the infrastructure piece, because obviously rights of way would start to become an issue. But again, we've had folks, the Naylor Act is a pretty small TikTok of a window. And if we have to call us, we have 88 days to call a special election, and costs us a million dollars on top of it to buy a park, or to buy a, a school site, as we see school sites are closing more and more in the city, that I think that this would be a little too much. Now, the second piece that I think is great, right? I think we should absolutely do that. I would be absolutely supportive of, of that piece. But I think that this, the concept here, and at least what we're directing, the ad hoc committee to come up with, is pushed by the finance committee, which actually hadn't even seen the presentation that we saw earlier, and it was based on information that they just kind of made up, or the existing staff report. So I asked staff to also generate who doesn't pay property tax in this city. And so, that would be, the city couldn't apparently be involved in any deal or any transaction, as I'm reading like this, that would involve any nonprofit or any other government agency. So I, I, I think that the intent of this should be clearer than, than what's the considered action. Because I've, you know, just spitballing, came up with five or six potential issues where a time-critical move by this government would be, it would be heavily beneficial to the city. And we're elected to, to do this. I mean, Mayor Protem Vandermark, you brought up the, like, who are seven people to make these decisions? That's what we were elected to do. And going out to the voters on specific things, if we want to change the charter, I think that's, that's one thing. But I think being very clear as to what that is, is important, right? And we've had to make changes to Measure C and ask the voters to make changes to Measure C. And the last, the last time we updated the charter 10 years ago, there was changes because things had changed and we, staff was running into issues with that. And we're still running into issues with building bathrooms on the beach, and we're likely going to have to go to a Measure C vote to improve the bathrooms on the beach, which I think is, you know, going to be, cost us some money for this. So again, if the intent is to not do a CMFA deal, then, you know, I would recommend bringing an ordinance forward that says the city's not going to be involved in third-party bond issuances to create affordable housing. But I think that the state would again probably have issues with that going forward. So that's my two cents on this. But I think the, actually creating a, a system to have real estate leasing and all centralized, I think is a, is an excellent idea, and I'd be supportive of that.
So I have a comment.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So just to be clear, it sounds to me like what prompted this is Elon and Breakwater. And these are deals where the city essentially invested $10 million or $11 million to get back $345 million or $250 million. So the ROI on one of those is like 3,500%. And on the other, it's like 2,500%. So somebody is saying that doing those things is not in the best interest of, you know, the city's residents? And I just, I just am really puzzled by that. What is not in the interest of the residents if we have a project that is an ROI of 3,000%? Like, what's the ROI of the airshow?
Sure, but I understand. But if it's such a good deal, then sell it to the voters and let them vote on it, because they're foregoing property tax, which is our number one source of revenue to our general fund. So if it's such a great deal, then what's the issue of having put in front of the voters to vote on? They're foregoing property tax.
Because we have to be nimble. The government has to be nimble. So there are some things that go to the voters, and there are some things that don't go to the voters, because those are situations where the city needs to be, needs to be able to do deals quickly, which I think is, you know, going to Mr. Calmick's point. So, you know, that, that's it. I just wanted to make sure that, like, in dollars and cents, and like fundamentally, that people understand that what we're talking about are projects that have these enormous returns on investment, but somehow that's bad. So that's it.
Yeah, just to read, to finalize it, this, this, that was a highly abnormal transaction with a private company linking up with a public company, circumventing the voters, and then foregoing property tax for 35 years. And so, Calmick, you're bringing up great points. I'm confident that the charter review ad hoc committee will take all those in, in, under consideration when they propose their parameters. Again, each items are, are ideas, so I'm confident to do the research to come up with all those, you know, parameters when they come back to us. So I think it's fine the way it is, and I make a motion to move it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? No, I mean, you, you can make the motion. You can make the motion, you could do a substitute motion on one part.
I was just a friendly...
And we could address that. But then, the, the motion by the council member is the motion.
Oh, I was just asking as a friendly amendment to ask if we take them separately.
You can ask them to take a friendly amendment.
That was, that was my asking.
That's fine, okay.
Mayor Strickland, may I ask a question?
So you want to just do that one part?
No, I mean, we're going to vote on all these, but I...
No, well, that's what he's asking me, to, to only do the one part.
Take him, take each...
He wants to vote on each one individually.
Take each item, vote on each item individually instead of taking him as one, as a whole.
All right, okay. That's fine.
I think, that was the city manager.
Yeah, so let's all make a motion to approve item one. Yeah, so let's all make a motion to approve item one.
I think Al had a question.
Go ahead, Al.
Just to tear off of your comments, Councilmember McKean, do, do you want us to work with the city attorney and the community development department team and others to identify any other exceptions?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I would ask the city attorney to be there, because I, I am on the charter review ad hoc committee, that I would like someone from the city attorney's office to talk about some of the pitfalls that might come forward. That's why we need to flesh out the idea.
Also, with that, you know, item two, which I hope we do get to vote on separately, is asking for a policy with regards to real estate and property transactions. I think that the proper person would be reviewing those. My assumption is that that's not you, right? Because you're, I'm just saying for the discussion that the mayor just mentioned as far as having the city attorney in the room for these edge cases. What I'm reading, though, in this item is that perhaps, you know, you do a lot of different types of municipal law, but maybe this isn't your forte or main area of focus. So my point is, is that if this is indicating that in these types of transactions, we need to have policies for review by a property attorney essentially, that perhaps in this case, we have the same concern.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but that's why the city manager will dictate what staff would be important to be there at that moment.
Yeah, and I'm involved in a lot of meetings, and I usually don't get boxed out.
No, I.
That's not, I didn't mean to box you out, by the way.
I agree with you. But that's why it's up to the city manager to decide who is the right person at each one of the meetings that we, that we do.
And Mayor, I will add that if we ever need legal expertise beyond what we offer in our office, then we reach out to those experts, and we do bring them in.
You know, and I think it was the finance letter that actually said more about a real estate attorney specifically, because it doesn't say it on this right here. So, yeah. And just as an aside, when Councilmember Bolton mentioned the nimbleness, that's actually the word that I was going to use as well. Not everything needs to be corrected if you think it needs to be corrected. I don't in this case, but via charter amendment. I too think that you could have already done this via the charter ad hoc committee. It sounds like you're going to, which is great. But it didn't need to come forward here. I, I don't understand why that's the case. And I do think the preservation of the nimbleness of city government is important. You know, and whether or not you agree with the policy decision for the middle income housing, the truth is, we would not have been able to do something like that. And what I mean by that is to take that moment in time and utilize those, the, the market rate environment, the low interest rates. We wouldn't have been able to even have that decision available to us to, to do something positive for the voters and to make that decision if we had to then go ahead and bring it to the voters and take, again, almost a million dollars for a special election. We would have lost the ability to even have that opportunity. And that concerns me, because I do think that we are all elected to make these types of decisions. Certainly that there needs to be, you know, guardrails on things, which I think that there already are. I think Councilwoman Kelmick presented a good option, you know, which could perhaps, through an ordinance, I think do what you're hoping to do. I did listen to the finance commission, and it was discussed that, in essence, and as Councilwoman Kelmick mentioned, this particular type of transaction wouldn't even be affected by what's been proposed so far, because we did not enter into a real property transaction. We don't own that property. And while we did forego the property taxes, I could understand that piece of it. But we didn't do what's being said. So I too would hope that we would be able to do the friendly amendment, though, to vote on both items separately.
For clarification purposes, just the way I read it, maybe I'm not reading it right, and that's positive, you know, it's almost midnight. But it says that any deferred property taxes that we defer as a city would then go for the, to the voters. That's what I see here. How would that not apply to?
It says engaging in real property transaction, that the city did that.
But it also says.
That's the second half.
Yeah, the second half. But it, but what I'm making clarification here is, it would include the last two projects we talked about, because it would include, because it also mentioned foregoing property taxes, which we did do on those two projects. So this would apply to that JPA.
It wouldn't, because we didn't enter into a real property transaction, though. We did forego the property tax.
No, but what I'm saying is, you forego the property taxes. So here it says if you forego property taxes, then it goes to vote of the people. It says it right there.
In real property transactions. So it's just, maybe that's what will be discussed in the ad hoc committee.
So, I mean, I mean, the way I read it, it would have totally included the two.
The subject of the sentence is, is the antecedent for foregoing regular collective property taxes. It doesn't make any sense if you eliminate, if we're just going to say, if we do anything.
The way, the way I read it is, is if you forego property taxes, and I'm not the author, so.
Yeah.
If you forego property taxes.
You read it correctly, Mayor.
If we, if we enter into any transaction that forgoes property taxes, anything.
Again, these are parameters, and they'll come back to us with suggestions, an idea. I make a motion to move item one.
I, I second. I thought it was, I'll second that. Clerk, please call the roll for item number one.
Item one, okay. Councilmember Kelmick?
No.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
The item passes four-three.
I make a motion to move item number two.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes seven-zero.
Okay, members, that's the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been seconded. We're adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance Authority is Tuesday, August first, two thousand twenty-three.